There you go.
Corn, you're looking mighty fucking authoritative today.
You are.
Man, you're feeling it.
Is Andy here to present something? What's going on?
Yeah.
She is.
Okay, what?
Guys wanna start with me?
Yeah, we can start with you.
Yeah, I'm passing out books.
Wait, can I get like a? A TLDR?
It kinda is.
That's why I gave you the notes.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, that's why I said TLDR, Alex.
Oh.
You guys talk about that while I slip this into your pockets.
Can you yell, Alex?
Yeah, my bad.
Yeah, make sure everyone's yelling.
Wait, what do you give me?
Um, pardon my presentation. You guys talk while I pass these out.
All right.
Phones in silent, you know?
That is smart.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
Uh, so what was the TLDR? I know you guys passed something about a cabinet, so I'm hiring Andy to something, something.
Park some wreck, yeah.
So essentially, uh, we gave the chief of staff a staff uh, that manifests in the form of various secretaries that were in the process of interviewing for. Uh, the rules for them is the same as the rules for me, i.e. any felony equal fire.
Max, in fairness, I think they prefer the term receptionist these days.
Right, reception, sorry. The receptionist of Park and Rec.
Ah, sorry, what the fuck?
It's secretary. It's not, it's not that kind of secretary, Alan.
Fucking director.
Oh, you mean like a military secretary?
Yes.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, badass kind of secretary.
I was wondering, I was like, you ain't allowed to say that anymore, is you okay?
Oh, hell, you can say what you want. These damn kids are changing everything.
These secretaries would, would be classified as government employees and would be permitted to sign in uh, the same way that a council person signs in, uh, as we discussed. And that's pretty much, what else was passed last meeting?
Uh, we also.
Talking about the radio stuff, a lot of DOCs.
Oh, there's a horny tax on Twitter.
Yeah, horny tax on Twitter.
Oh, right.
And forced respectful posting.
Yeah, have we, uh?
What does that mean?
Go ahead, Max.
Go ahead, Max.
Use examples, be vivid.
This fucking council of eight is wasting everyone's fucking money and time by passing stuff like the horny tax. Beep 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 beep.
Wow, dude, he's like armor.
Shut up. It took five minutes. Also, if anyone talks about their pussy or cock on Twitter, they get fined.
And a ban.
I think it's like, I think it's like, oh yeah, and a week ban that I will hand out personally.
What?
Yeah, it's good shit.
Yep.
Uh.
Hmm.
Woo.
Uh, section eleven of the bill of privileges allows you to do that.
That's right.
Bye, cancer.
But, uh. And we supposed to let people like, say what they want?
That is why I was the lone dissenting vote in this wet pussy legislation, uh, because I had to stand.
Wait, oh wait, hold on, I have a better idea. What if, uh, we just disabled Twitter for the first thirty minutes after the AU storm?
That's actually.
That would probably solve the entire problem.
That solves like the entire issue.
Hmm.
Cause literally all it is, the first twenty minutes is like, feeling really wet tonight, you know, just hanging out.
Yeah, my shit's dripping like a holika candle, shit like that.
Oh.
Pussy in bio.
Yeah, so, I mean, hey, we can just do that and then we don't gotta do, like, we don't actually actually enforce it individually, we just cut the problem at the source. Are you just coming around the AU storm and banning everyone from Twitter for the first like thirty minutes?
It's not wrong.
Well, no, we can't do that, cuz, uh.
Isn't that worse restriction of freedom of speech?
Well, I, uh, here's the thing. We, we kinda need Twitter in the first thirty minutes after the AU storm because, uh, you actually, your grandson is always putting people's license plates that are doing money runs immediately after the storm.
True, I think that's an important thing.
Yeah, yeah, your grandson twats that shit out so other people can go rob him.
I'm not robbing. In for a penny, in for a pound, you know? I think, I think we just, you know, we can do a little censorship, might as well do a lot, right?
Well, okay. Look, I'm a big believer in freedom of speech. Uh, I'm not a big believer in freedom of saying dumb shit.
Alright, I agree with that.
That's how I feel.
Look, we're not telling people that they can't do it, it's just that there is a fee to do it, right?
Basically.
So I wouldn't say we're restricting speech, you just gotta pay for the privilege.
So you're saying that the city council, uh, endorses and profits from, uh, public smut?
The state does.
The state does.
Uh, right, so does that make the state pornographers?
Yeah.
It's like a.
Kind of.
Kind of.
It's like a cum tax, basically.
Okay.
Talk about cum and wet pussies and stuff on Twitter all day, then yeah, you gotta, you get taxed for that. You still do it, you're not gonna go to jail.
Do a cum tax. Like Vin Dom except State Dom.
What?
Who will be the cum lector, the?
That's a good question. We need like the.
The sperm bank.
The most celibate, celibate person possible.
Um, Corian, Corian, yeah, Corian's a virgin.
Cornwood. Cornwood's a virgin.
He was married, he's got kids.
No, I ain't doing that shit, okay?
You, you, Cora, do you have kids?
I, I did, and my damn wife took them.
Well, they still exist. They're still your kids, Cornwood.
Yeah, Cornwood. Don't, don't imply you've disowned your children.
No, they disowned me.
Bye, Murphy, shade, okay, thanks.
Sorry, please, there's alcohol.
You'll get.
Hey, you wanna pick up that notebook next to you on the floor?
Not moonshot, though, apparently.
That's the one Andy handed up.
Oh, but there is. So that's it? Something about sex and something about cabinet?
Protections.
Oh, yeah, those are things.
What?
Uh, basically, if you're a whistleblower and you wanna do it in a safe manner, uh, go to Braun.
Yeah, yeah, we should, uh, actually, we should go ahead and enact that whistleblower protection.
Well, I think that's why we're doing the TLDR is cuz he has to actually enact everything we, we passed.
Oh, okay.
Cuz he wasn't here last week, remember?
Right, right. Think, uh.
Uh, Whistlemore Protections Act, okay? Alright.
Let's see.
Who do you go to if he's corrupt?
Who, who, the head of the civilian oversight board?
Yeah.
What do you mean if he's corrupt?
Yeah, exactly, right?
Well, we're talking about the cum, the cum lector? Who are we talking about?
Nah, nah, we're good.
No, we're talking, we're talking about the whistleblower protect.
Oh, okay.
I can just go through the notes real quick and kind of TLDR it.
That'll probably work.
Hey, Alan.
Yeah.
Do you, uh, do you handle expungements at all, or you let the judges do it?
Uh, I do when I'm asked.
Uh, I got, uh, like Costello just called me about, uh, having a hard time finding a judge, not to say that they're inactive or whatever, but.
Yeah, she's been having a hell of a time.
I told her that after the meeting I'd call her if you wanted to help her out.
Yes, man. Word.
Wonderful. Uh, actually, Crane, on the topic of the question you asked about, like, what if I'm corrupt, I actually have a related question to that real quick. Is like, what do, what do I do if I wanna put a bar complaint on somebody? Go to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hmm.
Just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so, uh, I mean, was there anything else from last meeting?
PCP two point O.
Oh, we waited for you.
Yeah.
Toe clamps and U part two.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, have a look, there's a little amendment and then the changes in red.
I think there was something else there that I wanna bring up, but I'm, I'm looking over it right one more time.
Uh, government vehicles are exempt from being booted or towed without police or EMS authorization within a reasonable time. Any booting of a government vehicle uh, will be deemed unlawful to use of the equipment. Oh, so you define government vehicles PD or EMS, okay? Uh, illegal towing and illegal clamping, so we punish one court by ten times the cost of a true vehicle. Okay. Alright, sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
They've become a real menace, Alan. They've been a real menace.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, you can see how we arrived at, at some sort of solution to this, right?
Hmm.
Yeah, I was a little concerned cuz I didn't want government vehicle to then start, people start going, cuz, um, just before I came in here, I had a conversation with Slacks that I need to talk to you guys about, which is on the same topic. So maybe you wanna just piggyback off that and start the meeting, or what do you guys think?
Um, well, question, what do we, so what do we charge people with, police officers? If, if somebody comes and clamps their car or toes it?
Criminal misuse of a.
Criminal misuse of a clamp, yeah, that's the thing.
It's a thousand dollar fine, baby.
Okay.
Um, anybody have an objection to me just relaying what I talked to Slacks about and bring up the topic now?
Sure, go ahead.
No objections.
Alright, um, so Slacks brought to me something that I, uh, you know, I plan to address with Murphy, but also, um, just with you guys. He noted to me that he's been having some problems with Kyle Pred, you know, big shocker. Um, but outside of the usual petty PD and lawyer stuff, uh, one that struck me was very interesting. Is he said that Kyle Pred basically pulls in his tow truck and just parks it in the upper police parking lot. Uh, and he wanted to know, um, was Kyle allowed to do that? Because Kyle apparently argued that his vehicle was a government vehicle. Because there was legislation we passed that says when you're a lawyer on, in PD, on duty, you count as a government employee. Now, I know we passed that for the purposes of like, attempted murder of a government employee, or kidnapping, or, uh, you know, uh, the issues with like the notebooks and making those private and everything, right?
But he's not in MRPD though, when he's doing that.
Yeah, but he's claiming that like, he's claiming that he's on the grounds and, you know, this, the whole argument, and so, uh, he then brought up, you know, was Kyle allowed to park in that upper lot at all? And I said, no, you know, he's trespassing, and he says, oh, but he's a, you know, government employee, so then, you know. Uh, so I think we probably need to either make it clarification to that legislation, or just issue a directive to an individual about this, cuz it seems like they're itching for some kind of, uh, ultimate decision maker authority on this shit. I mean, uh.
Yeah, I've heard about this already too, um, and it's come up from both sides, from Kyle Pred's side and from the PD's side to me, and, uh, yeah, it's like gone to court, like all of his toe shenanigans multiple times, uh. And, uh, we, like, the toe clamps thing was born out of one of his, uh, court cases, actually, I think, right?
Yep.
So, yeah, that's interesting.
Cuz I, cuz I mean, at that point, it's like, does that mean any lawyer shows a term where he, MRPD gets to park their car on the upper lot there? Which is why I said I was grateful that, you know, when government vehicle or government employee was defined in the one you guys did, where it says PD EMS. I never imagined that, uh.
That's awkward.
Well, yeah. I'll take rut row over the moaning, um. Yeah, every court case, every single time a PD alert went off, there were like, you know, a cacophony of, of recently pubescent men making moaning noises.
I realized Rami was in there.
Sounds wonderful.
Corner, they're dying. Also, hey, Cornwood, did you leave your truck on Illusion Fields Freeway?
No, that was, um, Teo Radich was driving a Coracora about two hours ago. He asked for approval, so maybe this was like an hour ago, is that when that happened?
Brother shit was just there.
Thirty, forty minutes ago, it was still there, the car's still there.
Sorry, this is off topic, it's off topic.
Yeah, I, I anticipate that Kyle Pred will continue to provide us with opportunities to tidy up laws and legislations. Uh, specifically, I guess, with tow-related matters.
Holy shit, um. Okay.
Oh, my god.
I'm, I'm. That's six?
Hey, you're a councilman right now, Cornwood. We've got the best medical technology in the world, okay?
Yeah, okay, 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 okay.
Some might even say that those bullets don't even matter.
Ah, yo. Also, Cornwood, ain't you here on, uh, government time?
I mean, technically, I'm signed in.
He can't cope without his MDT.
Why don't you sign out and sign in as a council member for the meetings?
As I'm always on duty.
Well, no, you're not when you're here, right?
What if some shit happens?
You're a civilian with a weapon.
Okay, I can go sign out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hmm.
Cuz I'm gonna get the door for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
God damn it.
That's.
Not going good today.
Nope.
Can't be easy.
Never was easy.
Yeah, it's, uh, interesting timing.
Well, I'm glad I clarified that.
Yo, where's the freaking deputy mayor? You said he was sick?
He was wiping. Some like COVID or something.
Yep.
Hmm, okay.
COVID-like, something like that.
Hmm, okay. Okay, okay.
Um, so, yeah, I, uh.
Yeah, I mean.
I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page there, cuz you know Kyle is, uh.
Yeah, I'm not sure who'd be wiping the.
He's, he's a good talker, and he'll get people to just kinda give him a smile and nod and move him along. And then he'll use that as like evidence that they agreed with him and told him he was right about it. So I don't want any of us getting cited to as like some input that told him he was allowed to do that shit, cuz that is not what I put my name to paper for.
No, I actually told him specifically he could not do that.
Yeah, well, uh, you're gonna have to talk with him, cuz apparently, um, and then maybe this is, you know, third party, some got confused. Uh, but Slacks, uh, claims that he was told that, you know, uh, you were of the opinion that Kyle was allowed to do that.
No, no, I talked to Slacks, and I initially was from what Kyle was telling me where it was, and Slacks sent me the picture, and I'm like, no, no, I was on board with Slacks, what was Slacks like? So, no, I changed my mind about it after talking to Slacks when he sent me how it was parked. Cuz obviously I was being told, you know, in from secondhand and where.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta nip that shit in the bud.
Yeah, absolutely. And I called Kyle afterwards to tell him that, no, don't, don't do that, why don't you just park in the back?
Yeah.
The back sucks, guys, let's be real.
Well, eh, okay, but i- if the back sucks, what's the difference between just parking in one of the spots in the front and parking in the, in the blacktop?
You talking about like in front of the building?
Yeah. Or to the side?
Tow truck sticks out really far.
Oh.
It like blocks traffic. Uh, honestly, um, I, I'm thinking like, kind of like outside the box on this, um, I feel like this is like.
Nevermind.
I'm worried that the LSPD is targeting easy crime? Does that make sense?
Hmm.
I feel like this is another symptom of that, like, for example, Bobby Charles, you know, you'll get ten cops responding to Bobby Charles, cuz they feel like they can actually handle that situation. Now, you're probably gonna get ten or eleven responding to Kyle Pred parking his tow truck in that parking spot, cuz they can actually handle that situation.
And, uh, we did discuss that last week.
If they, if they need this victory that bad, and, I mean, honestly, I agree, I don't, I don't think you should be doing it there, especially if it's blocking like an actual parking spot.
I don't, all I'm gonna say is right now, uh, I am, and never will be, and never have been, in favor of giving people like what I consider like makeup calls. Like some wrong has been done to them, so now I'm gonna alter my opinion to make it all better, nanabubu, I ain't about that shit, so. Uh, if there's some insinuation that, you know, we're gonna give them one for the sake, giving them one, I want no part of it, I just, I, I, I need to make sure that I'm on the same page as you guys, cuz when we sign this legislation about, uh, declaring lawyers, government employees, and are on duty and on premises, it certainly was not for, in my opinion, them to get into a pissing match about where they can park with the PD. That to me is just stupid.
No, I agree, I agree.
Like, eh, there, that to me is just boundary pushing for the sake of boundary pushing, uh, and I think is juvenile, so. I'm gonna nip in the bud, I'll tell Slacks that is not the intent of that definition, he is not a government employee, meaning he is exempt, can park where he wants, blah, blah, blah. Just treat it like you would anything else, and they can sort it out, they're fucking adults.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Alright. Uh, and then I got, I got a proposal also.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so in the, uh, reports there, uh, there's a judicial compensation program that I've written up, I kept this one very brief, um, I know I spoke to, uh, Max and Siobhan about it a couple weeks ago, uh, and just floated the, the conversation that I'd had and relayed the concern. Um, problem is, is that multiple judges have come to me expressing that they, uh, do not feel like they're, you know, able to like sustain, uh, a normal sort of cost of living.
Paid for like bench trials and stuff.
The truth is with a lot of these people is that, and as Murphy can, you know, well attest to, for people who spend a lot of time in the city, uh, there's not a lot to fill with as a judge, uh, in between cases. And so, you know, it's very hard to keep people around, um, so I end up with a lot of part timers, uh, which is, which is fine, and I accept that. Um, but there's an issue right now where, uh, well, they're, they're just not getting paid enough, so instead of, uh, sort of like, agreeing with the pay raise just for the sake of them being on duty, I think it's more prudent and responsible to make it on a per-case basis. Cuz judges don't create, uh, docket cases or bench trials, they respond to them. So if, if they're responding, that means they're participating and they're actively trying to, you know, provide themselves as, as a help to the city. So I think that, um, you know, we just keep track of that using the official channels that already exist. Uh, I will assemble like a monthly ledger, or a record-keeping, or accounting, whatever term you wanna use, at the end of each month, um, to the treasurer, who then makes the disbarment since based on those records. Uh, and so this way also it makes sure the documentation is public to everyone, because, uh, anybody in interfaction or in the, you know, court case announcements can see what judges are taking what cases. And that would be my proposal.
Uh, I have a proposal in regards to this. What, what if in order to qualify for this ten K bench, twenty K docket thing, um, they had to clock at least, uh, twenty-one hours a week in the city? I, I. Three hours, three hours, three hours a day.
Say that they don't have a lot to do between these cases?
I don't give a fuck, they can go outside and talk to people.
Eric, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, that's gonna disqualify a lot of my better judges.
Unfortunate, I don't know. Uh, what about, what, 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 oh, let's do it this way, let's, let's.
Commenting on that, but that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, that is.
It is a wide house.
I, I know, twenty-one hours out of a week is a lot.
Fifteen?
It, it, what if we do, what if we do, uh, fourteen hours, that's two hours a day?
All right, what if we don't focus on time, what if it's?
Yeah, I think. Quote a thing where to qualify for that, you gotta do X amount, you know, in, in whatever the time period is. That, that seems more productive.
What is there other than bench trials and docket?
I, I like that, um, okay, I mean, if fourteen hours a week is too much, we could, we could go all the way down to one hour a day in the city. Seven hours a week, you think they can swing that?
I feel like if you're a judge, am I wrong, I'm not trying to put too much work on somebody, but I feel like it ain't hard to exist seven hours a week.
It's, I mean, I can tell you it's not.
Cornwood, Cornwood, they're bored.
I've been bored for five months.
Cornwood, they just.
I found plenty of shit to do.
Yeah, I mean, hell, that's, that's not even a full day of Judge Murphy Braun, and he was fine. He always had shit.
I mean, I wouldn't say they're fine, Cornwood.
A lot of things happened, but.
Yeah, something did happen.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um.
I think the boring people are bored.
I, I don't, I don't think, uh, that a seven-hour, uh, requirement is unachievable or bad, or whatever, right? Um, hell, I'm barely around and I probably hit seven hours easily.
Mm hmm.
But what I will say though, is that I think that, um, also, I think that, uh.
Some of these people have actual jobs, like cross.
It is very difficult for me to measure, uh.
Which also makes things.
The contributions that I get from judges based on their time spent in the city.
Yeah.
Um, there are a number, well, I will say there are a number of resources, people that are hired as judges, uh, who I've only ever seen the city once or twice, right, and those people are, you know, invaluable, because maybe they, you know, have experience or whatever, you know, that is necessary. I'm not asking you to reward them for not being around. What I'm asking you to do is to reward the people who are the docket clearers, right, the people who are actually, you know, doing the job, and getting the work done.
Who, who are the do, who, who are the docket clearers right now? Uh, Anastasia, right, Anastasia's one of them?
Um, yeah, I mean, there's a core group, right, it's, it thankfully, it's not like it was where it's one or two people anymore. Thankfully, we have a good balance of people who, you know, are all chipping in, you know, in the ways they can. Uh, so right now, there's, I would say there's probably even four to six people who are, you know, kinda docket clearers, as opposed to the old school was like one to three. Uh, so I, I, I just, I just want to reward those people who, you know, um, are putting in the effort to get the docket out there, get bench trials taken, things like that. That's what I wanna incentivize, because, uh, that has worked traditionally in the past very well. Yeah. Um, it has, it has contributed towards, um, a period where we were actually clearing a very high percentage of bench trial requests, the only time infamously ever under addressed was like AU hours, but that's self-explanatory. Um, but yeah, I, I think that, uh, I think it's a good system, I think it works.
Uh, I, I, let me clarify before I go on, uh, I think the system's great. Uh, I do have a question, though. Um, why do they need this money if they're not in Los Santos frequently?
No, I'm, I'm saying the opposite. I'm saying, I'm saying the ones that are, are the ones that are taking cases, and they're the ones that'll be rewarded.
So, I mean, I, the, so the docket clearers are frequently in Los Santos, not doing judge work, is what you're saying. Uh, which is fine.
I, I can't speak for what obligations they have outside of the city, I don't know.
Okay. Um.
I mean, I, I would just say, if they're here anyway, then that seven hours a week is a protection against other people coming in and vulturing all their shit, the ones who are already coming in and.
Cause they're doing.
But, but, but guys, but guys, if vulturing, if the definition of vulturing is taking bench trials or docket cases, in order to make the vulturing worth it, you'd have to put in more than the seven hours a week anyway. It's like a nonsensical comparison, because one bench trial, I estimated this, the reason I incentivized at the rates I did was because I, I estimated roughly two hours for a bench trial, and that's if you're, you know, if you're caught by the horns, you know, but, um, you know, in the docket cases, I estimated up to four hours, because that's like where I would consider it to be getting, you know, jump of the shark territory. Uh, and so, you know, you break those down, and then you get a per-hour rate of, you know, five K incentivization an hour. What I'm saying is, I don't think that there's a risk of this being abused, because to, to make any money doing it, you'd have to be one of the workhorses anyway, I just, I think it's common sense.
Um, and my concern with this. Speaking from a, uh, a fiscal point as well, uh, state, state account-wise, uh, even if this were twenty-five K per bench and fifty K per docket, that still would not be a significant hit to the state account. Uh, I'm, uh, I will say for the record that I am for this idea, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I, I.
Real quick.
Oh, sure, go ahead, sorry.
Um, so my concern with this is, uh, some of the issues in terms of judge activity are kinda contrary to this, and this would sort of like exacerbate the issue, which is more so that judges are around only for bench trials and all. And this would sort of like exacerbate the issue, which is more so that judges are around only for bench trials and only for docket cases. Meanwhile, I get four or five calls every day I'm in the city about judge stuff. And I'm like, oh, there's none around. Sorry. And I'm not one anymore either. So there's like expungements and other type stuff that, you know, still needs to be available on a regular basis. So that, that'd be my concern is kind of encouraging the same kind of activity that is going on and rewarding it. While other areas still suffer.
I can, I, I wanna say something cause you're kind of blowing the surprise here, right? But, uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up next after this, I didn't think, uh, it would become relevant to this, but, uh, the next thing I want to bring up is the concept of running an election for one elected judge position. Uh, my, my experience in the past was that I myself was elected. Um, and I think there are diamonds in the rough and our people who should just be given a shot at something. Uh, and you know, if they fuck up and they really fuck up bad, I'll fire the shit out of them. I don't care. You know, no skin on my back. Um, but you know, if they put their nose down and they learn and you know, they're passionate about it. You'll probably end up with someone in the early stages of their career, uh, like myself who, you know, was around every day from 18 hours a day. And so I think you probably will get more, um, civic participation like Murphy's talking about with licenses and expungements and things. Uh, and then they're gonna sit back and learn all the other stuff from us. So that would be, I would suggest would help with that concept of judges not being around in the city.
Sounds like a phenomenal idea.
Huge fun.
I love it. So I, you know, in conjunction, I think that would also help alleviate concerns about, uh, you know, it's disincentivizing, uh, community participation, all that. Cause I think we'd have that at least, uh, you know, more covered in terms of hiring those people. And, uh, we, in the past, we did a system of four judges elected. And then we would keep two of them at the end of the period, uh, basically like on average, I think. Um, and they would either be asked to become full judges or just, you know, they could run for another term or, you know, anything in between. That's something we can discuss in the future. For now, I just wanted to give it a shot with like one person at a time, you know?
It's easier to train one person to at a time.
Uh, so do we want to vote on, any, any other questions about the, uh, the money one first?
No.
Uh, I do actually have a question about it. So, uh, this may curtail on this stuff later tonight. So,
I missed the other stuff that you was talking about.
Off on that until some other stuff is talked about later.
Okay. Go me.
Um, I was gonna bring up rather than hours, what if we were, okay, you remember when the pass to qualify for it? You had to have a court announcement that open court hours were, you know, essentially happening. There was a judge available. What if we brought that back?
Wait.
Oh, uh.
Cause I think that's, that, that kills two birds with one stone with that.
Yeah, hold the open court. Uh, how would we incentivize? I guess you would consider anything an open court of bench trial.
Yeah, or a small claims action, et cetera.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, sure. That makes sense.
I think that, that, that way you have people who are showing that they are available and, um,
Hey, you just do some like two, two hour periods a week or something for open court.
Yep. And then they just have to provide those, uh, you know, a copy of those announcements to you for documentation or whatever.
My mind's not active as I'd like it to be.
Yeah, no, we can talk about that. Um, cool. And then, um, I'm, you know, open to your guys' input about the, uh, judicial elections, how many you think we should elect, you know, that kind of thing. Um, but, I'm just looking for, you know, your thoughts on just at least doing one for now.
I think two would be right, right in there.
Think two is like.
Two, two elected judges?
I think you target timeframes. It's probably the better for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we can't target timeframes. It's a popular vote.
Yeah, you could have them run for like a, a U shift.
Correct.
Yeah.
What can we like lock the votes per time zone?
No, but.
Exactly. It, it adds.
That is an interesting concept though.
I mean, PD does it, right? They hire based on time zone.
Yeah, we, we have three.
Yeah, why not?
You have a shift, one, two and three judge.
Yeah, shift, one, two and three judge. All right.
Who's the shift three judge right now?
Good luck.
Whoever's awake.
Uh, it's too much to talk about. Um, so essentially what would happen, and this is me middle grounding myself. Um, you know, Damian Tinkerman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So he became a lawyer. He requested to be a lawyer. I said, I'll give you a shot, right? He's one of the, like a diversity hire, just threw him a bar, said, go for it. Fuck it. And then he's now, uh, has like a full on thing. He's given me like his application or proposal to be a mayor and all this. Or not a mayor, uh, judge, sorry. Um, and a lot of his thing is about, you know, shift three and there's not judges around and all that. Uh, the problem is, is that there also aren't really lawyers either. And so traditionally what has occurred in the past is we take the person who's the most active shift three lawyer. Uh, we make them a judge and then there's no lawyer. And, uh, that's, that's probably would be the case right now. Cause we lost Ledson. He's a doctor. God damn you, Cantor.
I'm so sorry.
Uh, and, uh, yeah, it's, it's hard to find people in those hours. So, I don't know. I, 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 I'm, I'm saying I'm for the elections when it needs shift. But I also recognize the shift three is never going to be solved by any problem. We, every program we put in. So it's just not even worth, uh, caring about, I guess. We just gotta, you know, proceed forward.
I, I do think one thing to keep in mind is like the, the idea that, hey, you're really good at this job. So we can't have you be a part of that other job that you actually want. Is, is a pretty damn bad feeling. So, I mean, I know, I know it kind of puts, puts the whole thing in a bind. Like you said, now your most active lawyer ain't lawyering. But I'm sure that if, if people knew about it and they knew they had the opportunity, I'm sure you'd be able to find somebody else to, be as active as lawyer as Damien is.
Well, and the, and the other problem is I don't, uh, i- if I, I don't, I don't know that, uh, I, I just, I don't, I don't know that he's competent.
Well, I think that's fair. Let's legit admit.
And I don't mean that in like a derogatory way. I just mean, I genuinely don't have enough feedback on the gentleman. Uh, that convinces me that he's even close to ready for it. So I, you know?
I think he has a lot of really good common sense and he has really, uh, he has a really good way of articulating logical arguments. Um, I do think he would be competent in the role, but I do also believe that he needs a lot of training. He won't be ready to go from the get go. You know what I mean? Um,
Yeah. And who's gonna train him in shift three?
I think he can be trained in other shifts, but that will.
Why don't we do it? Oh shit.
Oh.
Me and you. We can give him a judge crash course. Why not?
Great. My suggestion is go look at like all the bench trial requests and see how many are actively occurring during shift three to even see if it's needed.
Uh, it's needed.
I think there's, there, that's a kind of a catch 22 situation. Bench trials because there weren't.
Oh, no, they're, they, they're still, they, they requested constantly shift three. Cause I, I wake up in the morning, I'll look and I'll see there were like two or three missed or one missed. And it's like, you know, so is, you know, straight, I'm, I'm fast asleep.
That's right. Damian told me he had 11 missed bench child requests in a row. Like over the course of a few.
Well, and that's also just, that's also a self fulfilling prophecy, right?
It is.
So.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Reason I want to have more judge presence in the city, because when there's judges awake in the city and they get calls about bench trials, they tend to happen whereas, you know, you can, you can kind of leave them on red. I'm sorry if, if you don't feel like it, if you're just not even in the city. It tends to happen sometime.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know too much about it. But if you're, if you're willing to have them train somebody, who's, who's ready and willing to learn.
Man, I'm so fucking lost in this conversation.
And just give them, give them like a trial period.
Well, no, we already have, I mean, there's, there's guidelines. It's, it should be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have guidelines. The, the past system had a whole documented breakdown of, roles and responsibilities, what judges could do, what, uh, and I don't want to impart that whole system. Um, but at least for the elected judges, we could probably just use the, that portion.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, uh,
You drive a hole trying to teach someone everything. I think that they, everyone should be responsible for some of that themselves.
Yeah, there also should be a, um, and I won't get to that. Um, but yeah, just the thing I'm kicking around, um, if you guys think, uh, you, you come up with any more like comments or ideas on it, let me know. Okay.
Alright.
Alright, appreciate it.
Oh, I, I want to go back, um, cause, cause we were already on like one, one, you know, direction. Before, uh, before we move on to more things this week. I don't think we talked about the rider protection, check legislation that we passed for you to look at Judge Crane.
Also, I just want to be, uh, cognizant Andy is in the back waiting to.
Oh, yeah.
Present something. So I don't want to take all of your time.
This is giving me ideas for other stuff.
Did you say the, uh, whistleblower protection?
No, he's saying the helmet one.
Yeah, we should talk about the whistleblower too, I guess. I think that was Shabans.
Are we what?
The, the whistleblower? That was your thing?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I did come up with one, uh, note for this one actually, which is like, like a Sal Rosenberg provision. You know, if you have a medical reason, you can't wear a helmet, you're fine.
Oh yeah, we have that in the, uh, the drip act as well. That's probably smart. Yeah.
Hmm.
Uh, can we do something about the name?
Well, it's to protect the riders of cabinless vehicles.
Oh.
Alright.
That's why I didn't see it.
Do you have an idea for a different name? And I'll go with it. Uh, alright, so what's up? We have that one. EMS request was that?
Oh no, the other one was the.
That was just, uh, Max wrote it all down to talk to, uh, John City about the possibilities. Nothing that you had to put into effect.
Dogtown suggested changes.
Hmm. Yeah, yeah. That's what we talked about the radios. Oh, that was a big, big.
The radios, yeah.
So what happened?
Oh yeah, the whole radio ordeal. So.
Okay, I see. You guys set up.
Yeah.
I got it. Okay, cool. Alright, I'm just reading and then, uh,
I offered the T L D R like verbally, but.
Tenants rights.
That's just like a work in progress. Nothing's been done with that. Yeah, it, it was just brought up. If anyone wants to work on it, just not sure. We talked about that early in, um, term one about the possibility for that. Uh, just sort of, um, brainstorming right now, not, not, nothing's really written there. There's one sentence.
Cat, I just realized how OCD I was gonna get about the tags not being used and why they exist.
I'm sorry. I'll go target.
I'm doing, I'm doing it all right now. Trust me. I'm catching up.
I'll take one. I got you.
Alright, I'm, I'm busy, uh, next.
Oh, let's see.
Whistleblowers get voted on?
It did.
They did. I don't know what happened to the vote section. It's kind of annoying.
Alright, I saw, put that as approved.
Uh, it was, yeah.
Yes.
Alright.
Uh, I don't think you guys voted on it. I think you said that they were going to flush it out more.
Oh, you know what? You know what? We all brought it up. I think people liked it. It was general approval, but we said we wanted to brainstorm the process to place the whistleblowing.
Alright, work in progress.
Yeah, work in progress.
About wanting a outline path, uh, for how it would be handled. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But no one was against it.
Kind of wanted you here. So y'all, y'all want to do that now?
Hmm.
I'm, I'm up to do it now. Y'all are.
We can.
Sounds good. Hash it out.
I, um, I guess Murphy, this is your, it's gonna, it would be underneath you. What, do you have an idea of how you want this to start?
Okay, Andy was shouted out, but they immediately forgot again.
So, um, I mean, obviously a lot of different communications are gonna kind of funnel towards me, you know, whether it's bar complaints or, uh, civilian oversight related things and, and now this, I just want to make sure that especially with this, that, it's, uh, you know, it's very clear, the delineation between these things. Cause a whistleblower has to be treated with a special amount of care. Cause obviously, you know, it's all, it's all here in the legislation, like these people are putting themselves at great risk. And, uh,
It's because cornwood. It's because cornwood.
So like, I don't want like random clerks getting these complaints by mistake. Uh, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So that, that'd be my primary concern. Um, but obviously anybody who's looking to blow the whistle is gonna be aware of the whistleblower acts. Or we, we can assume they will be. So I think it'll be very clear how it works in the event.
Do you want their complaint to like specifically cite that this is like whistleblowing so that it is like clear, like they just need to like clearly state that the nature of their complaint should, is whistleblowing. So and they're seeking the safeguards, the anonymity rather than another form of complaint?
I don't think that I need to benefit from anything further in the legislation. I do think that the whistleblower would benefit greatly from, uh, more, thorough definition on what qualifies as whistleblowing, you know, like the, the, the level or severity of the occasion. Um, I think it should be like clear, uh, so it's like not like excessively minor things. You know, I'm blowing the whistle on my coworker for stealing my lunch for two weeks, et cetera. So like when we're talking about whistleblowing, we're talking about like, uh,
It's, I mean, specifically says like wrongdoing of like government entities.
My, my superior, my superior within this department is like literally stealing hundreds of thousands of dollars, et cetera. You know, like it's, it's like something of that scale where you, you can't speak up internally. Because of retaliation, you know, because it's someone who has leverage over you or is above, above you. Essentially.
Right. So, what do you want the first step to be?
Um, like I said, I just.
Contact you? Like is that, is that where you wanted to start?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, pretty much like. And then from there, like, you know, in terms of protecting the person, it would have to, I, I think it would have to be discussed between me and Crane. And then Crane would have to sign off on their continued anonymity through whatever process is, you know, endured from there. Does that, does that make sense to Ukraine? Like I'm just spitballing.
Yeah, uh, it's pretty much, I think it's gotta be me. Um,
I, I come to you with an actionable request and then, you know, if it goes to court, they continue to be anonymous through that process. And it goes to the highest court.
Yep.
Alright, there, I mean, that's pretty much what I have. Make sure the definition.
Oh, also, oh, motherfucker. Can you go? Sorry, I just, I forgot my other idea that just came to me. Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just like make it clear to the person who's gonna be making these complaints, like what the, what, you know, what, what whistleblowing really is like all about? And then, yeah, just making sure that the process from me to you to make sure that, you know, exceptions are made in terms of how court usually works to protect their identities and so on. Um, yeah, the escalation process sounds pretty.
If that does occur, do you want to form a committee, define who that committee is, who to investigate it, how to investigate it, what the repercussions are, the timeframe, would that should occur? And maybe a civilian oversight board on top of it? Kind of just figuratively thinking of steps?
Um, I don't think it needs to be like super duper complicated. It could either be from amongst the civilian oversight or, uh, it could just go to Crane and a selection of appeals panelists as per secondary appeals, uh, if that's easier. I, I don't know which one is more just, I defer to Crane.
I mean, it's got your name on it, right? Isn't the Murphy whistleblower thing or?
Well, I would, I would defer, like, in terms of which option is more just, I would defer to Crane because I'm not sure that this would fall in the purview of civilian oversight because this is more about government whistleblowers. Where civilians are more directed towards government from civilians.
Uh, yeah, I mean, what if, what if we have a police officer who, who, you have the, the police continuity plan. Police officer goes to the mayor about something, but then now they are being reprimanded for something they said to the mayor or the chief of staff. You know? So they are going to their superior based on what the police continuity plan says. But then if like a captain, sergeant, whatever the hell else now reprimands you for it, where they feel a certain type of way, they start mistreating you just because you had concerns about something, then went to the mayor or the chief of staff about it. That's a problem.
So Cornwood, let me ask you, do, do you think, cuz you're, you're in the police department, do, do you think that it's better if, uh, if, if these, if these things, like if they go to court are dealt with by people on the civilian oversight board? Do you think that that's better than like if it were council members?
Ah.
Cuz the thing is like, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even trying to, I'm not even trying to, I'm not even trying to like throw shade your way, but like you're a member of law enforcement, you know, you're elected to this position from amongst the rank and file. So if you're on an appeals panel type situation about a whistleblowing situation, you could in theory then communicate to your lieutenant, oh, hey, you know, some, some motherfuckers out to get you.
Right. I, I don't think, I don't think that's, uh.
I don't think that like Cornwood's gonna do that. I'm just saying, you know, I'm just trying to like, what if, you know.
You're essentially future proven the, the position, the, the.
Who should be on the whistleblower thing, yeah.
Can I, uh, can I make the recommendation with it? Cuz it doesn't seem like y'all have like a solid recommendation of how to deal with this? Maybe meet the two of y'all, accomplish something, put it in writing and discuss it? Is it, I mean, actually throw shit at the wall and see what sticks.
Well, I feel like we're, we're almost right there with having this thing sent. We've already talked about it for two weeks. I mean, I think we just, we hashed it out right here now. Yeah, but it's so close, right? I mean, we don't wanna overcook it either, right?
Yeah. Pad to paper, that's it.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's fine, like workflow wise, like people come to me, I go to Crane, Crane decides, you know, court wise, how, how it stacks up from there. Um, panel, no panel, like.
Yeah, I, I agree with that cuz I need to sit down and think about, uh, with like whistleblowing, government corruption. Uh, yeah. I'll come up with something, but I think, uh, I think, I think it will probably need to be, um, amorphous. It will probably need to be dynamic, so we'll probably need, uh, the liberty to assemble panels based on what the corruption alleged is, for example, uh, if it was anyone outside of the judiciary, uh, or like a lawyer, I guess I'd say. Um, I would assemble probably a panel of judges. But if it's a judge or, you know, uh, you know, city council member or somebody from the civic side, then, you know, how does that get adjudicated? So I think we'd probably need to be a little more dynamic and things like that.
So.
Little fluid, that, yeah, makes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we could always put something together and, and adjust it, right? Not just for this, but for anything.
Well, I think you just use a generic phrasing of enables, uh, the chief justice to assemble a panel. Doesn't have, it doesn't have to stay, well, there's a panel of judges, a panel of city council members, just a panel based on the situation.
Yeah, I think, I think that's it.
And that way I avoid any kind of interruption or suggestion of bias or interference.
Yeah, easy, yeah.
So not on point today.
Cuz they, cuz you know, in any large, high-profile corruption scandal, there will always be allegations of impropriety both ways. So the only way to prevent those is just have me assemble the panel based on the situation and then that'll drown out those issues.
Perfect. Alright.
Crane, if you are good with that, then I am, I'm good with the way that sounds, just like in general.
Yeah, if, if, if I'm brought a viable case of corruption, I will assemble a panel to deal with it. Which is honestly what would have happened anyway, so, you know, good to write it down, I guess.
There we go.
Yeah. It's also about protecting those, uh, government markers from retaliation throughout the process.
Speaking of which, the idea that I was briefly reminded of when Murphy was talking.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, oh, do we need to vote on that or Murphy's thing? What, what are we doing?
Well, I guess, did we vote? Oh, no, we didn't vote.
I don't think we voted, but I don't think anyone had concerns.
I think it's ready, if we wanna just present for a vote right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we can vote for it, yeah. I say yes.
Yeah, as discussed, I'm ready to vote.
Any names?
Not for my son.
Cool.
Mr. Mayor.
And is this, uh?
Max?
Oh, boy.
Max! While he's, while he's mulling it over, uh.
He's just on the dark side of the moon.
Oh, he might be.
Oh, no.
Max. Is, is this, is this active immediately? Any, any sort of legislation that we pass? Is it, is it enacted as soon as we okay it and you say it's good to go?
Uh, I, so the, the typical format, Cornwood, if you check the city council documents right now.
I'm asleep.
Okay.
Okay, you're voting with us.
Y'all, he's just thinking about it, okay?
Hey, deeply meditating.
I understand.
What are we voting on?
So blowing. All the whistleblower thing. It was all guesses so far. Are you a snake?
Yeah, yeah. That was a game on that last time. Alright, uh, and then I have a suggestion that I just remembered because of, uh, Murphy, and it is as follows. Uh, in the past, we always had a large amount of difficulty with the concept of whistleblowers or, um, criminal informants, right? Uh, because it was very difficult, uh, to, you know, um, get someone access to a home and all that kinda stuff. Nowadays, our real estate market and the, the keys are a lot different. Uh, and we might actually be able to facilitate based on what I've seen with Miss Andy Jones's, uh, set of her production as well as some other things I've witnessed. Uh, I think we ought, uh, as a city council to, uh, use state funding to purchase a property that we do not disclose to anyone. Um, I think, you know, we could probably do a blind system where I'm given, you know, a smattering of properties by the council and then one just is chosen so that, you know, nobody, uh, could disperse the information.
Hmm.
Uh, and then we hire, um, someone under N D A and all that to decorate it and we create a safe house. And so this way, if someone is a criminal informant for a major trial and they're being hunted, which has happened in the past, or for example, maybe they're a whistleblower that is afraid of retaliation physically, this has also happened in the past, uh, we could have a place for them.
I love this. Huge fan. Yeah, that's interesting.
Not on the council, by it. Has been effective in the distant past in certain situations, so, uh.
I can think of three.
Yeah, so that, that was my suggestion. I just reminded of, yeah, uh, I think we, we carry out like a, you know, an R F P, you know, session, various designers and, uh, you know, we bring them for the council, we select one, then we select like a smattering of properties, like we said, put them into a sort of a black box and, you know, eventually one gets purchased and there you are.
I mean, I don't think they're gonna specifically discuss what property right now.
Yeah, great. Uh, um, sounds great to me. Send it. Uh, Max, TJ, Cantor, thoughts?
Uh, they still have the ability to do, uh, like spoofed IDs, Cornwood, is that a thing?
Uh, as far as I know, there's not, but.
Okay, that used to be.
I'm sure that, uh, they can get the machine back, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, uh, surely somebody somewhere's got one. I just, I just ain't seen one.
Okay, I didn't know if it was up and running. I know I worked for you, that was like a thing, but not really talked about.
Yeah, I know, I know they had one cuz anyway, I know they had one. Uh, but yeah, I mean, we could probably get the machine back. I'm sure it's in storage somewhere.
Yeah, it's gotta be. Why not? They print all these, just gotta plug in a different name.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good for it. Sorry, I don't think I answered that question.
Cool. Alright, well, I'll, I'll write it up officially and, you know, uh, and basically, uh, I guess we'll maybe we'll have Alex, uh, start gathering some names of designers, maybe Miss Jones has some knowledge cuz she got, you know, something done really well lately. Yeah, perfect. Well, there you go. Uh, so yeah, that, that's, that's all my stuff for a week. Sorry to, you know, disjointed, remember one thing here and there.
That's great.
Yeah, it happens.
Appreciate it.
Do we wanna, uh, let Andy go next?
Yeah, we should.
It's probably for the best. Yeah, yeah, you ready, Andy? Y'all, right? Everybody got their notebooks?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Open them up if you feel like reading the lovely bullet points. I'm sorry, it's not more bullet points and I know people don't like reading in this state. Okay, so pretty much, just shout out time coming to you for $250,000 grand prize for my week-long survival event. It is Legends versus Locals, which means eight returning All-Stars will compete against eight new local players. I've been working on it for about two months now. I'm probably still a couple of weeks out, however, um, I wasn't aware that TJ was the treasurer until recently. So I was unsure how quickly the prize money would make it into the account and make sure it was ready for the day of. Now that it's TJ, I feel a little bit more secure. Um, this event is easily, if I'm going to get rid of being humble, probably one of the best that occurs here. As far as the likability, as far as the repeatability, um, and as far as the massive amount of work effort that I put into it. I cannot explain how many hundreds of countless hours I put into this. I love doing it and people have a great time playing it. Um, that being said, if you want the actual numbers, 92 people have auditioned over the course of two seasons. I didn't do any auditions for season one. Uh, a total of 67 contestants have played in the past three seasons. We'll add 16 more to that this season. Um, 64 challenges have been created by me, um, and played out after this season takes place, which is a ton of running of ideas, but I will get through it. Um, again, they take months for me to plan. Um, we've given away $16 million through this, but 5 million of those were donated back to me because they loved it so much, begging for another season. Um, it is so well-attended that for, not only for every tribal council, do I have to make seating for the audience? I also have to provide seating for every single challenge. People filter in and out to just watch this event every single time it happens. So we have people coming, yeah, we have people coming in and out every single day just to watch challenges, to sip the tea. We have people live tweeting all the way through it. It's always such a good, a good fucking time. I would say easily, um, over 100 people probably filter in and out through it.
Oh, yeah.
I can confirm I was the OG live tweeter of season one.
There you go. That's true, you absolutely were. Um, if you wanna know anything about the history, this, this event happened because Sis fucking abandoned me while I was second in command of the H O A and I wanted a way to trick the boys into doing their fucking chores for the gang, so I made them into games and we played survival instead.
Oh, shit.
Yes. Yeah, I used to be in a gang, Cornwood. For like.
Criminal mayor, Andy Jones.
God, that's me.
Remember the mayor?
The OG criminal mayor.
Original crime mayor.
Have we ever had a mayor that wasn't in a gang?
Oh, Emma Gang, Emma Gang, well, I guess Doc would be. I think Emma was probably the only one I could say, who was just a doctor.
I don't think, uh, shit.
Emma got accused of being in Changang.
Yeah, that's true.
Remember that? Me too.
Yeah, that's true. That's hilarious.
Yeah.
Oh, I remember. I mean, I barely.
I mean, she never came back to be in a doctor after, so I don't know, maybe.
Bunny wasn't, Max wasn't.
Oh, I, I think Hardcastle was in the Bunny Gang, so you know, that's.
Yeah, Hardcastle was in the spending millions of dollars on my wife gang.
He, he was in his own little thing there.
Hey.
Hey, regardless, guys.
I want to rephrase that, embezzling millions of dollars for my wife gang.
Thank you. Oh, true. The embezzle wagons that we never asked for.
Oh, I'll teach you afterwards. I'll send you the thing I use. I just copied.
Hey, 1.5 million dollars for a truck? That was, uh, I like that one.
Yeah.
My business did very well.
Benson's back alley bullshit.
I wasn't corrupt, guys.
Shut your goddamn mouth.
True, though.
Fucking I sell boosted cars on us.
Never happens, never happens.
Yeah, I love it, Andy. Uh, you know, I have a very high opinion on event funding. It's like something I'm very excited about. Rewarding people, giving people stuff to do that's fun and unique and exciting. And allows people to come together and meet each other and actually talk to each other.
Yes, which is the biggest feedback that I value from former players is that they enjoy that they made connections with people that they feel like they otherwise probably wouldn't have met. I mean, I had Bones and Luciano playing in my event a couple of weeks ago and they were saying, let's settle this shit from five years ago on survival. It's fantastic. I love it. And, um, as far as why I'm asking for 300,000, I know I said 250 cuz I have been going back and forth on how much to ask. Um, I have made some calls around to see how much the average civilian worker could make in a week if they were really grinding their ass off. The standard seems to be about 100,000 to 200,000, depending on how hard they go. So I feel like I need to incentivize people to take a break from that grind.
Yeah, I was there.
You know, make that money in a fun way because otherwise they're gonna say, oh, I could go make more than that by sitting in my sanitation truck, which by all fucking means, please do. But I don't think it's enough to break the economy. Yes, it could help towards buying a car, house, a really, really cheap house in the south side, the entire amount. But if they're going for something bigger like Crazy Fast Cargo Burtoon or car, it's not gonna cover the entire thing.
Alright, be honest. How much are you underselling your number by?
She's underselling that number so hard, Andy. That's not enough money.
Oh, oh, I mean, I will take anything. I just never want to ask too much to.
How much, okay, what, no, what number would you actually propose if you weren't worried about fiscal responsibility?
I would ask for, if I wasn't worried about fiscal responsibility, like I full-on turn on, turn off Andy Jones, right?
Yeah.
I would ask for half a million to give away. I would ask for an additional like 200,000 to give for a rerun of this season with a different cast. Who will make less, but will still have a great time.
That's doable. The state accounts are very good.
Already asking.
So you're gonna, you're gonna do like a back-to-back?
Pretty much.
And you want, and this, how many weeks is each one?
Um, they are five days. I have cut down the number from like 22 to 16 contestants because I used to be like having them pull 10 hours a day, which everybody happily stayed around for, um, but I'm trying to cut it down so they can still.
Okay, so it's, so it's a week for each one?
Yep. Week long full of like six, I think there's like 14 challenges in this one, a bunch of tribal councils. There's a ton of moving parts. It's great. Um, so pretty much this would be for two weeks. If I could get half a million and give 250K each, I would be more than happy.
Um. Sounds good to me. Shit, I mean.
I think we give her the 700,000.
Yeah.
If I don't end up running back seasons, um, I can either transfer the money back if I end up, um, switching gears or I can, uh, visit with you guys again and then keep it to allocate for other future events and not have to come back here and pitch them all over again.
Uh, question.
Mm-hmm.
Is this prize pool just for the sole winner?
Um, the prize pool is typically for the sole winner. I, I have toyed with the idea of having like a top two, top three.
Do like, you should do a fan favorite vote, do like a Twitter poll.
Nico Canto was our fan favorite for season two from season.
Like a fan favorite gets like 100K or something, that'd be cool. Cuz then like, cuz then, cuz then it would just be like, maybe someone who's got the most personality but wasn't the best in the competitions, uh, still gets rewarded for participating, right? Uh, still gets rewarded for participating, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know what you mean. Cuz, yes, yes, I've seen things like that done before. I never give a prize to number two because I worry that they'll play the game differently if they're not going all out for number one.
Make it, make it a surprise then. Recorded though, so.
Well, we're already, well, well, Max, if you. We're already gonna have to edit some parts out this considering we authorized a safe house, so probably that shouldn't go on record either.
True. Yeah, Ursula.
Don't worry, Ursula doesn't.
Okay, no, I will make sure that part is taken out.
Ursula would never do anything like that.
Yeah, no matter how, of course not. No matter how it's divvied up, I probably wouldn't want to give more than like 300 to a single person, but if that is the amount that I get, I am open to the idea of divvying it up. I just worry that they'll, yes, I am.
Okay.
I just worry that they'll play differently if, um, if they know that they could just gun for a second spot instead of number one.
Barter with someone.
Yeah, I'm going for maximum spice. I want them fucking cutting each other's throats to get number one.
No, I can see that.
Yeah, fan favor would be good though.
Yeah, fan favor would be good after the season.
So I, I don't, I don't mean to be rude, but, but why? Why do we have, like, what is survival legends versus local? Don't we have a survival? We have a survival police department versus everyone already. It happens every day.
No, but this is, this is not about a gunplay, Cornwood.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
If you read one of the, uh, reviews, Nico Canto phrased it as conflict has never been so healthy. That's pretty good. A glowing review in my opinion.
Oh shit, okay, maybe I'll partake in this then.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, looks like a good time.
Um, yeah, totally. After you guys, I am more than happy to take whatever you guys give me. The help would be immense. The last event did successfully earn me the warehouse to build the set, which I would take you guys to if it wasn't in Polito and you weren't already sitting in this room for a million hours. But if anybody are interested in seeing it, feel free to come back.
Yeah, I would love to. What is Tessa's review here? What the hell is this?
Oh, yeah, apparently some of, okay, so in season two, I allowed phones and that means that people were texting each other. I would assume things like, we gotta get rid of him now. He can't be here anymore. We gotta fucking cut his throat. And then apparently she was part of an investigation because of her text messages.
Wait, what?
Because of out of context.
She said, cut his throat?
No, 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 I'm saying this is years ago. This is years ago.
So she said that shit years ago.
I don't know what she said specifically. Saying those types of things were very frequently probably texting among each other. No, they don't literally hurt each other in survival.
No, Tessa wouldn't do that.
She stabbed me in the throat.
Like, hey, what the hell?
Like two months ago.
My god, I'm sorry.
Dolphin.
I'd stand corrected.
Hmm.
So. Uh, that is my presentation. Any questions?
No, this sounds great. How do I sign up? No, um.
I hold open auditions if that's a legitimate question. I tend to set it up down at the famous thing at Maze Bank Arena.
Uh, I've been, I've been advocating for, uh, you know, rewarding. Events and basically.
Could be several more hours.
So I'm, I, I'd be very encouraged if you got the funding for this that you're asking.
I saw the set yesterday and it is the definition of high effort.
Be here maybe sometimes. Everything Andy does is, so I'm not surprised. Yeah.
Andy, was the thing that I accompanied you to, was that part of the planning for this too?
Uh, no, that was the last event that went to the funding for the warehouse for this. Well, for this and other events.
Oh, right. Yeah, yeah, okay. But, uh, yeah, you, you got my vote for funding.
A lot of guessing the game, yeah. My take this time is the same as last time. Uh, if any, uh, one individual deserves the trust of, uh, usage of some of the state funds for something like this, uh, it is Andy Jones. So I'm perfectly happy for that. Yeah, I mean, you guys know, I'm more than happy to hand over my bank account if you guys somehow, you know, end up thinking that something weird's happened.
Oh, I'm not worried.
Ain't got no worries. I do think, uh.
Pro tip, it might be Minecraft.
But I mean, I think that if people are doing shit to, to support the people of the city, I'm, I'm, I'm well, well, well in favor.
Thank you. Um, I guess it's up to you guys what number then? I will take the most you are willing to give and allocate it as.
I would approve. The reason I asked you what, what number you actually would ask for is because
Now I'm curious.
I know that you're gonna undersell yourself out of some compulsion towards making sure we understand that you're like legit and not, you know, taking money or anything. So you're trying to show us how conservative you can be. Uh, but that's bullshit cuz we already know that because you've run this thing like multiple times already, so uh, don't undersell yourself. We should just give her what she asked for, in my opinion.
Yeah, agreed.
And you'd ask for 50,000 before, right?
Uh, for the last event, yeah, I asked for 50,000.
And I know that you spent more than that on the rocks for the new set. So no, you're getting, you're getting, you're getting the full amount. You're getting the 700,000.
About $61,000 worth of rocks.
Holy fuck.
Oh, damn.
How many rocks did you individually place again?
316 different rounds. It's fucking cool though. There's a skull. It's great. Um, yeah, 700,000 would be amazing. I'll run several like back to back versions of this particular one before I move on to like a different theme, different set, different challenges, all that stuff. Um, I like to give them like a four to six month time gap between them, but, um, if more people wanna play, uh, and with it being a little bit more difficult to set up nowadays cuz I don't have as many tools available to me as I used to. Um, the gap will probably come sooner and I'm willing to run it back with the same challenges and stuff. And besides, with this type of event, the game really does change based on who's playing, not necessarily what challenges their person's anticipating in, so. 700 would be great if you guys are, are good with that.
Uh, you know, you know what? Andy, we have, uh, we just got, well, the rentals technically, I forgot. We just got, I was gonna say, we just got helicopters in. And, and we could even do some shit with your event regarding the helicopters. That's another discussion.
Tell me when you guys got parachutes. I got challenges in mind for that.
Oh, my lord. Sorry.
Listen, I wanna set up a target with police barriers.
You know, don't challenge your, you know, chickens where they hatch, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's just, uh, just an idea that I got for down the road, maybe for season five.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, season five will definitely happen. I will keep running this as long as there are people who love it.
Did you give any nays on 700,000 dollars for Andy Jones?
So you're splitting up as, how much of a breakdown that costs again? Just really quick. 500 prize, 200.
It depends if I do give money to a second place, but I still wanted to toy with that idea because I do really like the cutthroat aspect of it. Um, so I would say I would stick probably within like 250 because I was allocating 50,000 of the original price to like a bum second season. Uh, but if the price can be more, I'd probably stick with like 300 for the first season and then the rest be like.
Lot of yap in here.
Depending how many people want me to run it back. If not, I can return the money or allocate to a different event.
Again, prove it as a certain amount. As each one of those come up, those can be milestone payments based upon.
You want me to withdraw it when I actually need it?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that works for me.
As it goes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that. It's not hard to contact you. Cool. But I will ask for the 300 relatively soon. Cuz I'll be done any day now. Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Of course, you have a good one, Andy.
Oh, also, just as a side note, you guys should get process servers. It would give judges quests to give and follow and watch people and then you could pay them like per job.
Good idea.
Run.
I, I was using servers for, uh, a cease and desist wouldn't, but I was actively practicing law. It is super fun. I 10 out of 10 recommend.
Yeah, give me, cuz you also don't need like construction. You could just pay them based on per contract. Okay, anyway, I'm outta here. Later. Thanks, guys.
Okay, she's great.
Okay, is my aunt. She's amazing.
As, uh, as is, as is customary, uh, we will now go to my left to start to see, uh, who has what to present. We've got Solomon Walker.
Uh, excuse me?
TJ.
What? TJ Walker, sorry.
Wow, wow.
ADMC, last name probably related somehow, you know how it is.
Not related, but thank you. We're two very distinct people. I definitely don't have a British accent. Uh, I have questioned quite a bit. Um, I wanna follow up on some of the Dogtown stuff. So the last time that we had talked, uh, I did go meet with Bobby, um, and actually got him to be serious for a hot minute, which is kind of hard to do. So did a full assessment kind of of where they are at as costs. Uh, they estimate roughly, this is in Dogtown treasurer notes. This is not something that's like a actual legislation or something. I just put it there for y'all to look. They estimate their cost roughly to be about eight to 10K per day. Pause, yes, go ahead.
Uh, these idiots are accounting for several thousand dollars wasted bullets that they're shooting.
Yeah, I was, I was seeing that.
Yeah, this is across the department. I'm, I'm well aware, believe me.
I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna enter my stance on the record ahead of time. Uh, fuck Bobby and Carmine and fuck their shitty request. Uh, and I love them and they're doing a great job over there. Uh, but part of this agreement where they get carte blanche and this lawless zone was that we don't have to deal with them or fund them. We, we gave them jobs. We're hiring more of their people.
Let, let me go, but let me finish with this before we go into.
All right, I know. I'm just getting myself on the record, so, you know.
Before we start, Terrence Park, cuz you weren't here for the part where they're doing a proposal crane, uh, and I'm going to give you, I guess, a, I'll T O D R on this. So they came in asking. Uh, and gave a demonstration of inmates that were shackled, uh, and they were requesting that they're able to work with the state to do sanitation, do deliveries, do jobs, uh, with them. They're requesting then funds afterwards, which would be helped or used to then basically fund themselves. I have on there a suggestion. This is not by any all means. They, whatever, it's open from discussion. I thought that it would be appropriate if the state would purchase materials if they were for sanitation. Employees, inmates into positive funds into, I have to have a pending state account accessible only by those members of Dogtown. Those purchased by the state will be used for repairs of emergency service vehicles. And should, uh, this is down the line, um, that be of interest? And Siobhan and I talked a little bit about this. Business is interested in working with PD or such wise for those emergency service vehicles. They bid on a contract, the administrator of those repairs. Uh, kind of a circular economy with it. Thoughts?
These guys are idiots. TJ, are you willing to do all the work for them?
Well, uh, we do have a pending, uh, cabinet that is looking at commerce and labor and that could fall right into there. But yeah, am I able to? Listen, I, I just wanna give people opportunities. Okay, and if they're willing to do the work, then I see no reason why, as long as it's actually benefiting. If it's for bullshit, then no.
So wait, so the, what are the, how do they get the materials? They're gonna go do sanitation?
Yeah, so they brought in inmates that were shackled.
Okay, and so then, so, so you're telling me you're gonna get a bunch of these lifers are gonna go to sanitation. What happens if someone robs them doing sanitation? Is the lifer with 15 life sentences for, you know, cannibal torture gonna then bite the guy's face off and then am I gonna be liable?
They're trying to ask for essentially the ability to function as cops outside of the prison in regards to their.
Fuck, no.
No, that wasn't it.
Oh, that was definitely where they went, but we did talk them down.
We, we, we gave them homework, right? And their homework was to go talk to Barrick of how potentially this could function. They obviously haven't gotten back to us yet. Uh, I've actually been trying to reach Barrick in the meantime for separate issues. Um, so I'd imagine that they did not catch up with him, but it would be based upon them coming back here and proposing that. So I just did a cost analysis, basically what they're formulating, if this is feasible or not. I'm not trying to pitch it for them. I'm just putting it as a suggestion as more context from what they came with.
Bobby Charles is the biggest tip she ever met.
Craig, you don't have to tell me that.
Shackled woman.
If, if this, if this goes through, uh, it would be much easier to allow them to get the materials from the slave labor for the lifers or whatever. Uh, and to sell them and to pocket the money. I don't think we need like another account that needs to be like added to and then like, we don't need to add more bureaucracy, bureaucratic like tape to like the process of them getting that money, just because it's extra work for all of us that doesn't need to exist, in my opinion.
And that's fair. Um, you know, I, I thought just as a perspective, uh, and this is kind of where I was going at with it. Continuation from the emergency service vehicle side. I did get the numbers from EMS. Ran those, uh, they're roughly about 560, 500 and sorry, 5,628.
Why it's gotta be today?
Their actual expenditures are, 4,000 of that, which is 80% is going to the actual repairs, while 1,000 per day is going to equipment. Um, so it's just more of a circular thing and then.
You know, you know why Bobby and Bobby and Carmine have to constantly repair their shit?
And he's not even fucking here. Hate this guy.
Well, Bobby and Carmine driving like assholes all day. And when we're sitting here and we're talking about groups like the EMS and things like that, uh, some of them ain't too far off from Bobby and Carmine in terms of driving habits. Need to be honest about that.
I, I, I guess, I'm just putting out the information of what can be used to be beneficial. That, that's really bad. So there, that's on them. If they wanna come back and propose this and actually have the ability to do that, that's not on me. I'm not trying to advocate for it. I'm just did an analysis of where things were at. Fair enough?
Yeah, it makes sense. I'd, uh, I'd hear him out again. Hopefully it's quicker than the last conversation to him.
Your, your intention was to have like that account pay for EMS repairs and shit?
So the intention of, okay, uh, no, no, so we would buy the materials off of them, right? We would have a business bid on the contract from a government to be the sole provider, sole administrator of repairs for EMS so that those materials that we buy can then subsequently be used to repair our essential services vehicles. So we're using the inmates to gather sanitation parts. That then goes back to the state. The state then fixes the vehicles of our emergency services. They use it to fund whatever the hell they're going down there. That's what about it.
Did you, who, who did you talk to from, uh, EMS about this?
I have not. This is just a theoretical. Um, I got the cost analysis.
It's a great idea. Um, see, I was just wondering if, you know, maybe the, the chief of EMS came to you and talked about it.
No, no, I, I just got access to the funding for it, uh, as to what they are currently spending in their expenditures. And I just figured, you know what? Um, how do we make this all relative? So one feeds into the other.
I like that idea. Um, there, there is, there are a couple of problems. One, uh, we would have to designate one person that is not a government employee that would be ensuring that those materials are used for the sole purpose of making repair parts.
Right.
Uh, and I don't know who would be able to do that. I have like a couple of ideas, but at the end of the day, like, we can't like fully monitor like how they're actually using those parts, right?
Nope. So that's, uh, that's where technically the last part of that is they come in and do a bid. So if you want to have, you know, say four or five different potential shops to open, right? They're gonna go ahead bid that they can do the work. They come in, do a quick presentation similar to what Andy did. We as a council say, yep. All right, we're gonna choose this one. And then that one is the only one, which then allows it to be audited. Basically because we know how much we're paying for it and we know how much should be there. So all those things get logged. Let's see how many across, how many get repaired. All those things are very easy to do because it's the same thing that happened, you know, years ago at Autos. All that shit was taken care of. You know, you can cost factory and how much these repair costs are and you can determine if they're being abused or not.
So I, I know a guy who can, who can make them and sell them. Who's not a part of the PD.
Or you can even just have someone in PD. The, this is, this is down the line, big picture thinking. This is still contingent upon them actually doing the fucking work and coming in here and saying this is what them and Barrick talked about. So I don't wanna get too into the weeds with shit that hasn't happened yet.
Right, I got you.
Uh, yeah, but as mentioned, I mean, I've personally been trying to contact Barrick and have not been able to. So I doubt they have either. And apologies, my voice a little raspy. I'm kinda, you know, allergies in the city are not great.
Oh, hell, I guess, you just guess that way some time. Okay, um, Bobby Charles and Carmine. Bobby Charles and Carmine are very much a give them an inch, they'll take a mile type of folks.
Yes.
And sometimes it'll take two miles. Uh, so you gotta be careful with what you give them.
I agree. This is depending if they actually do the damn work.
Yeah, I get you.
They don't get, if they don't do, that's it.
Yeah.
Can't we just have them make license plates?
That'd be great.
My mind.
Make a factor in the middle of the prison.
Of Bobby with like a shackled inmate inmate with like a collar on, just like leading him towards his enemy to like eat him.
Murphy, you do not have to tell me. I have spent more time in prison with him than I care to even let you know.
Yeah, but like. Using lifers as pets outside of the prison.
So they're gonna, oh, so many things.
Y'all weren't too opposed to it last week when he was here.
It's just good old fashioned for profit prison labor. I don't understand.
So they're gonna have shackles on these, on these prisoners.
Mm-hmm.
And they're gonna have them go work for them for free.
That is exactly what he showed us last week. Y'all were here.
So I, I did see something on, I just remembered this, uh, earlier. If you look up Grover Carlson, are they already doing this? There's two individuals in, uh, their, uh, prison gear with Scotty Bard, who I know is hired to the DOC. Uh, it says Scotty said Nelson your buzz on our future. Maybe it's something different, but they're already. Damn, maybe they're already trying to do this without speaking to the, uh, PD about how that would function.
Uh, they are outside. I don't know what they're doing, but yeah.
Well, I guess fuck it. We warned them if they, you know, if they commit any crimes outside of here that they're liable still anyway. So, you know, it's fine.
I understand that it's like a hurdle to get over logically, but it, it, it does still like bug my mind that like. The lifers, the ones specifically who are meant to be in prison and never come out. Are the ones in this use case that get to frequently leave prison. I understand why. It's just funny. It's hard to get past.
Being in the presence of Bobby Charles is a prison. I'm gonna be honest.
True.
You're not wrong.
Amen. So what happens, uh? What happens if someone decides it'd be really funny to ambush the DOC and break out the lifers?
Uh, then they're harboring a fugitive.
Yeah, we talked about that. Uh, technically be a hut.
That's a hut. I don't think people are gonna be fucking around and finding out with that. And we explained to Bobby and Carmine very clearly, they cannot retaliate against individuals, um, on behalf of the lifers or anything.
Stuff, stuff that's already been talked about in the last meeting and I don't really have the energy to just write it down again.
Yeah, I mean, Bobby, well, hold on, are Bobby and Carmine subject to search when outside?
Hmm, are they? I mean, they're still, I mean, they're citizens of Los Santos. We still need RS and PC for that.
Cause I know for a fact, uh, the PD's provided me evidence as well as, uh, pretty much anyone who would listen, somebody who got twatted out. Uh, that these yokels were brandishing PD guns in the prison. And I told them specifically that if you manage to get your hands on illegal guns and things like that. I'm not gonna mess with you if it's only in the prison, but the second any of that comes outside of the prison, we gotta, you know, big fucking problem.
Well.
Uh, and I don't, you know, trust either of them to, you know, not get unraveled in their own authority and think. Oh, I'm the big dick strutting around with all my inmates. I can do whatever I want. And then, you know, pull out their PD Glock when someone tries to hold them up.
I think that's, uh, that, that's why we tried to explain.
And then what do they get? Are you, well, I'm, I'm active on duty DOC, so.
Yeah, that's what they were trying to go for. That's why they were told they had to speak to Barrick about where the line on that is because, uh, we told them pretty clearly, uh, no, you cannot do that. That is, that is not.
Line, that's, that's the legal line.
Well, I'll tell you all something that happened.
That was where they ended up.
Something happened a couple of days ago. There was a, uh. Ah, shit, was it a Ramiel Ramon that we had in custody? And for some reason, we decided this is the first time we're gonna do a prison transport, as far as I know. We did a prison transport. Now, I wasn't even made aware of a prison transport occurring. I was up patrolling north with Croc Steve. I see a white vehicle, looked like it was crashed out against the, uh, against the tree. And this is around the same time everybody's seat belts just were, were real loose for some reason. So I thought, oh shit, somebody probably got ejected from their vehicle, didn't they? So I get out of the vehicle and I go check up on it and say, oh shit, is something going on? Myself and Cracker looking around trying to help a, a fella. Next thing you know. Uh, I end up getting just mag dumped from across the street by a couple of folks and the guy that we're trying to help out. The belief is, is that these guys had set up to stop a prison transport. Now here's my question, how the shit, I don't know what that was, it was probably Al Qaeda. But how the shit do these guys know that we're doing a transport when we usually have the local DOC drop these guys up?
Oh, do I gotta fill you in on this? Yeah, Max, you wanna fill in on this one too? Alright, so, uh, usually, Cornwood, what will happen is if they request a lawyer. Uh, most of the members of the group that they're with will figure out who an active lawyer is. They'll go down, uh, make some sort of contact usually. And assign that they should be requesting a transport, which then means they're probably trying to break them out. Uh, transports, prison transports used to be a very, very common thing a long time ago, uh, to the point where in. In training in academy, we used to practice setups for that.
And the issue is, is that also at that time, we had coordination with, uh, actual DOC who were actual. Vetted government employees, not Bobby and Carmine. So first of all, we never as a council. Uh, authorized those two idiots to do anything outside the prison. In fact, we said quite the opposite. So the concept that somehow, uh, there would be a prison transport at all that involved Bobby and Carmine would be. Contrary to everything we've discussed.
Uh, did someone, did someone ask me a question? Cause I was literally, I was, I was unfocused for like 10 fucking seconds.
Uh, yes, you, you, you just asked, it was just a feedback thing. You're good.
Though, no worries. Uh, if you wanted to explain Cornwood, the process of prison transports and how they used to be hit, I gave him my contacts in the past. So I figured if you wanted to add anything else that was colorful, uh, from our histories.
Oh, the lawyer just pitches a bit for an hour to get everybody in position and then, yeah.
Yeah, Murphy, Murphy knows better than anyone here. Why you asking Max shit?
That's, that's probably true.
So, yeah, so, so here's the thing. I, I don't know, I don't know if there was a lawyer involved in that situation or not.
Yeah, no, I.
What I'm saying is, the, if this, if this is that one time when this, this kind of hadn't really been established. And then all of a sudden, the, these guys know. Uh, I'm, I'm, I don't know 100%. Bobby claims, you know, come hell and high water that it wasn't him when I called him out on it. But I don't know how else they would know, cause the only people that knew about. The prison transport occurring were the people in the cells. And I don't even know if they had a lawyer for that situation because it's Rami. I don't know if he, if he normally gets a lawyer or not.
Well.
So.
What about Bobby's employees?
Sure. Again, my point being, and this goes back to the whole radio shit of them wanting the radios, right? They could still have something, I mean, they could say all they want. And I know we came up with, with some, some stipulations, but there's a reason why Chief Justice Crane said he didn't want them having radios at all. But I do understand their plight in terms of having to deal with the radios that everybody else uses. So the fact that these guys are on our radio channels, that they're privy to the information that we have, and then I'm getting mag dumped for some, for trying to be a good damn Samaritan. And make sure that somebody's not hurt on the side of the road pisses me the hell off. Okay? So how the hell do they know about it? That there is a prison transport current for Ramiel Ramon.
Little, uh, grilling investigation time there, Cornwood. Getting him in a little cell, ask him a bunch of questions, put him on record, see what they say.
Yeah, and they say, no, it wasn't me. They say that damn wasn't me. I said, okay, yeah, it wasn't. And then what? Well, the investigation don't do shit.
You could potentially see if they called anyone during that timeframe or any of their employers, because they have to make contact with it. So then you can subpoena their phones.
We could push for a subpoena. I mean, they're, that, that's pretty much it.
Even on top.
Well, it helps establish that.
So what was the, how did this?
Topic are we on again?
Nah, it's, it's sidetracked at this point.
I mean, no, no, it's, it's to that, no.
Transport work? Did they come to MRPD and pick them up?
Yes, with the police escort. Well, I don't even know because this was before the transport was even occurring. So I was in the area, just happened to be in the area, didn't know the transport was occurring. I wasn't involved in the scene. And then I ended up getting mag dumped. For, for just trying to check on some son of a bitch, thought he crashed out. That's my question. So it's not, it's not really sidetracked. It's directly to your point. When it comes back to, to, you give these guys an inch, they take a mile and it leads back to last week's discussion about the radios. So unless somebody within the PD for the first time ever told somebody else, hey, we're doing a prison transport.
That's not the first time ever. Come on.
No.
Well, first time for actions I ever, but the first time as far as I know, since, since the collapse.
Do you know who cleared it on PD's side?
No idea. I was, I was not.
That's pretty dumb thing to clear.
Sounds like a slacks moment. I'm gonna be like.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
I heard, I heard there's only one unit assigned too. That's it.
So here's.
Oh, well then one unit means that unit was the one who authorized it.
There's ways to go ahead and like figure these things, this out with it. If it truly did happen, because we may be going down a rabbit hole, that is, is not that. I'm not here to defend them or not. There's just ways to prove that intentionally. So, um, I recommend just, you know, doing the proper investigation. If that is something that you believe. Put together, put a subpoena and shoot it over to Crane in his department. Sorry, my old cop brain's still turning, man.
I mean, your new cop brain would say be careful about investigating too far.
Fair. Alright.
Don't have anybody on duty to do that.
Uh, shall we move on to the next one?
Sure.
Alright, uh, so the first one, top one, um. The emergency essential funding, this is kind of a new one I just put up there. Uh, this is in a state or a aspect if, should the state ever be declared into an emergency relief? Or emergency state that there is a state fund that is set aside in a separate account. Um, where is only accessible to what would be at the time, whoever the current treasurer is in that state of emergency, proposed amount as 500 million. Or sorry, 50 million. My apologies.
Should we be back on topic?
I'll do 20 million.
Uh, meet you halfway?
Sure, 25 million. I think, I think this is a great idea, um, especially, uh, for future mayors who don't really understand. Um, I'll put it simply, it's pretty easy to get to zero, or sorry, hard to get to zero. Uh, but I don't doubt that there's someone dumb enough who might get elected in the future who could possibly do that.
Mm-hmm. So this is just to set aside. So you said 25. I meet you at 30.
Um. Sure. I don't care.
Any other thoughts?
No, I, I think that's good.
Big vote. Emergency fund sounds fine to me. Sounds responsible. Problem is, we can't, we can't make bank accounts right now.
I know, I know. This is to be set aside. So, uh, when that should or happen to occur, uh, that will be put into there. So I'll follow this up, uh, with what I am proposing to do is establish who is classified as essential workers at that point. I know I talked about that a little bit. I do have a list. If you have any thoughts on that now, uh, current list. And please tell me if you think this is off or if I'm missing someone. Give me one sec. Uh, PD, EMS, doctors, department of justice, food service workers and mechanics. Those are the ones I have currently listed as essential services. It's not in the document if you're looking.
Okay.
So what I would like to see this, uh, the purpose of this be. Is this money set aside, a future mayor fucks up so hard that the state account goes to zero. That means no one gets paid for any job.
Correct.
Um, what I would like to see this, uh, this, this money being used for is if it somehow gets to zero. The future treasurer then is allowed to move that money that was put aside into the main account. And then, uh, that should give time for an impeachment investigation essentially, because obviously the mayor has fucked up so hard. That there needs to be some kind of impeachment investigation. That mayor gets impeached. Um, blah, 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 so on, so forth. Uh, and that allows everything to keep moving, uh, citywide as well. Like we're not gonna have, you're not gonna have to worry about people from group six or Grime company being like, hey, why am I getting $0 right now? Cause you're doling the money out.
I, well, now you just made me think of some.
What up?
What happens if someone invests in, um. Like a shit ton of material goods? Or like a shit ton of like cryptocurrency? And then they get all their friends together and form a political party and get a mayor elected. And then intentionally crash, uh, the economy. And then they're the hoarders of like all these essential goods with, then they can just set a price on as they demand.
What?
How's the crypto come into this again? Sorry, I'm trying to track this.
Well, you know, crypto is all, it's all, you know, you need a fiat currency.
Fair. Alright, so let me, uh, actually this proves, this goes right into my next one. Um, and maybe we just talk about both of them in succession, because. Maybe we should take a look at the Funding Approval and Transparency Acts and, uh, read that for a section. There, it's nine different sections on there. It's pretty self-explanatory. Take a look, uh. That is what you just described, Max, the entire purpose of.
Oh, la, 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 la. No, stop. Yes, it is. Uh, no, it's not. I'll let everyone read and then we can continue.
Okay.
Which one are on the FAFO?
Uh, no, the Funding Approval and Transparency Act.
Hit the FATA one, alright.
Yes.
He stole my name. That's crazy.
Ada?
The, the FAFO. The FAFO. We already have a FAFO. Yeah, I told him about it, yeah. It's a good name.
Alright, so. Yeah, there's a lot in here.
Yeah, I've been busy for the four days since we last met. Anyone need another minute?
All good.
No, alright.
Maybe you can walk us through it, TJ.
Yeah, so. This is a shared accountability for the council as a whole, uh, not just for, for example, yourself, Max. It's also in a public perspective, gives you, uh, and others the legal cover and the plausible deniability with a dual approval system. Um, so for example, if you get questioned about decisions that become a shared responsibility. It cannot be pinned solely on one person, i.e. the mayor's side to it, and that situation that you just described, uh, cannot happen. There's a less chance for taking a fall or financial mismanagement or for allegations of corruption. If those things are set up, uh, once again, this is set up for a future where not one person can just dominate that funding, as you had mentioned. And decide basically fuck the city at a whim and acts as a safeguard, uh, for the entirety of the system. So. Essentially, it's allowing us to do the proper checks and balances that should occur. Uh, I don't envision too much of an issue with it, because it's as a group decision. As a group decision and it's a signed off aspect to it. This allows another layer, uh, of protection, not only for yourself, but for everyone else involved on top of it. Questions, comments, concerns?
Look, I'm for it, but I'm also well aware, uh, that I'm not the person who, uh, makes these changes. So I'm sure others that are more. Involved in that discussion, uh, will. Have, uh, have their thoughts. Uh, however, uh, for me personally, uh, I would like to not be, uh, punished with a pay decrease to less than a fourth of what our pay was. Uh, with no warning. So yeah, uh, I'm, I'm for it.
Uh, that pay was increased to that by me, by the way. What it was, was much lower than that to start.
Uh, but still higher than we are now. Thank you.
Like a hundred dollars more. It was probably, yeah.
A hundred and twenty-five. Yes.
One, one twenty-five.
Oh my god. Am I looking at the wrong act? So kind. Thank you for that.
Hey, just a heads up when we, um. Sorry, I'd accept that call. Just heads up when we walk out of this room at all. Apparently there is somebody on their way to come kill Max. So.
Is that the phone call that you got from Vingle?
Yep. Yeah. Don't know who, but.
I did just say, hey, Vingle.
It's a good thing we have an officer that'll actually shoot.
You just gotta, you just gotta distract him. Give him something more interesting.
Well, literally this guy's wearing a white shirt. I asked Vingle who it is. He really doesn't know. Is what it sounded like. He genuinely sounded confused.
If I walk out of there, um, and I see anyone in the hallway with a gun, I'm going to, I'm gonna dome them.
Alright, go right ahead.
God bless the second amendment.
Hey, Siobhan, could you do me a favor and text him that Max said that? So he's been warned.
Um.
And we are witness to.
Yep.
So. Wait, hold on.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm sorry. Popcorn. Go ahead.
Uh, can you explain what a requestor is in section three?
Uh, yeah. So for example, that would be like Andy, right? Um, anyone that is requesting funds to be used from the state account, anyone that is, for example, says Siobhan has someone going on from the cabinet side to it. Siobhan would relay the quest, act as a requestor. So it's a blanket term for anyone that is trying to access funds from the account. Anyone can technically be requested. That could be, you know, by, and this is Crane when we were talking before. For example, Crane, you'd be the requestor for the department of justice to then pay out. For your judges for the bench trials and for, uh, docket cases.
Weren't they, maybe I'm misunderstanding. Were we, uh, uh, ain't they already gonna get covered from what Chief Justice Crane was talking about earlier?
Absolutely. I'm just putting it as a term as to how the legislation would embody who that person is, right? So it's not like a, if they get covered by it, that's fine. It just technified, technicality is they are the requestor based upon this. They're the ones looking for funds. So, uh, as that gets paid out.
This is report six, one, five, four, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
So every time a judge. Completed a docket case or a bench trial, you would want you and me to sign off on the dispersment of money?
I'd probably just give you a stack of it at the end of the week and be like, here you go. Sign these.
Would you, do you, do you prefer that process to you simply being the one to do it like whenever one is done? Like the judge finishes the case and then they can immediately go to you and be like, hey, uh, you know, in accordance with the thing that chief justice passed or whatever, you know, you owe me 20K.
In my thing, we, we settled how we're doing the dispersments. I already wrote that in there.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Or is that just an example?
It's a, this is an example theoretically.
Okay. But, but okay.
So would this supersede other?
This is a basis what those things are built upon. So when I, when I mentioned that we should probably just take a quick second. Uh, before voting on some of that is I wanted to see if we wanted to establish this. For the basis of that of how it's approved. So if we have a baseline and build upon it, we can incorporate it as you wish. Since we had not yet approved it.
I don't know. I think we're gonna need more than a second to talk about this one.
That's entirely fine.
Um. It's, right now I'm operating, I, I have two or three fiscal policies that I, I adhere to and I adhere to during term one. Uh, in term two, I am, we're currently in a, a saving phase so that we can go back to what we were doing, uh. Up until the election, for, for about a month and a half up until election, um. I super pumped money into the sanitation market because materials were desperately needed. Um. In section five, this says that you will review the, uh. You're responsible for the initial review and validation of all funding requests. The treasurer ensures that all funding requests are in accordance with the budgetary constraints and fiscal policies. Who, who in your vision should be the person to set fiscal policy in Los Santos?
That'd be joint treasurer slash mayor. So if you want to do a. As a, a golden era.
Yeah, I'm sorry guys. I am fucking lost on this one. I, I'm lost on this meeting altogether, I think.
Jointly with it and you say, alright, we're going to save up a certain amount for a period of time and we know that we're going to do that. Then we work together to establish, at what point can we do that?
What if we never agree with each other?
Well, as long as you don't drain the account to zero, then. Part of this, part of this is also from the council.
This meeting has been an absolute fucking mess too. It doesn't really fucking help.
Let, let's assume that, you know, for hypothetically, okay.
Hypothetically.
Let's say this passes. Let's say, you know, me being the mayor, the person who had sole control and power over this and who has demonstrably been. Extremely acute and responsible. Um, let's say. I am, I just don't like the fact that you are, you are the person who is involved in that process. What if I just choose not to work with you?
Uh, then I'm going to ask you, what's the purpose of having a treasurer?
Well, the purpose of, uh, the treasurer is to ensure that someone like me does not abuse my power. Uh, the purpose, the person, the treasurer is to ensure that I'm embezzling money from the state account. Purpose of the treasurer. Uh, is to ensure that I am not so wildly irresponsible that you can, you're, you're essentially going to use your power. To audit the state account to prove that I am someone who should be impeached if I were abusing my power. Um, which I'm sure was attempted term one, uh, obviously did not succeed. So what, what I'm curious about. Uh, is this act. A, a response to my fiscal policies from term one?
No.
Or no? Okay. So what made you come to, uh, deciding to work on something like this?
Yeah, actually that came from a fair amount of, actually my interview with Crane, to be honest. Uh, Crane, how'd you kind of put it?
Ah, you're after my economy.
But what's, what's the wording that you use when, uh, you thought it was the possibility coercive votes based upon. Doing a golden age right before voting period. If it's planned and it's put out there and that's the intention of it, then I have no problem doing it whatsoever. I don't set the direction for it. As you put it, this is for you and your term. And anyone else therefore afterwards to come to the conclusion of how do I support that to make it happen? So it's done responsibly.
Yeah, I mean, I, um. Shit, sounds like good politics, I guess.
I mean, the, uh, maybe I'm wrong, but from my understanding, especially when we're talking about the.
But I, well, and yeah, sorry, in the corner, I just want to make sure I get this out there. Uh, there's also easier ways to solve that issue than implementing a whole other checking balance on every decision the mayor makes. And that is you just, you know, make it so the economy has to be locked in, you know, uh, at a non, you know, accelerated, you know, stance. Uh, you know, a week or two before the elections.
I think it's a separate, you know, yeah, that's, I think that's a separate thing with that though. I don't think that's, that's pertaining to. Um, this is the entirety, not just for two weeks.
I know. I'm, I'm just saying I, you know. If that's the citation that I'm concerned about, that's what I'm worried about. So.
Right. I'm, I'm trying to basically put with this is that. You know, my job is yes, Max to ensure checks and balances. To make sure you're not doing anything stupid. By on top of this. It's also ensuring that there's dual responsibility between you and I.
Hmm.
So you're not basically fucking yourself out of a job.
Yeah, of course. Um, and I, I made some pretty, uh, poignant and powerful decisions fiscally recently. Uh, and I definitely, uh, did some during term one. Uh, and I definitely had the, uh, the details of the state account leaked by the former treasurer to Stanley Miller. Uh, who then began to tweet that the state account was losing more than $3 million per day. Um, and if the state account losing $3 million per day was not enough to inspire the treasurer to maybe vote that I should be impeached. Uh, I'm not too concerned about impeachment or losing my job. I'm not concerned that I need, uh, dual responsibility for this role. Uh, in fact, I'm so pleased with how that golden age went. That I am, I'm even more confident now than I was while it was happening, that, uh. Uh, right now the state count has more money in it that it, that it almost, uh, ever has right now. We're almost back up to, uh, 82 million, I think was the cap or 83.
It's, uh, the check today was about 74.
Yeah, we're, we're getting there. Um, and at the end of term one, it was almost at 39 million.
Weren't we at like 50 or 39? Holy shit.
We, we got pretty low, uh, there.
Holy shit. So, so we're working it in right now.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's enough.
Um. So. I like the idea of transparency. Uh, I've been filling out that, uh, that report, by the way. I don't know if you've been peeking it. Um. So.
For the future Max and I, I'm not opposed to what you're trying to do with a golden age or not. Like I said, that's, that's. If you say that, for example, your platform that you wanted to run on and. The next mayor or whoever that mayor afterwards and they're asked about their fiscal policy and say that this is how I want to do it and they do it. Then as long as it's done in a way that is responsible, that's fine. This is not just for a now, this is for everybody. Max, I'm gonna give you a, a quick example of this, right? So, um, Craig, five years ago. Explain to me what happened to the state account with the mayors.
I mean.
For the record, the treasurer prevents that from happening, whatever it is. I, cause I know that it's probably about embezzlement.
Hey, I, I'm, I'm gonna step in here and, and not, not to, I don't want to be a damn inhibitor. Okay. I hate inhibitors. However. I, I'm just taking a look at this and the way things are trending and whatnot. And, and yeah, the, the point is that this is gonna be for the future, sure, but. Like, and I know damn hell, I don't even know what it's called ecologist or whatever, but if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I'm the same thing. But I ain't broke, don't fix it, right? I mean, let's just, if, if, if things are trending as, as positively as they are, why, why don't we just put a pin in this until it looks like it ain't ending up that way? I mean, you.
I'm with, I'm with Cornwood. I was, you guys know what I say. Let the kids work in the coal mines. Yeah, hell. That's why we got debtors in prison.
So fair enough. Okay. So I'm not, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm not trying to break anything with this. I'm not trying to put, oh, someone just deleted something there, Max.
Nope. Oh, actually, no, it wasn't me. It was me. I accidentally, uh, I got it.
So I'm not trying to break anything whatsoever. It's continuing with it and it's ensuring that if something does happen. Uh, people understand why things happen, right? For the salary side to it. It's also saying that anyone, for example, like Andy who came in here and requested $700,000, uh, for the funds. That, that information is then signed off by both. And so it's not like a, hey, who the fuck just took out $700,000? This is an accountability aspect to it where it's duly signed off. And so it's not just saying, hey, for example, Andy's really good friends with Max right now. And this could look really bad if only Max signed off on it. You have now two people signing off for it and it has already been approved. These things are basically to ensure that if something does go through, that the information being presented and out there in the future has been vetted.
So, so you're, you're calling it like a, a, a cover your ass legislation essentially.
Correct.
I mean, I, I think that's all fine and I think that's all fine.
He's giving himself veto power.
Yeah, yeah.
Any veto power.
It, it, it is veto.
I just, I just think.
Call it for what you want, Murphy, but if that's what you want to put it as.
Giving an unelected member of the council veto power.
I'm not comfortable also with previous mayors that have bought bombs from me controlling everything in the fucking state.
Well, I mean, to be fair, this ain't previous mayors.
Okay, that's entirely fine.
This is somebody who, I mean, I feel like things have been trending in a positive direction. And we just gotta let them, hell, let the turkey finish cooking, right?
Uh, there are certain aspects of this that I like.
Max, I want to out, Max, I want to cut through this because I want to ask you something. Um. You and I have discussed, uh, in, in pretty good duration, um. You know, uh, what I thought about, you know, TJ coming in here and being treasurer and, you know, the things that I felt you guys agreed upon, right?
Right.
Um, and you know, I learned some things that you told me that you, you know, I didn't realize that made you guys, you know, I think have some more viewpoints on things.
Hmm.
Um, so I'd like to hear primarily from you, like your breakdown of this, what you like, what you don't, and what you suggest of any changes.
Okay.
Um. This is what we needed last week. Holy fuck.
For, uh, the, the example given.
Nathan never took another day off from this.
Presentation or whatever. I like the process we've been doing. With that, which is that, you know, we'll invite people into the council meeting and then they can, they can give their presentation and then we can all, we, we all decide. Uh, right then and there, uh, if we want to give this person money for their event, uh, I also like the idea of the treasurer, um. For example, TJ, TJ has a, a storied history in Los Santos. So he knows what is good and not good in the realm of. Proposed, uh, event funding. Um, I like the idea of the treasurer having the sole power, um, um. Maybe not, maybe sole power is not the right word. I like the treasurer. Uh, actually, no, yeah. I like the idea of someone being able to call the treasurer and be like, hey, uh, I, here's my event idea. Uh, the treasurer then being like, okay, is this event cool and, you know, high effort and deserving of a financial reward or not? And then I like the idea of the treasurer deciding yes or no. If they decide yes, then they record what they did and then just post it in the fucking reports for us to see. Uh, you know, like a time and like withdraw and like, you know, who it went to and their state ID, blah, blah, blah. I like that idea a lot. Um. It's what I tried to encourage Ed to do multiple times and it was brought up. Uh, I don't think she was putting herself out there specifically for that and maybe that, that's our fault.
Oh, I had weeks of discussions with her about it and then she just like told me to fuck off basics.
Yeah, um, I, I don't know if she was motivated to do that. I don't know if she wanted to do that. Um, I don't know if, maybe it would have been better for us to. Uh, officialize precisely that particular power for the treasurer. Um, it was heavily implied multiple times that she had that kind of power though, if she so pleased. Like we trusted her to be able to do that. Um, so what I like here is, uh, where is, I'm looking for the section in particular that I'm thinking about. Um. Looking, 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 looking. Wish there was a search function. I like the, uh, I like state funds are subject to information requests. Love that. Uh, I like, um.
I just want to be clear. You know what that means, right? Like any layperson can ask.
Of course. Uh, it, so long, so long as you're willing to do that work as the treasurer, because you have access to the state account and, uh, potentially future exports and stuff. So. It could be a lot of work.
Yeah. So, well, I mean, it's a continuing and ongoing thing. So for example, how that would go, right? And this is how I envision it. Is for example, Andy put together a notebook, right? I go ahead, put that information into what we have as a publicly, well, actually. I go ahead, put that information into what we have as a publicly, well, actually, it won't be publicly viewable, but it will be a repository of information. If someone wants to request that, I can then say, here's what the funds went for, here's what was actually paid towards, and then here's a signature that came on to it, right? Uh, those things are available and it should be ongoing. It shouldn't just be like a, you know, bolus of information. This is as they come up.
Um, so. Yeah, I love all of section six. Um, I, I love the idea of me per, because it's very satisfying for me to be able to, for example, fill out that, that fiscal report that I've been doing in, in reports. I love doing that. Uh, I, I have always been a huge proponent of transparency. Uh, I pushed, uh, it, it could have been the first or the second meeting for someone to film so that they were publicly available, uh, the contents of this meeting entirely. Uh, I wouldn't mind if all of our reports internally right now were public. Uh, I wouldn't mind if someone could go and get the export for the state account and see where everything is being spent right now. I, I would love for section six to just be the norm. Um. Section eight, uh, can you explain your thought process on section eight?
Yeah, it was mainly, uh, as what had been discussed from last week, a lot of what would happen, uh, from the Cantor side and just basically making sure that things aren't done, uh, from either now or in the future with malice towards a specific group or something that had happened until something had been resolved. Uh, if there's no valid justification for things happening, why do those happen or why should they occur? So the proposal as put on there with justification for the ju, for including financial forecast to then be forwarded to the council for discussion, i.e. those changes. It was through everybody, which the council then has a vote on. We go in here and say, hey, listen, hey, I'm, you know, PD's been fucking killing it. We have the quota system. Uh, I want off their base pay by 5% overall as an entirety. What do y'all think? Yes or no? Yay? Okay, passes? Cool. So majority vote for the council. So when you're saying that treasury has a sole veto power, no, I'm giving power to everybody.
Like, hey, we did it at the start and it worked just fine then.
It worked fine and it, but it was slow. And there's another aspect of this that is somewhat concerning with me is, you know, what if one day TJ, you just disappear? You know, uh, any attempt to make any adjustments to this stuff would sit in limbo for weeks until we determine whether or not you're going to come back. And then we're going to have to wait even longer for another treasurer to be picked. So there's going to have to be more interviews for that. So it could be like an almost month process where the mayor's ability, which was formerly instant, is then bogged down in this sort of, uh, like limbo bureaucracy where we have to establish another treasurer, teach them, and then, you know, get them on board with the whole process.
Crazy is what if, what if he just disappears?
Well, I mean, uh, well, for example.
I have been here for quite some time.
I thought you were against what ifs.
Uh, okay, so this isn't about, uh, you, uh, because I know you're here. Okay, but what, i- i- in the future, um, what if you take a vacation? What if we, what if you can't, we can't get in contact with each other? Uh, where's, where's Solomon Walker? You know, he was just elected. He couldn't even make it to the second fucking council meeting. Where is he? Okay, uh, yeah, he's got the consumption. Um, you know, there, I, I don't like the idea of it being bogged down in bureaucracy. I like being able to go out there and speak with people and figure out what's wrong. Last night, I took my wife's bike to Mosley's and Angus, a solo mechanic working out of Mosley's, told me, hey, I haven't had repair parts for five days. Um, it is impossible for me to compete with places like Milton's because they are buying up all the stuff, blah, 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 blah. Um, and he was like, is there anything you can do to make this better for us? And I said, hmm, and then I remembered.
I really have to go to the bathroom.
There was a 13% tax on all mechanic supplies. I was like, yeah, I could make it easier for you. Uh, I could go change the, the mechanic tax down to 0% uh, to give you guys the ability to actually potentially convince someone to come into Mosley's and pay the 3.4K, uh, down from 4.1, uh, for a one across, um, and to pay 9.6 or 9.9 for an injury replacement instead of 12,000. So I went, I, I, we had that conversation. It was a three minute conversation. Uh, I was like, yeah, I'll go do that right now. I went back to my office, changed it. He called me a minute later and said, oh my God, it worked. Uh, like this gives me a ton of hope, uh, especially during the, uh, the shift three hours where we feel like, uh, or I feel like I can actually operate. Uh, in, in to convince people to maybe bite the bullet to pay that 3.4K. Um, and that whole interaction, it just, it was 10 minutes, but like, what, what does that interaction become when we involve this whole extra process?
I, I got a, uh, I got an idea, actually. Um, Max, Max, you speaking made me kind of think of this. Uh, what if there's a compromise between the two options? Uh, what if there's, um, like, uh, a sole authorization, uh, adjustment limit? And then for anything more like extremely drastic, uh, then that would need a sign off. Wouldn't that be like, because that way you could do the day to day and impact things, you know? Uh, as needed based on the feedback you get. Uh, but you know, you would need to talk to the treasurer about, you know, doing something that's more extreme, right? And I don't know, I don't know the numbers. I don't, I, I obviously saw the notes you put in. You go from like 175 to 125. I mean, what if like you could go, you know, you know, 80 to, you know, whatever it is, or I don't know, I don't know, whatever, like maybe you go two thirds each direct, I don't, I don't know. Uh, the numbers could be figured out, but what if there's some kind of compromise there?
That's kind of how it worked when I first entered office, uh, and I first lower taxes as low as I possibly could. Uh, I was informed that I could only do 20% of the current value.
Sure.
And it's, it sucked cock. I'm going to be honest. I hated it.
Well, that was a hard stop on that. What I'm saying is you could still do that, just you have talked to somebody about it.
It was.
That was a hard no.
Well, it wa, it was a hard no from the past. It wasn't actually confirmed that I couldn't do that. Uh, I respected what was the case in the past because I didn't want to, uh, step on any toes. Fortunately, the state in all of its benevolence has given the ability for the mayor to make more active and decisive decisions, uh, because situations like last night with Angus Bozo, the clown, uh, could happen. And that could have never happened in the previous system and it would have taken, uh, like Cantor said, a week at most to do a change that could have happened at the snap of a finger, essentially. I think, I think, I think that we owe.
You don't, you don't think the Angus, uh, situation could have been resolved with a less drastic adjustment?
No, uh, a- and that's a whole different issue because I'm, I'm, I'm pretty ear to the ground when it comes to the materials part market right now. As you can see with my adjustments right now, I'm kind of working it back up to, uh, where it was before. I want to see how it impacts the, uh, the state account. But I, I think ultimately the people of Los Santos deserve someone who can respond to Angus the way that I did last night. I think that they, uh, they deserve somebody who is able to wield the powers that have been given to them by the state, uh, efficiently, effectively, quickly, uh, decisively.
I'm sure all the government factions love that they can be punished for giving you a speeding ticket in an instant. That's great. Big fan of that.
Okay, um, so I, I, I like a compromise here with what Crane was kind of proposing with this and.
I don't know.
I just want to caution you, uh, Max, of how that can also be seen. Um, is that should someone, this Angus person be your personal friend and they're looking for a little bit of a, hey, how can you help me out? That also could be seen pretty negatively on top of it. And what's to say, you know, one person.
He is my friend for the record. We are friends.
Fair. And so what's to say, oh, you did this for this person? Why aren't you doing it for that? I, I, I get what you're saying with that.
I might have to just like.
Swiftness of it, you know, following the fact that we do meet, uh, once a week on top of this, so following council approval file sign off required for both. Should I not be there? Whatever. We can just say, basically, hey, listen, the council approves it, that's, that's fine, right? It doesn't have to be from, as your sticking point would be.
Dude, I can barely survive this one. Oh my God.
Adjustments, it should be council approval as a whole. And so you don't have to wait on me, should something ever happen to me, which is a concerning question that you bring up.
Uh, no, uh, because people, people go on vacation all the time. It wasn't like a, you might get killed thing. It was more like a, you know, what if you just have to be gone for like two or three weeks, you know?
That's entirely fine. Then the council would have the ability to approve that as well and that could be enacted upon. It, it's a compromise in between these.
I'm all for things being responsive, like the mayor said, and I'm all for there being checks and balances like the treasurer wants. What I think is like the ideal situation is the treasurer has every right and ability to audit what, what the mayor does or what the council does in the past tense. Like if they see a spending issue to bring that here specifically and itemized and say, hey, I feel like these expenditures are bad. Hey, I feel like this pay raise needs an adjustment and be heard on that basis. Uh, rather than have some kind of, uh, you know, a broad spectrum of powers and a veto sort of thing.
I, I just removed the whole veto thing on there, Murphy, and on, on top of it.
Some of the stuff I think we could pass right now, but I think a lot of it.
Imagine, for example, PD making the case, they actually come in here and say, hey, we, we would like ideally to be paid more. Or as Crane just put in here, the judges, they want to be paid more. Or as EMS came in here, let's make their use case scenario and say, hey, all right, we're going to come in. If you truly feel a certain way about this, put your shit together, come in here, present it. Put your money where your mouth is. Tell me where you're at. And then we decide.
See, I, I thought that that was for the liaisons to take care of, to bring forth to the mayor's office, because right now it's the mayor's office that determines. So.
The veto thing is still in here, by the way. I, I'd never.
Thanks for actuallying me.
I, I didn't delete it. Yeah, but we were discussing it.
Yeah, he meant like the previous point of discussion was removing it.
TJ, where are you from?
Where am I from? Uh, what's that supposed to be? Like.
Where, where, where the hell do you live before you move to Los Santos?
I mean, I've been in Los Santos for a very long time. Why?
You sound like Michael Simone for a second.
Uh, I don't sound European.
Uh, he's, he sounds, uh, he sounds like he's from the south to me.
You know, I do have a southern relative that kind of sounds like this, but nah, that's not me, though.
Okay.
Don't talk like that. That's weird.
Okay.
All right. So if we look at this, if I remove, um, following council approval, the final sign off will be required for Judge and Mayor. Just put the council reserves right for final approval. That makes sense? It's on eight there. If you can see what I have highlighted.
Hmm.
So no more, uh. Okay, what was I gonna say instead?
Uh, so following council, uh, the council. I, I mean, I can wordsmith it, but basically the council, after council vote, um, approval has occurred, et cetera. These things are subject to be changed immediately afterwards.
So mayor can do all the, wait, is that just government salary or is that all salaries?
Uh, that says government and public workers.
So that includes sanitation and.
Um, well, I guess I should.
Under section three definitions, it says all pretty much everything, all monies.
Okay.
Yeah, anything that is paid out of the state account.
Which is everything.
Yeah.
So wait, isn't it harder to get the council vote than just the treasurer sign off?
Well, uh, the way that I guess it was being interpreted was that I have a final veto on if I don't like it or not. So that's what the removal is.
There's a, an and phrasing, right? Whereas both the treasurer and the mayor final sign off, which would imply veto power if you don't sign off on it.
Right. That's what we were moving. So that's why I, I have it highlighted down there.
All right.
That would be, I would just wordsmith that slightly, uh, to take out that portion of it and have the council has the power for it.
So that means the mayor's only going to be able to make adjustments once a week?
Well, unless we, me as a side parts of it, but yeah, something as drastic that is, well, not as drastic per se, but something that affects public view or public funding on top of it should at least be discussed, yeah. I mean, a week's not a terribly long spot.
Hell, I'd, I'd rather be in favor of just the mayor and the treasurer doing it together and.
Well, that's.
Doing it on a long, as, as going basis.
That's what he brought up as a possible issue. I, I would rather work together, but yes.
How about, uh, mayor and the treasurer, uh, and if for some reason one side vetoes it, uh, it can be brought to council by the person who pushed it. Uh, so it's still, if some, if vetoed, can be seen. How about that?
Or if treasurer is absent, one or two.
Or if treasurer is absent, yeah. It doesn't stop anything.
So it can be done instantaneously, instantaneously if needed.
I, I. That way you can never be vetoed fully.
In, in theory, I love this idea. Um, what, the, the reality of the situation is though, uh, similar to how uh, we kind of got bogged down term one suggesting penal code changes and stuff, which, uh, is ultimately uh, kind of a bastardization of what our, our intended purpose as the council of eight is. Um, I am afraid that stuff like this would bog down our already long meetings with stuff that I could handle, uh, almost instantly. Uh, it, we're making it too top heavy for the meetings. And it's taking away valuable time that we could be spending on, uh, in theory, you know, in theory, if this were to pass, uh, we would have to dedicate, you know, maybe an hour, maybe two hours to going over all the proposed ideas or changes. Uh, and then, you know, we've got hours after that to go through the actual meeting that should be, uh, enriching and fleshing out life in Los Santos.
Oh, I, I, I agree with you in that. That's where I think Cantor was just making her point is that we can do this, you and I, without needing the entirety of the council side to it. Should something need or we disagree, you bring it to that.
Yeah. My proposal is just that if he vetoes you, you can still bring it here, uh, so he can't just stop you.
I don't think that people disapprove very often, my friend.
I don't think so either. Uh, but at the end of the day, I think this is a, a necessary, uh, bureaucratic tape, uh, and as the head of, the head of. As the head of bar said, I, I think that, um, it is small overstepping because you are an unelected official. You were selected by the chief justice. Uh, you are his clerk essentially. Um, and I think that as I represent the majority.
I have a clerk. I have a clerk.
I don't know too much about the clerks.
Sorry, clerical position.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, as the.
Disagree on that. Disagree on that, by the way.
Everybody else. We all have a vote here.
Okay, fair. Um.
Don't, don't put me down in some shill.
I'm not, I'm not putting you down because I honestly, I'm super impressed with this, uh, and I'm super impressed that you took the initiative to this.
TJ actually genuinely has set the bar kind of high for.
Tried to do right now, even without Solomon Walker, who I know is in your gang, who I know that if he was here, you would have a much better chance of passing this, but you still came here and you fucking tried. And that speaks so much to your fucking character that I'm actually super impressed. I'm super fucking impressed. Uh, that said, I, I don't think that right now, uh, with my history and my record, that it is warranted for a selected position like the treasurer to have as much power as is stated in this document, uh, as the mayor who, uh, I currently represent the majority of the people in Los Santos.
While that may be your thought with that, um. Uh, I'm not sure why you go to Solomon and, and gang and make that a part of it. That's kind of an interesting quip to put in there.
Well, no, I, I, I highlighted that because it speaks to your, your character and your, your intentions to me. I know that this isn't just a power grab for you. Um, and that, and I'm, I said that as a compliment and I want the people to know that you are TJ Walker, the treasurer and not TJ Walker, the ADM C member. I want people to know that because I respect what you brought forth, even though the odds were stacked against you in this meeting. That's why I brought it up.
When I interviewed, uh, I'm going to, once again, uh, put this out there. If you want to bring it up and you want to continually put on the side that I'm ADM C, that's the first thing I said to you, Crane. If this is an issue, I put it flat on the table. I come here business.
I, I told him that already. I told him that already.
That, that's fine.
I know, I know, I know.
I, I leave all that shit on the table. My, my purpose of being here is for the betterment sides of the city. And you might not think that this is needed now.
I'm not being sarcastic, TJ. TJ, I'm not being, I, I'm genuinely complimenting you.
Uh, what I'm saying is that, Max, when, when, whatever hell happens to you at some point in time and you go sail off into the sunset and everybody else around this table at some point in time may no longer be here. That.
Oh shit.
The vision that we're doing with this is as for the betterment of the city. You may not think that you need it now and you may not, and we may not have to do this. But what I'm saying is that this is some, setting something that has grounds for the future on top of it. Max, when I say that I have lived through an era of more corruption than anyone else in this room, I probably mean that.
I don't, I don't disagree. I've heard stories.
As a strong ass founding fathers argument right there, he's basically saying that. As a strong ass founding father's argument right there, he's basically saying that. We should be like, you know, some of those religious men who voted to not make religion a part of their state.
Much to their despair.
Saying we should, you know, we should basically limit, uh, ourselves, not for fear of ourselves, uh, but for love of the future.
Uh, my, my issue is that I think the limiting is, uh, is directly detrimental to, uh, fast paced life in Los Santos. And I think the the people appreciate a mayor who can respond to them, uh, at the drop of a hat. And it is something that I've tried to do term one and something I'm trying to do term two, uh, and I think it's something that I've done extremely well.
I'm just putting it out there. I just don't want those things, as you described how you responded to it. To be seen as favors or one offs for individuals that may show favoritism in a certain way. It it's not hard. It may take a a solid five minutes. That's it.
So it, here's what happens, okay? Uh, I I do favor the people. I want them to make money. I want them to make money at the expense of the state. Uh, I want them to feel like I am there for them. Um, and if it ever, if it ever seems like I am. Doing something that is, uh, demonstrably, uh, corrupt in favor of a certain group. Um, that's why you have the ability to export the state account and figure it out. And the check and balance is not you suggesting impeachment. Well, you, it it's, it's a pretty easy process. Um, it, the check and balance is you suggesting my impeachment to the council. That's the check and balance. It's a very simple one, too. Uh, if you can prove that I've been corrupt, you bring it to the council, I get impeached.
So let me also just put this out there, uh, Crane, just quick thing, um, when you'll put together the constitution side to it. In I I nowhere in here do I do I mention impeachment, by the way. Uh, when you put together, impeachment doesn't have a statute of limitations, does it, Crane?
Say what?
Impeachment doesn't have a statute of limitations, does it?
Uh, I mean, impeachment would just be a impeachment, wouldn't impeachment just be like a, hey, this.
Peaceful impeachment is not a, it's not a, it's not criminal proceeding. It's a, it's a. It's a bureaucratic proceeding essentially, uh, that's handled separately from civil or criminal codes.
Correct, so you're not.
So it would not, it would not be subject to a statute of limitations.
So Max, when you just said that you made a decision that you should have been impeached upon, upon your last thing that Etta did not catch on you. Isn't that technically still at this point impeachable?
Which one?
Last week, when you said you acted in a corrupt manner and making sure Corn would kept his job.
That wasn't really corrupt. I mean, I don't. I'm, I'm. No, his exact words, no, I'm gonna clarify this shit.
Let them, let them say it, because Cantor's been sniping at me the last two hours and I want her, I want to hear it from her mouth, please.
Oh, sure, that that was it, you know, uh, since, you know, we're bringing these things up, uh, you you've, uh, admitted twice to, uh, corrupt things.
What was that?
Uh, last meeting, you brought up, uh, that it was, uh, a reach of your power, an overreach of your power, uh, to.
Potentially an overreach of my power.
Right, perfect, so someone should look into that, probably.
Yeah, uh, maybe you should.
Here's, here's the part.
I'm a doctor, Max, I actually have a job.
Well, if you were a doctor, then you would have probably spent your time term one advocating for doctors and EMS. Instead of having my wife write the only fucking thing you brought to this table, Cantor.
What are you even referring to on that?
Drug scheduling, that's your one contribution medically.
You know that Norman Adams wrote that, right? And she didn't write a.
I did say, I did say that when I.
She even said that, it was Norman Adams.
Have you done for your people if you cannot even do one thing?
Things, Max, if you actually paid attention, I've passed numerous pieces of legislation. I pushed for a pay raise. Uh, I'm, I'm sure I might have pushed for things other people wrote as well with the drug scheduling, uh, but I've got PIPA. Uh, I've got.
Uh, okay, very good.
Let's see here, let me pull this up.
Three months, by the way.
God damn.
Three months.
All right, I've got, I brought PIPA, I've got FFO, uh, I dropped, I, uh, did the testing for the drug scheduling. Uh, I brought forward, uh, an economic, uh, economic thing, which, uh, has been taken over by TJ, uh, was I was happy to work with him on. Uh, as well as the more recent, uh, you know, dubbed horny tags. I'm also one of the loudest people in these meetings to make sure that I can advocate for, uh, my staff, uh, and the people of the city.
Did you, uh, you pull that from the Discord announcement your husband made or is that like off the top of your head? The one that told people to vote for you?
Uh, if you can read, it didn't say that.
Okay, hey, hey, let's, let's, you know, let's, let's bring it back.
No, it's okay, Max, you know, uh, this is very clearly you just saying you want to maintain the ability to punish and reward anyone at will so that they will do your bidding. Uh, if you want that power, sure, I'll vote yes, let's go, fuck it, it's gonna pass anyway.
The, the thing is, is right now, I'm dealing with TJ, who is a good man, uh, who is. Uh, an unelected official, and I'm dealing with someone who cheated to get elected, and you are trying to tell me what is and is not impeachable.
Max, uh, yeah, okay, then then do something about it.
Man, imagine if I went to.
If I, if I apparently did something so bad, then fucking do something about it other than extorting me by punishing both EMS and doctors. And saying that the only way you will raise the pay is if I admit to a felony offense, which would have me made ineligible to sit on the council. Which would mean that you have one less person to vote no to you.
Uh, that's fair, uh, but at the end of the day.
Shut up, Armor, why don't you log in on your desk?
Much rather prefer someone like you in that chair that I know is not a threat. As opposed to someone who might have been elected fairly, who might actually propose and act as a threat actively to me.
Max, I got sixty percent of the vote.
Meta gaming right now?
How, how much could I have done, uh, to do that when we have, uh, over sixty active doctors every month? Uh, and I got forty seven votes, which is sixty percent of the vote. Uh, you know, you can keep making this shit up. I think you're so far up your own ass, you think I actually cheated, uh, at this point, when that is clearly not what this is. And you know what? I even spoke to the person who showed me that today. They admitted it to me, uh, and they're fine. I don't not intend to, uh, out them publicly because I don't want them getting hate for it, uh, and they, uh.
Fire them in retaliation like you've done to other doctors, right?
Uh, I have not fired anyone for retaliation about speaking to you. I fired one doctor for giving you splints. Which, uh, we were told our pay could not be raised if we let that continue to happen.
No, you were told your pay will not be raised if you cannot fire inactive doctors after three weeks.
This was early on. It was one of the first things, uh, Crane and, uh, Aneta told me, uh, doctor pay cannot be increased. While medical supplies are being handed out and y'all, if you think you're so fucking special and can get away with everything. Took that from an intern who had to be like, oh.
You're talking about my wife when she was injured at the, the prison?
Yes, so, uh, technically, I didn't know that part. I'm already broke two rules in that fact. There you go.
Okay. So you didn't fire her because she helped my wife?
No, not because it's your wife, because she admitted to giving out medical equipment, which from the tippy top of Derek Shaw is one of our two rules that we cannot break.
Your husband.
Oh, no, it's used in the prison, it didn't leave the prison. She gave it to me and it was used in the prison.
They are not to take medical supplies anywhere outside of the hospital, including the prison. That's been told to them many times.
Okay.
Yeah, I can confirm that, by the way. That's, that's not, that's not even their decision. That's like, that's the state.
She just healed, she just, she just used it.
Uh, that is also.
That's even worse, that's even worse.
That is worse. Gun, what gun? Actually worse. If she was signed in out there, that is even worse.
Look, I'm not, I'm not gonna join in the, the personal shit you guys go, go around and forth, but if if you're gonna start talking about. Uh, doctors doing medicine outside of the hospital, uh, and. Jesus, yeah, that's, that's like a nonstarter.
Uh, so, I mean, where were we?
Uh, so.
What was, what was the other impeachable thing? I'm curious.
Uh, well, it was actually what you had said just not too long ago in the meeting in regards to. Uh, things that you had done that should have been under investigation that were impeachable, which is the actual quote.
Potentially impeachable.
Okay, can I, can I, it just, I'm gonna step in.
Yeah, yeah.
Knowing Max, uh, as, as well as I have over the first term, I can almost certainly guarantee you. Uh, that any comment he made to you about, uh, you know, something being impeachable or whatnot. Uh, is one of two things, either one, it is him being extremely tongue in cheek. And using hyperbole to make a demonstration regarding the fact that essentially nothing he has done, uh, with his public powers is actually. Worthy of impeachment, and thus he's baiting someone into acting on something that he finds, uh, humorous. That they would even consider it, or number two, uh, it is something that is completely fictitious that he is baiting you with. Uh, because not only, there, there is one more thing that I think he likes more. Uh, than, you know, being tongue in cheek at people, uh, and that is lording over them after his long term concocted plan succeeds. Max fancies himself a mastermind type personality who thinks he can, you know, control all little puppets and blah, blah, blah. Uh, so, you know, I I don't, I don't believe any of this shit for a second that he's done something actually impeachable with the public powers.
Fuck you.
Uh, and I think that he is, uh, basically just being a smuggled dickhead texting to his girlfriend over there, so that's my consensus.
I just pulled my phone up.
Yeah, and that's what you were doing.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just proving my point. I had a conversation with my wife last night where we, uh, we literally. Almost word for word predicted that is exactly what you would say.
Well, that's the reality. I'm not saying it because I'm wrong.
Uh, well, you're not wrong, that's the thing.
Yeah, I know.
All right, so, uh, to go back to the actual thing that we were discussing, um.
Sorry about that, TJ, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What are we talking about?
Approval, I just reworded that, uh, take a look to see if that's acceptable on your behalf. And if we can meet on the compromise with that. And shit, I mean, it could even be one versus the other. I mean, if you want to do it, whatever, you know, it's, it's, you know.
True, we should talk about.
There are, like I said, there are certain things about this that I like. Section six in particular, uh, I would remove section eight entirely, um, I would. I don't like. I don't like section five because it slows the process down. Uh, in fact, the only thing I actually like out of this is transparency, that's it. I would love for there to be a public way for me to document all of my changes and, uh, my mentality for them.
Uh, we asked the state for that, didn't we, for a log system?
Yeah.
Yeah, was it number five, what you just said that you liked with it? Because I was talking with the Andy stuff, that's exactly what that describes.
No, six.
Uh, no, that's the ability to actually see what's publicly available. The roles and responsibilities is that, that you were trying to get Etta to be empowered to actually go through. Be the point of contact for funding requests and make those kind of be a final determines with it, which.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Twenty minutes ago, that's what you.
I, I like, I, I like section four, um, I think that this is also unnecessarily bogged down because it includes requiring my signature for stuff like that. I think that the treasurer should be able to review stuff like that and to completely just be able to do that themselves. I don't even, I, I, like. Um, as so long as you're reporting on what you're doing, so that we all know where the money is going, that's it.
So if I strike out, uh, on five, the mayor's side to that. And then strike out on number four, also, uh, both the mayor and the mayor's side to that. Those two things, if I remove those, that's less that you have to do. And that then complies with what you're requesting.
It, it, it's less about, uh, having less to do, it's more about empowering us on a, a, a middle management level to be able to actively.
Also under the wrong fucking thing.
Respond to people and to be able to do that. Uh, like I said, at the snap of a finger, at the drop of a hat, I want people to be able to call you TJ and be like, hey, here's my idea, can we meet? Boom, one hour later, you decide whether or not that's a good idea, uh, you don't have to wait a week for the council meeting. And then you just give them the money and you make a little report on it and then we all know, like, that's, that's what I'm about. I like the quick response time.
Do one more.
And that's, that's why I just removed from your side to it.
Wait, I gotta, hold on, I gotta question.
That's my philosophy.
What if we could, and I agree with you, Max, I, I think you're, uh. Your, your perspective on sort of these middle managers and their little thiefdoms being able to make quick decisions that are, you know, strategic. Uh, makes for more like, you know, dynamic executive board type, you know, operation. Uh, I, you know, I certainly would always, and I always have reserve the right to do things with the DOJ, so I can see your perspective on that.
Um, no, it was a three DS one.
What if? What if the treasurer had a big red button?
To do what?
You mean, to do what?
What's the context behind that?
Uh, to like, like, set everything to a null status.
I still don't know what you mean.
Oh.
Well, if the economy is in freefall, what if you had a red button?
Uh, I mean, that's like the ultimate veto right there, red, gone.
I feel like that kind of works against the first thing that you said, right? Like the rainy day fund?
I like the rainy day fund.
Yeah, that's thirty million that we discussed, yeah.
And I will say out loud, um, I did send the economy into a freefall, uh, I did. And I also demonstrated that, um, it was very easy to get it out of that freefall, too.
Well, sure, right, because we, you know, uh, there's room to do that now because we don't have. Encumbrances, right? That's not to say we won't.
I, I think the issue stems from, it's like I was saying earlier, if, if things are trending in one direction, eh, it's. The trends, there, there, you gotta look at the whole picture, right? And a trend, sure, you might have a trend of like a week. It's bad, but how's that trend looking over the course of like a month, two months? Well, he just said that. You kind of have to let it play out.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, but he literally just said that he did that.
No, I know, but that's, no, what I'm saying is to his.
What's to prevent him from doing it again?
Sure, but, I mean.
I, I'm going to do it again.
It's going to happen again, yeah, like, I mean, he even, he even prefaced it. Because he said it's, it's gonna happen because of how he's planning on playing things out of the course of the next three months, so if, if.
That's my fiscal policy.
Yeah, if, if you have that freefall hit again and then you come in, big red button, but you're not letting the plan play out. Then it might make things worse because you're coming and putting a stop to it.
Anthem was not released in twenty twenty three.
It's, it's done being put in place, I should say. Right?
So let, let me just back up real quick, because I, I'm trying to understand this, uh, and I'm, I'm trying to just kind of wrap my head around it. A lot, there's been a lot of discussions, a lot of points back and forth, um. So Max, you're saying that you wouldn't mind if I just go ahead and for most of this stuff, just approve it as is?
The newer Mortal Kombat games, like, based off of those screenshots, they not look like Mortal Kombat games.
That's the number, that's the section four. I'm trying to go, kind of bring us back into, you know, on, on track here, kind of going down one by one with this. So that I'm not just making overarching things, uh, so that's, that's section four. Okay, so that's why I removed the language on the mayor's side, if that's what you're interested in. Is that amenable?
I'm gonna be honest, I wouldn't want state funds in this instance to be, uh, amended to just be for ad hoc state fund requests rather than, uh. Unilateral, uh, state funds.
Can you define that?
Like ad hoc requests, uh, things like Andy Jones, like for your example, right? Um, things of that nature or the, what we discussed earlier, I don't want to make Ursula have to edit more footage. But, um, you know, things like that. Ad hoc requests.
Yeah, those will still be fine.
And only those.
I'm still not sure, I'm not following, sorry.
I'm saying to amend the definition section in section three to change the definition of state funds.
Uh, all money is controlled by the government? We don't have an ad hoc fund or a different side fund on top of that. There, there is one pot. The other one that we were talking about is.
But we're, we're just, when we're discussing it, I'm, I'm concerned that the phrasing, uh. I, I'm concerned about the phrasing and what it means in other places of this.
Uh, the city's government are intended for public use. So the money that people are paying into the government that is then being put to use for them. Salaries, compensation, funding requests. If, if, I mean, I don't have to dumb this down even further, but we all pay taxes. This is a public system that should be used for the people. I, I'm not sure where you're going with that.
Uh. Yeah, I'll just, I'm just gonna cook on it. I'll, I'll, come back to me.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm not following right now, and that could just be me being everywhere with, uh, all the information we talked about. That's what I was trying to bring you back on side. Uh, okay, so that's fine.
How come armor is so toxic towards me?
To that, um, because you don't want that, right?
Repeat that?
Uh, section five, I deleted your portion of that. To review funding requests, provide secondary approvals up. You're basically just saying, listen. TJ, trust you. When the request came in, you don't need to do a secondary approval. I trust treasure, do it, go.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay, so that's, that's why that is outlined or striking out there. Okay?
Okay.
So I'm going through each one, section six, you said that you liked. Sections.
Why, why don't we, why don't, why don't we do this?
Yeah.
Um, let's make section six and four their own like report slash X, I guess. Uh, that would be good. Uh, those are two very good.
Yeah, he never recovered from that.
Uh, okay. The other ones are just defining things. So I mean, it goes basically up until one through six at that point. And then seven is just say very much, uh, just says we have to vote on this act.
Mm-hmm. So in number eight, I would backspace entirely.
So you want all in full control salary to just send it into a spiral again?
Uh, yeah. Yes. I, I, I will remind you that the state account is almost uh, at its peak right now.
Uh, yes, that's, that's, that is fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, I wanna say something. I wanna say something because I think this is very important. Even in a time where somebody embezzled hundreds of millions of dollars for a fictitious spaceship program. Uh, the state account was still a better than it has ever been. So take that for what you will.
So what you're saying is it shouldn't still have happened, but the state account is still fine afterwards. So regardless, you're giving the, it shouldn't happen, but it did happen, but we were still fine.
Well, it, it worked differently back then. Right now, uh, there are a lot of people who depend on their salaries being doled out from the state account. So they're, they're, we right now, um, unless I'm mistaken, the state account is paying for more than it ever has. Which presents the very real possibility that it could actually reach zero uh, in the case of say, uh, let's say that somehow another mayor comes in and then wants to build a fucking spaceship and somehow gets a hundred million dollars for it. Um. That the state account would not, it, it would, it would get so hard fucked that that situation that Crane just outlined could never happen. Uh, fortunately, we don't have to worry about that because Crane and uh, the, the lady who was interim mayor worked together and decided, hey, maybe there should be a check and balance on the mayor randomly spending a hundred million dollars. And it's you.
Correct. Right. All I'm putting in there. It's all just legitimizing. I'm not trying to add unnecessary steps. That, that's it. If it comes to that point where it gets to, I want to build a fucking spaceship program. I don't even think that launched, by the way, dude. Anyway.
No, it didn't.
Okay.
No, it got sabotaged and they filed a two hundred million dollar insurance claim. There was a one sheet of paper. It literally just said insurance claim and then it said an amount to be paid.
Okay, that, that sounds like Lang Buddha, alright.
It sounds like some shit I would do.
Well, I mean, it was actually out there. It was out in Sandy. That entirety of the program was, was there. You could go look at it if you weren't around them. So silos did exist in there, uh, Miss Rocket did exist. All those things were there. So.
Yeah, I said the program was imaginary, not the rocket.
What I'm saying, I, I'm literally just trying to.
True. I never got to go to the moon.
Just because you could do it, doesn't mean you should do it.
Uh, well, I did it for a very specific purpose and it was during a time and period where people were vying and struggling to purchase a car or a house or an, or, or a trailer. Uh, and I deliberately crafted the system that was provided to me by the state to fatten as many people's pockets as I could that were working legally, that would be getting money from the state account. Uh, and the cost of that, of course, was that for a brief period of time, about a month and a half, month and a half, the state account made no money. Uh, and once uh, it was time to pull back, like I, I'd set a number for myself. I was like, I don't want to go below forty million dollars because I think that's too dangerous. Once uh, it got close to that, I reverted the changes that I made. Uh, or, or rather, one of, just one of, uh, two of the changes that I made. And all of a sudden, the state account was in the green again and we're good. So it was, it was my intention always to make the state operate at a loss for the sake of the people of Los Santos on the street. And it worked. And I'm gonna do it again.
And let's be fiscally responsible for it if it does occur, a- as you say, that it's not absolutely crippling. And do it smart.
Yeah, no, yeah, of course. No, I mean, look, my, my wife has a, a masters in finance. Um, you're a smart guy. Um, I, it really was as simple as me setting a, a lower limit and being like, I, it, it's too dangerous to go beyond this number. Uh, no matter what happens, if it gets too close to that, then changes have to be made. Um, but everything's great right now. Um, I think in the last seven days, we almost made twenty million dollars. Twenty million dollars in seven days. That is fucking crazy. You know what the best part is? Um, I haven't had to drop anyone's pay. Um. I've raised people's pay, except for group six. I did lower group six, back down to default numbers. What?
And that's entirely fine. Just putting it for the future, Max.
Yeah, that's fair. Uh, I mean, I so do you disagree with uh, removing section eight entirely?
Uh, what portion of section eight?
But I don't think he was.
Specific line? Uh, so if you go line by line, which one are you not, not good with?
Uh, let's see. Proposal along the justification of the adjustments, including financial forecast shall then be forwarded to the council for discussion. Don't like that. Uh, approval of salary adjustments must be obtained through majority vote of the council. Don't like that. Uh, the treasurer and the mayor will work together for salary adjustments. Should the treasurer and or mayor not be available, proposed will go through the council for final vote. Don't like that. Uh, no salary adjustments shall be implemented without adherence to this process. Obviously don't like that. Um, I do like the treasurer assessing salary adjustments. Uh, but at the same time, once again, um, I don't want to have to wait for you to do that. Uh, and I'm doing my own assessment. And I will say, uh, there exists a, a realm of possibility where you are more qualified to make those assessments. Um, uh, maybe you're more college educated than I am. Maybe, maybe you have more experience with finance, with economies, so on, so forth. Um, Los Santos's economy is a very specialized thing. Uh, and I think more than anyone actually in this whole room and probably in this whole city, I am the most qualified person to assess and to make adjustments. Because I know what is possible and I know what can be done and I know what will happen. Uh, and once again, as I have proven. Um, and I think it adds an extra layer of bureaucracy that I am not able to stomach.
Alright, um, so let me propose this then to you real quick, uh, as you just kind of mentioned it. Instead of putting it as a limiter. Um, as to what you can or cannot do, then why don't we just empower and say, just as you can, I can as well. And that's, that's it.
You want to be able to adjust it as well?
Uh, you don't have to go through checks. You don't have to go through balances. If you can do it, I can do it. There's no need to go back and forth. And try to limit that.
Um, if you want that kind of power, you could run for mayor, TJ. That's what I think.
Well, you gave me the other ones to go through funding requests, so it's not too much of a difference. I can go through seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I can go through what's just done in a week, which is you know, five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred. I'm saying I'd do it, but it still gives that power. So we're not bickering back and forth about it.
Fair. Um, I mean, if you're keen on keeping some of this or uh, um, we've almost been talking about this for an hour. I don't mind.
Yeah, they have. Jesus Christ.
So what we do, we've, what we've done in the past for stuff like this is uh, if we, if if it ever got to a point where it seemed like we had to super discuss something, typically we would table it until next week. Um, so unless this is in a state that you think is uh, votable right now, um, which I mean, I think potentially it could be votable. Uh, we could just wait till next week uh, with a uh, with the, the revised tabled version or whatever.
I think it's actually complete now. We went through line by line and said what we don't like. So I don't foresee that changing whatsoever. I'm just removing the stricken things now and I think we can vote on it.
Okay, um.
It is, it's done. That's done.
Okay, uh. Who shall start this vote? Uh, we'll let TJ start and then we'll go left.
Alright, all in favor? So my left, cancer?
Yeah.
Alright, let me do the recording for it. Uh, Crane.
Uh, hold on a sec. I'm gonna look at what, what I'm voting on.
Alright.
This guy's not even fucking paying attention anymore.
So did anything change with section eight?
Uh, we basically just said that the treasurer and mayor may assess and change salaries. That's, everything else was taken out. The limitations has to go through approvals, has to go through a council vote, has to be checked and balanced, et cetera, by everybody. It's just gives dual power and we don't have to fight on it. We just go with it. That's what changed.
So. Wait, so it's like whoever goes to bed last?
I mean, all technicalities, sure.
Yeah.
Shit, Maxwell should have been in favor of that then. Fucking guy never sleeps. Um.
Do we?
And I'm voting on the whole thing. God damn.
I did suggest that it be broken up.
I'm so on everything uh, but eight, but mostly because I just I, I, I don't think that. I don't know. Uh, I'm gonna vote no if I have to vote on everything.
That's, that's kind of the way I feel about this as like an omnibus type of bill.
I have no idea what that just meant.
I mean, it's like when you put a bunch of stuff in one thing.
It's kind of an omnibus bill. Uh, Cornwood's next vote. Cornwood?
Alright, so how, how about this? If I take out eight right now?
Hmm.
If we take out eight. Shall we revoke that? If we do that separately?
Well, let me see. Let's, let's just have the vote first and then we can discuss amendments and proposals.
Alright, that's fine. Okay.
Cornwood, what's your vote?
Uh, I'm, I'm still kind of looking through it a little bit. I, I'm, I'm just gonna be honest. I, I feel like and I know. Hmm. There, there's definitely parts of this that are, that are good, right? I mean, there's, there's definitely the, the whole cover your ass portion. Okay, there's the accountability. There's the transparency, right? But there, there's, each one of those things are a different thing. So to Judge Braun's point. It is when, when you got an omnibus situation, I, I think it's just too much all at once. Even if you take part eight out. I, I, this is too much for me all at once. I, I know y'all are leaning towards it, but I, I, I'm a no on this. I, I just, I don't agree. There's too much at once.
Brief, got a brief interjection. It, it like removing eight, entitling this like, like additional duties and responsibilities of the treasurer, I think uh, would be great. Although uh, removing the transparency section and presenting it as it, like its own thing, uh, so that it can be wait, hold on. Now I'm tripping myself up.
Hmm.
Um, yeah, ignore everything I just said. I'm a fucking idiot. Uh, Murphy?
Yes.
It's your vote?
Oh, it's my vote.
It was Cornwood's vote.
Um. Yeah, I, I think that this, this.
Wasn't paying attention because I started talking.
The stance to percolate a bit more and be discussed a bit more, maybe for, you know, uh, another week and be tabled.
Want me another two hour discussion with this? I'm happy to do it.
I mean, I think, I think I can endure a two hour discussion if it's in the best interest of the public.
What about this is not in the best interest? Please let me know because this is all about transparency. This is all about.
Again, and I was like.
There's nothing in here that is not for people or transparency that is deterministically against anything in the best interest of this city. So if you're gonna sit here and say it's not, then I'm very concerned real quick.
I'm gonna defer to Crane and vote now and discuss amendments later. And a- as it is right now, without further discussion, it'd be a no for me.
Siobhan?
Uh, no.
Also no.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so let's discuss, uh, what would change that?
Removal of section eight entirely. Um, I don't think it is.
One, two, three, four.
I don't think it is in the best interest of the people of Los Santos if uh, an unelected position like the treasurer has the ability to assess and change salaries. Um, I.
Can I ask a question? We, we, we in the beginning had a number of discussions uh, and meetings that I thought were very productive about uh, the adjustment of salaries. We talked about cops. We talked about EMS. We talked about all these different things, right?
Yeah, no, I'm just double checking.
Now with the police, I can understand that uh, the way that the PCP has manifested in your first term, right? When that was authorized. Um, you know, it, it made sense that that superseded sort of what we had been doing because that was targeted uh, at a very narrow and very specific task, right? Of micromanaging one department.
Uh, the PCP didn't have anything to do with my quota system. That's something that I would have presented to them regardless, after I was gifted the uh, the powers by the state to adjust their pay.
Okay, and I guess, I guess, okay, so let me, let me ask that. Um, what, what is the, I, I understand, for example, your, your concept about Angus and Mosley's, right? That makes sense to me. Um, what is the emergent need for the ability to rapidly without uh, council discussion, change, let's say uh, lawyer pay?
Um, what's the emergent need for the restriction of that power? That, I mean, there, this is a present, presentation that was designed to restrict that ability. What is the emergent need for this?
Well, hold on, we didn't restrict it actually. We went line by line and got rid of restrictions for this and actually.
I'm asking a different question. I'm not, I'm not asking this in relation to solely his legislation. I'm saying that I, I understood, uh, and I understand the the argument about why it doesn't make sense to have a check and balance on the mayoral powers be in emergent situations. But I'm saying what what kind of emergency or what kind of scenario would forego the potential for like mutual discussion?
Well, first of all, we only ever discussed it at the council of eight because uh, the mayor did not have the power to make an adjustment. Uh, it was our only method of having our voices heard was to meet in this room. Uh, it was our only method of having our voices heard was to meet in this room and then to make suggestions on pay changes to then be given to you. Uh, which would then be forward to the state, uh, which there are some forwarded changes that haven't even happened. Uh, and I'm pretty confident, I don't, I don't know if it was uh, Siobhan, what was the the one? Um, actual pay that didn't actually go through and get changed? I think it was maybe um, DOC. There like there was.
I remember it was us. We talked about it.
We talked about that. It was. No, the the doctor one was the one that didn't go through because the state said that they were. Um, worried about corruption at the time and there were several people removed as a result of that investigation.
Doctors?
Think that's before what we're referring to. That was like one of the first few weeks. Um.
Well, no, it was it was longer than that.
No, but our $200 an hour pay didn't go through. When we did that.
Well, I mean.
Hey, what is, what is deal? What is city council currently?
Uh, nine hundred, I think?
Yeah, nine hundred.
That was what we were saying.
Okay, and what is it supposed to be?
It's supposed to be eleven hundred, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that that's why uh, with what power and uh, actionable things I can do. Uh, it's good for me to do because at the end of the day, there are people that will just drop the ball on the state level. Uh, and that's effect, that's effectively what. Um, that's when we were making these suggestions and changes, that was the only way that we could do it. Now I can do it. Uh, now I have been doing it uh, to great success.
Yeah, that speeds up the decision or the process uh, whether the decision is made by you or us, right? Uh, now it no longer has to be forwarded to the state. We can just have a quick chat and you walk off and do it like has been done a couple times, including. Last week with EMS pay. Uh, it still increases the speed on it. Uh, I fail to see how it makes a discussion unnecessary.
Unnecessary?
Yes, you're arguing, you're arguing that there shouldn't be a discussion. You should just be able to do it.
Um, and I am arguing that because I have done an excellent job. I have done an amazing job.
There are many people that would disagree with that. The amount of people we have coming in complaining to us about what you've done with. I know toe PD whatever since they heard about our paid increase. It's not even just EMS and doctors. Uh, I promise there are plenty of people who would disagree with that.
Well, they should have voted differently.
Uh, I did, I think they did, which is why uh, you have less votes than last time uh, and have a deputy mayor who disagrees with you. These people tried to get you out.
They failed. Why did they fail, you think?
I don't know. There's enough people that uh, you paid off probably.
So you're accusing me of paying people off to get elected?
Oh, no. Uh, what I'm accusing you of is what you were directly stating that you were doing. Uh, is creating uh, this big bubble where everyone gets paid uh. It's perfect amount uh, to make them all really happy so that they revote for you.
Um, well, see, that's the thing. I didn't know I was actually running for reelection until about like two weeks beforehand and most of my fiscal policies.
Did she not?
Yeah, my, yeah, my wife, my wife was gonna run. Yeah, yeah, totally.
So would it not make her look good? Oh, God, here we go again, dude.
Uh, yeah, I suppose it would, but uh, she didn't run. I ran.
So it still benefited you.
The golden age had nothing to do with anybody running for election and everything to do with performing the role and it was. Changes were made as soon as Max had the ability to do so. He would have done it sooner if he had the ability to do it sooner.
I understand. The question asked was uh, that you have done an amazing job uh, and what I bring up is that many people disagree. And are unhappy, including doctors who have come to me who stated that they voted for you and now regret it.
Unfortunate.
They should talk to their liaison and get their pay fixed.
Uh, we do not intend to give in to your demands.
You don't want to make it so that you guys are held to a higher standard and thus can be paid more by the state by way of not hiring felons and that you you don't want to have to go through every twenty one days.
It is not my decision, Max. I'm not a board member. I know, uh, I know you're going back and forth on this. No, he is not. He's an attending like me.
Okay. Alright, well, uh, your pay will remain at that. Uh, and in fact, until Happy speaks with me, it will also remain. Where it is. Uh, I don't think he's a good leader. Uh, I heard again recently that someone had to wait. Uh, a month and a half for an interview to get hired at EMS.
Um, okay, if we're moving on to that, I have had a discussion with him about it. Um, the issues occurred with the fact that their P and T department. Um, numerous times uh, at this point has has left once they were placed into the position. Uh, so they are currently as high command uh, doing uh, the entirety of hiring and firing. Uh, I've offered some uh, solutions that will help speed it up uh, as well as offered to assist with uh, putting people into those positions. Um, I've had extensive talks with him. Uh, do I think they are in the best state? No. Uh, however, uh, that was not intentional from Happy's point. Uh, he is just trying to work off of the fact that people uh, have left. So they are doing what they can in the meantime.
You uh, did you bring to the board members my uh, two demands?
I spoke with Janetti, um.
What did he say?
Uh, he was just uninterested in it.
Okay, uh, you didn't speak to anyone else on the board? What about Pixie Tarantino?
To be very frank, uh, Pixie is not incredibly interested with having these kind of discussions with me. Uh, when I try, uh, she does not want to be involved.
Uh, and who is the the last member of the board?
Derek Shaw. Uh, I I'd struggle to get a response from him on a good day. Uh, that's about that.
Well, it it sounds. Sounds like the hospital's in trouble then. If you're not able to meet a simple. Uh, board meeting in order to discuss having all the the dozens and dozens of doctors that voted for you have a fair and livable wage.
If you have an issue with the fact I can't speak with Derek Shaw, say it up with him himself. Uh, we do a great job of running the day to day. Um, and our doctors know that. And I do everything I can to make sure uh, that they are happy and well taken care of. Uh, and I've had many discussions with them regarding the pay. Uh, and they were all in ignorance that uh, we will weather this if we have to, uh, that it is not worth uh. Giving in to other demands of a terrorist.
Um, former terrorist.
Sure.
Uh, two time mayor. Uh, and also the 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 purpose of your role. Is to represent the will of the average doctor. So you're saying that the average doctor. In the hospital is okay with making $500 per hour. Because they think that that making it so that felons cannot work at that hospital. Uh, and that inactive doctors should be fired after twenty one days. You that those are the two, you told them that and they they are okay with weathering the storm.
Twenty one days, no, for something. I've only just heard. You didn't bring that up before. Uh, you seem to have no issue when I explained it last time.
I said three weeks, twenty one days.
Alright, uh, to be clear, no, they they really don't have an issue. I've brought it up with many people, uh, including at our meetings. Um. And uh, and yeah, uh, I believe there was if anyone was around that day, that Swatter was being stams uh, spammed with W canter or something uh, because I I said uh. I said, look, uh, I have you guys' back to a fault. Uh, but also uh, I will do what is best for the hospital as a whole, more so than any individual. Uh, and I've worked uh, every single day since then and will continue to do so at whatever pay rate we are at.
I'm proud of you. Um, I think what I'm learning now is that your leadership. Um, is unwilling to negotiate. Uh, what about, w- would you guys be able to do four hundred an hour?
For what?
For your pay.
What's your request here?
For the same, the same request.
Same request? Uh, we're not interested in meeting the demands.
Uh, three hundred an hour.
You offering to to lower our pay to meet the demands? I I mean, you know. No, if we weren't interested before, we still aren't.
Okay, well, back down to two fifty it is. At least until you guys are willing to uh, negotiate.
Perfect. Uh, no, I will not negotiate with terrorists. I'm good.
I mean, I'm just looking at the thing there. Isn't that almost like basically kind of extortion? You're trying to compel another person.
Oh, he already did that. Uh, he blatantly told me I had to admit to a felony.
State employee to perform an official act within the course or scope of their employment?
But see, Max has put himself on the head of the PD so that everyone's too scared to prosecute him for anything.
That's.
Definitely not because you guys don't have any fucking proof.
Look, you can be very loud. You can toot your own horn about W canter, W canter, but at the end of the day.
Mm-hmm.
We we are playing by new rules. The mayors of the now and mayors of the future will have the power to do this to you. Until you do something about it. And if you are willing to sit in your hospital, if you are willing to sit in your hospital.
We will continue focusing on the people and not you.
Very good. Listen here, okay? Um, that hospital functions without doctors. It does. The only necessary branch.
Is that the argument you're gonna make? You think people are gonna be happy if uh, you do that?
I I don't give a shit about that, okay? The only part of that hospital that needs to be there are people doing EMS. And that department is fucked up, okay? So if you think you are making a statement by sitting in your hospital and saying. Guys, Max is an evil man. He he's extorting us. Uh, he's a, he's a terrible guy and he he really.
I like spreading the truth. I think people have the the right to know. You're all about transparency now, right?
Yeah, and I'm gonna be entirely transparent. I think you are a sham. I think the head of the board of your medical board, when they come around, they are frauds. I think that all of you are so lazy that you have allowed a clique and environment to form inside of that hospital that is so. Unhealthy that people are not allowed to progress in any meaningful manner. I think that the EMS are similarly affected.
Hold on, hold on.
Shut the fuck up. Listen to me, okay? I had countless people come up to me about what it is like to work in your hospital.
And I have had numerous of those people come to me, admit that they did that and tell me that they were wrong.
Yeah, I wonder why they would tell their boss that they.
For anything. Uh, I voted yes to your silly little whistleblower thing, uh, because we do not intend to punish anyone for attempting to better their situation.
Little whistleblower.
We have their back. I was very clearly an attempt to protect the people who have spoke to them about the hospital. Uh, and I uh, I have no issue with that.
Yeah. You think I have, you think that the whistleblowing protection act was because two people came to me. And told me that your work environment sucks so much cock that they were afraid to present themselves as potential runners. You think that's why that was written?
I spoke to the individual who has talked to you uh, today, actually. Um, there is no issue. We uh, we're on good terms. Uh, talking through, she apologized for the situation uh, and then we're good. You know, you can keep creating issues that don't exist. Um, but no, I I have my doctors back no matter what they want to do.
See, that's, that's, that's my problem. I I think that the city would be what better well-served by a cast of doctors and a head of board or a board or whatever. That were not any of you. Um, that's the bottom line.
Max, your only issue uh, has been a couple interns who at the time were mad they didn't get promoted uh, and me. You have no actual idea on how the hospital runs or what our real issues are. You for some reason think that it's okay about the doctors treating people outside of the hospital or giving out medical equipment. And you think you're, the issue i- is is me somehow. The person who uh, who worked uh, a hundred and forty hours last month. To make sure that I was there every second to make sure that all of their voices were heard. The person that has constant meetings with every single level of the chain of command. The person that has pushed for the most progress, the newest member of the hospital command that has taken the hospital from a sad, overly serious place. Where everyone felt too scared to do uh, whatever they had to to treat people uh, to something where uh, everyone has the right to try their best. Uh, and I will hire uh, anyone to give them a chance. I've hired someone with a missing arm. I've hired uh, blind people. I've I've. I've literally turned this place around. Uh, you would actually love it. In fact, you sat in on that one interview we did. Y'all loved it.
It was great.
I think that you would love the hospital. If you sat aside for a second, ignored your hatred of me for two fucking minutes. Just to realize that the hospital is in the best place it has ever been.
Okay, um, I will, I will admit that culturally that might be the case for you. Uh, I don't think it's the case for everyone. Uh, and if your argument is that you are i- in essential service in Los Santos that deserves to be respected, deserves to be paid more than senior buns workers. Why the fuck are you hiring blind doctors? Why the fuck are you hiring, hiring felons? Why are you hiring doctors with no arms?
People who can do a good job. Uh, we're not gonna discriminate against them.
Okay. Uh, we can.
We go back on topic here. I think we really just, you know, this, we're sidetracked.
And if he wants to have these conversations, if he has an issue with my leadership, I'll talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're sidetracked.
Okay, why?
But but I will say yes.
What? Because people are scared to come on duty, those people that have talked to me and said that that isn't correct, that maybe they just. At the time were uh, mad they didn't get promoted or something. The numerous people. Okay, uh, then why?
Because if I have a heart attack, I gotta worry about the armless Tandy Miller doing my heart surgery. That's why.
So now you're mad that we haven't get kept unemployment. Uh, when uh, when I was hearing that we were.
Uh, no, your whole, your whole point and argument is that the the hospital is so essential and so necessary and must be here and that you are doing the best job and that everything is great. Um, but at the same time.
It is.
You think that you deserve to be paid more than $250 when you're unable to.
I do not give a fuck about the pay. I could have bowed my fucking head and been real careful and just begged you for a pay raise and I'm sure I could have got it. I do not give a fuck about that right now. I care about defending the fact that we are doing our fucking best and there are amazing people in that hospital who are trying every fucking day for this city. Uh, and I will not have you shit on that.
Uh, I think they're doing great. They're doing a great job. Uh, and I bet they'll be able to do it.
They do not feel that you think that, to be clear.
I know, seriously, I do. Um. And I think that they'll keep doing it for two fifty an hour.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. They likely will. Uh, in fact, you know, I'm sure they'll they'll love to hear about this.
Good. Uh, that'll free up some money for other aspects of development.
Go for it. I I hope your wife has fun running next term and getting uh, not a single vote from any essential employer.
Okay, I I I just have to step in, alright? Cause a- at the point in which the the EMS isn't being taken care of.
We have gone through one piece of legislation, I think.
So. We we already have an issue of like not having enough EMS on duty and I don't know if the pay really fixes that, right? There needs to be something else that's done. But we had a scene yesterday at the uh, Orchardville area white construction building and uh, we had like eight, nine people down.
New that was brought to the table.
Something needs to be done. I I, we had one EMS there. I got.
Well, nobody submitted anything.
Karen Lang Buddha screaming in my ear. I I I need to go. I need to go. Somebody help me up, you know? It's like, holy shit. Okay, we and we're trying to do scene control. We got uh, we got a bunch of people just kind of showing up, seventy eights call essentially. It's, I mean, it's a disaster because we only have one EMS. I roll up my damn sleeves. I'm trained, so I start helping people.
Somebody just farted out. The hospital's a shit show, very.
That shouldn't have to happen. We we should have people there and trained. We just have to find a way to support people and 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 bickering and bitching and moaning and all this kind of shit. It it ain't gonna help fix that. Cause it, cause now my job's being affected, even though I'm not a part of this shit. It pisses me the hell off, okay? I'm sorry. No, I don't mean to raise my force.
You're fine.
But we gotta, we gotta find a way to fix this shit, alright? And we're these throws all the time. It ain't gonna work.
An EMS.
So we're gonna find a way to support our our hospital workers. We gotta find a way to support our EMS and there's gotta be some middle ground that's found. The whole thing falls apart. We'll figure some shit out, we will.
Pay is just not a great motivator for activity or competent command, unfortunately.
No, I I don't disagree. Like we talked about last meeting, it's more morale. Uh, and uh, some people are very demoralized by the fact that the mayor does not value what they do. I will be there either way. I know many people that will. Uh, but if you want to make the statement uh, that they are not worth uh. The tiny amount uh, the drop in the bucket that it is for the state budget, uh, then you go ahead and do that.
Okay, so so let's not worry about the pay. Don't worry about the pay for a minute because obviously it don't work. Okay, they got their pay tripled last week and we still only had one EMS there. So what else is there that we can do to help out the EMS? That is not related to pay, without touching the pay.
Support everyone with bad personalities.
Okay, I do.
And the EMS will be happier to be at work because they'll talk to people who actually want to be there.
It's a, you know, I. It's a, that's a bold response. I mean, I guess it might make things better for them.
Bold problems require bold solution.
I don't necessarily disagree.
I mean, is there, is there anything we can do to make the EMS have more fun?
Mm-hmm.
I'm be honest, uh, last time I did volunteer EMS, I just went around rubbing dirt and everything. That was pretty fun.
That sounds great.
Even if the person just been shot in the head, I just rubbed dirt in the wound and said suck it up pussy and then got to their feet.
Mm-hmm.
That would probably work better than half the shit that we give people. I don't know what the hell is in there, my fact.
I don't disagree. Uh, it's San Antonio, you'd be surprised. Yeah, it's a, it's a real thing. Absolutely. I don't disagree. Uh, it's a, it's a real thing. Absolutely it is. Uh, for the EMS, obviously, you know, they, they've had requests. Um, a lot of it's financial. I think they are in an unfortunate position where there's not that much that helps other than financial, because, uh, when their pay is lowered, they essentially have to work other jobs just to afford to be on duty. Um, I can say from the doctor's side, um, it's, it's the culture that encourages people to be around more than anything. It really is that morale thing. Um, for EMS, I, I don't hear complaints. Um, they, they seem to be happy as a group. Maybe, uh, I think these fundraising events will help to, uh, increase morale as well. Um, but they've, you know, been planning those for a long time, uh, not Max motivated on that. Uh, but hey, you know, uh, now they have to, instead of just want to, so fuck it. Uh, they just, I just wanna be able to afford to, I guess, uh. I know my doctors are happy anyway, and I'll keep doing my best for that, um, but EMS, I think, uh, they are just in a rough spot.
Okay, what if we gave EMS guns?
I love guns. I don't know if they love guns. I do, I, I'm on board for that. We did suggest that might be mandatory they could have.
Too much.
Oh.
Can, can EMS care, are they allowed to carry a civilian firearm on duty?
Uh, I don't believe so, um.
What if y'all change that rule? So, so at least they don't feel like they're sitting ducks, so they can carry their civilian firearm and they can stand their ground.
Wait, who's targeting the EMS?
They've been robbed quite a bit.
They did get robbed, yeah, for medical equipment, absolutely.
All the time.
I don't think they're targeted as, uh, targets to harm, but to rob, absolutely.
Cause they want their IFAX and shit.
Yes.
So why don't we just make a law about making it illegal to have, like, IFAX or whatever?
We already have it.
It is, yeah.
Oh, okay, cool. Problem solved.
Well, I mean, the, I mean, somebody's got it in for you.
I see what Cream did there.
Yeah.
Law's not gonna fix shit. Yeah, I get it.
I mean, yeah, uh, that's why that's not a request of mine, right? Um, I think the, the law covers their biggest concerns, um. I mean, you know, to, it's, it's unfortunate, but a lot of what they specifically are looking for is just the ability to do their job. Um, and the finances have kinda, kinda fucked that. I know for us, uh, it's, it's just the culture that, um, that keeps people on duty, but they're in a rougher spot. They can't really have a culture. They can't afford to be on duty.
I think, look, you, you got seven fifty right now. Let it ride out. We all know money, money ain't a huge motivator.
I, I, we said it was two fifty.
For doctors.
Those doctors.
Yeah.
Uh, EMS, EMS is gonna go up to, uh, uh, one thousand after this meeting.
I'm, I'm just gonna say this, every time that we have these meetings, every time we discuss this, uh, it's a great feel-good and everyone gets pats on the back and people will temporarily be happy. Uh, pay adjustments have never solved anything in the long term. They will not continue to do so, and I rest my case.
Right.
I said this the first week of our first year.
You did. Uh, I will say, um, it has helped out my wife a lot. Uh, we were able to afford a new house because of the, uh, the adjusted pays or whatever. Uh, but I, you, you did say that and I didn't believe you. And then I raised EMS pay to one point three K, and then there weren't any EMS on duty.
It literally doesn't matter.
I don't disagree. Uh, for me, it is the statement you're making, uh, of which I'm trying to bring up, because people, uh, do not believe you care about them, uh, and neither do I.
I think the hospital could do better. Uh, I think that they should be held to a higher standard, and I would love, uh, you to meet that demand so that I can justify raising your pay accordingly.
Sure, understood. I'm glad to hear that my, uh, my discussion was happy, uh, helps convince you that they deserve something, uh, and if you'd like to discuss that anymore, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay.
I, I'm telling you, you, you letting them sons of bitches carry, that's a morale increase.
I don't disagree. I love my gun.
Yeah, at least you feel safe. You feel like you can take care of yourself.
Hmm.
I guess that's not a city council thing, but fix the morale problem.
Okay, are we done with that one?
Hmm.
Well, well, we got that out? We're good?
Yeah.
Uh.
Can we take a break? Can we take a break?
Yeah. Feel like everybody could use a type five and we just haven't like gotten a chance to call for it.
Yeah.
Hang on, that's pretty good, second.
Yeah, give me a second. Uh, um.
I need food.
I got a burger.
Hmm.
Oh, I got some candy bars.
Yo, let me get that burger, dog.
Here, I got some candy.
Hmm.
God, this was such a good idea. I, oh my god. I, I felt like I was watching like a heavyweight grand final.
Yeah, it's, uh, interesting.
I was playing my Sudoku, you know, newspaper?
Yeah, I've kinda mentally checked out this week, not gonna lie.
It was great. I really enjoyed it.
I'm, I'm still recovering asleep from last week's meeting. That, that was five hours. This seems to go the same pace.
Yeah, and I'm, this is like, this reminds me of like the first cult meetings we had, how like tense it was and shit.
Oh, yeah.
Great. Anything you need me to actually do?
Uh, still being questioned about clerk pay, but I have no idea how clerk pay is. Hmm.
Uh. Yeah, I'll ask.
Okay, um. And then... I don't know, I guess the DMV stuff is finally, and people are finally asking for like their driver's licenses back now, so I have to-
Alright, hey, um-
Figure out that stuff.
What do you think uh, about me referring, um, lifers to have clerks create their profiles?
Uh, I mean, I guess that's fine. Gives them something to do. Uh, I just don't know-
These lifers that come into the city don't have profiles?
Yeah, and apparently they need that.
And apparently they need it so like DOC can like, you know, like know who they are and shit, and apparently you need a, a state ID and everything sorted out to actually like clock into your, you know, stuff or whatever.
Now, do they have to go inside the prison or do they just go to the visitation? How do you wanna do that?
Hell, I mean, it could be, it could be up to them. I mean, I might even allow it to be, uh, you know, maybe they can like talk to the DOC and get an escort and meet the person. I don't know.
Hmm. Yeah, I, hmm. I haven't dis- It's, it's hard to say, because i- i- everything that comes out of their mouth sounds like a horror story.
I agree.
It-
But I'm just saying it could be up to the clerk, right?
Yeah.
Maybe you wanna adventure, maybe you wanna go in there and, you know, talk to them face to face.
Speaking of-
Maybe you're busy and you got a line and you just do it over the phone, you know?
Yeah, um, also regarding clerks, um, a couple of them seem to have apply for, applied for-
Cabinet positions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that.
Uh, how do you wanna go about that? Because Leo was asking me like-
I think, I think we just hire new clerks.
Okay, because, yeah, Leo was asking me-
They wanna try to get into the cabinet, then, you know, I think that's a good stepping stone in government, right?
Yeah.
Hell, I mean, I wouldn't, you know?
I guess she really likes her clerk position, and she was like, "Do I have to go on LOA or do I get fired?" Or what, what's the deal? And-
Well, yeah, she'd just go on LOA.
Okay.
I mean, just like how judges and, you know, whatever, give up their, uh, you know?
Fair enough.
Give up their, you know, and hey, guess what? Uh, you know? Someday, uh, you know? Well, keep it out to myself, but let's just say I got some plans.
Okay.
So, you know, yeah, I, I think, uh, I think it'll work.
Um.
I dare not even speak these plans out loud, but suffice to say, I got plans.
Yeah. Also, Cornwood here is, uh, going to improve on Slacks' PD weapons license training program thing.
Oh, okay.
That's what you said last week.
Yeah, yeah. They gotta find a way to start that.
Yeah, since Slacks hasn't done anything, I guess Cornwood's gonna take the initiative on that. Hmm. Which, uh, just to remind you, this is already a thing that's already like been planned out. The details have been hashed out as far as like discounts and stuff go.
Oh, really? Okay.
Okay, he did not remember.
Are you, uh, is that, is, am I getting this in an email or?
Uh, do, you wanna know-
What are you talking about now?
Uh, so you know how Slacks had the whole weapon, he had that whole weapons license training program where like-
Yeah.
It would be a discount, and then the cops who trained that individual would get the, uh, five K off the top?
Yeah.
Huh, uh, yeah, he never did anything regarding that, so Cornwood-
A single person never got trained?
I, I don't think he just did anything in general.
God damn it.
You know, you gotta get a Texas man to get shit done.
Yeah.
Hey, speaking of which, Chief Justice Crane.
He forgot.
Can we go ahead and, and publish that, uh, whistleblowers legislation?
Look, I was just, I was actually talking about, I was actually talking about fruit with people the other day and how, uh, in terms of weird fruit, I had a choice one day and I had to go with- because banana is so weird, cause you let it sit on your counter and go bad for a fucking week, and then you make banana bread, and that's, that's how you eat that fruit.
Oh.
Yeah, cause it's baby food, disgusting yuck consistency.
I, I have the craziest fucking idea.
I'm just saying as a fruit, any, any fruit, any fruit that you ingest as bread primarily, you know, it's not a very good fruit. It's a great bread, but it's just not a good fruit.
I'm-
I do like fried plantains, though.
I get this, uh, this house, right? This safe house? That we authorized?
Yeah.
And what if, uh, you ever seen Inglourious Basterds?
Nobody I wanna know.
You know the, you know the milk scene where they're in the farmhouse?
Oh, shit.
What if it's like that, but there's a whole, like, living space, like a fully developed apartment space?
Ooh, Ursula.
Below the floor.
No, it's a good thing. It's just more of a, like, it's a compliment about like how-
Uh.
And so I have the key, it's in my name. Nobody thinks anything of it. It's just old man living in a house. And secretly, we got a whole hidden apartment space under my floorboard.
The fact that you kept bringing up banana was-
You know, luxury apartment. And that's where the, uh, the safe house is.
Have you not heard it?
No.
Oh, and plus, who the fuck's gonna come to my house? They're gonna get shotgun, and they know that, right? There's only one person that's ever tried to-
Yeah, this new Notifi app's wreaking havoc on my car radio, though.
I was at, uh,
Yeah.
The, I was at the arcade near the liquid library.
Uh huh.
And I took down two MP5 when they came up the stairs. They had AKs.
Oh, good shit.
Suffice to say, though, I don't think, yeah, they had AKs. Suffice to say, you know, very interesting.
Yeah. No, I think that's fantastic.
Cause I was, cause I was trying to think-
Where is the weapons license shit?
And like in the state's name, you know what I mean?
They're just staring at each other awkwardly.
Yeah, this should be fun. I got some ideas. Shit. Alright, hold on, I'm gonna smoke a cigarette.
No, you can go back to staring at each other. That's, that's, you don't talk to me.
I don't-
God, I feel like a human being again.
What'd you do?
Um, I, I chugged coffee.
Yeah, I remembered that I had some coffee still. I'm very happy about that.
And water, because, oh, somehow I-
Uh, sorry, I'm, uh, bonus.
Uh, this is a small side note. Andy was saying probably four hundred K for Legends Locals, a hundred and fifty for two for follow-up. This doesn't have why. So that's seven hundred.
Okay.
Aye.
Cool.
Does anybody have any more food?
Uh, I do not. I have water. You want water?
No, I don't need any water. I just need food.
Yep, fresh out.
Here's some fries.
I also have some fries.
Uh, oh, nice, thank you.
I've also got hello food, by the way.
Burger, hold on.
Siobhan, we need your chief of, like, food, and, and make him come in and bring us food, this meat.
True.
I, I bought like twenty meals prior to the meeting, so if anybody else needs food, let me know.
Yeah, I think if you just put it on the ground, that'd be fine. I think I'd have to get up.
Yeah, yeah, I'll put it there.
Yeah, the, the camera person could use it, yeah.
How you doing, Ursula?
Great. How are you doing, Max?
I'm a little hungry, but I'm okay.
Well, apparently Alex has food for you. Thank you.
Why? Just order the, uh, banana bread. You know what I'm talking about?
This is crazy.
Banana bread at work.
Satisfying the food has gotten in this city, let me tell you. Just wait till Cornwood Family Farms comes in. One of the best quality food the city's ever seen.
Yeah, after you, after you, after you steal two hundred and fifty liters from my fucking tap, you motherfucker.
Yep, Cornwood.
Thanks.
What? It's water, you can get it anywhere.
That should be good.
I gotta pay for it.
That's gonna be out of our water bill.
Oh, my lord. After everything I've done for you.
Nah, you're right. We'll pay for it. You're right.
I forgot about, I forgot about the, the thing with Vingo. You're right.
As he emerged from the smog in the Barburg courtyard.
Like a fucking, he looks like a real cowboy.
Hey, I hope he shows up here. I'm just gonna shoot him right away.
Yeah, I mean, he already initiated.
He did.
Anybody else need food, Murphy? Hmm.
Yeah, where'd you get all this food?
Food court. Hmm. There was three stands that were open.
Nice. Well, that's awesome.
Uh.
I think I'll survive the rest of the meeting.
Uh.
Actually, Alex, can I get some?
Yeah, I got you. Give me a second.
Okay.
I got some I can share.
Thanks, Bib.
But I ain't, cause I'm gonna let her do it.
Well, that's fine. You, you, you need your, you have to eat for your strength.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a young and ripe fifty-four, man.
Fifty-five. You did the math last night.
I'm a young, spry fifty-four-year-old.
I swear to god.
Ryan.
Are we good to continue? Is, uh, Alan here?
Oh, he's smoking a cigarette.
Smoking inside, so fucking based.
Mm-hmm.
I can agree to that. Uh.
There oughta be a law.
Strengthens your lungs.
Holy shit, I can't wait to see somebody trying like robbing EMS and Tim just pulls out a Colt and shoots him in the head.
Uh, Tim already probably has a relationship now. He's broke, cause he doesn't, he gives all his money away. He can't afford a gun problem, but I'm sure he would.
Tim would be a damn good police officer.
Tim would be a goddamn good everybody.
A little bit if you could.
I've been trying to poach him for so long. He just won't-
No worries.
Join us.
I can't wait to take the first EMS's gun license.
Oh, oh, it'll happen, yeah.
Uh, speak up, Cream, by the way.
Uh, speak up cream, by the way. Thank you, Alex. Um, so I just wanna finalize that, clear that out, if I just delete eight, just amend it, revote it, and that would be my final thing for the day. We good?
So uh, whi- which one, where?
Eight.
So, w- for a long time, we've operated on the assumption that um, we don't give money to various departments.
And the police aren't allowed to be supported by anybody other than themselves.
And I'm afraid that, I'm afraid that section four is kind of establishing that we would be able to do that.
Uh, sort of like asking me to give Suarez thirty-five grand.
That was for his max pay thing.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna pay that, I'm, I'm gonna pay that out of pocket.
Oh, you're gonna pay that out of pocket? Okay, well, never mind.
Wait, wait, hold on, wait, what? Suarez gets thirty-five grand?
So it was asked of me to pay Suarez out of state account for the quota. Uh, I reviewed the quota, talked to some members of command and they had expressly said that that is not how it works, and so I did some due diligence behind it. Uh, to understand what that process is, um, the reason why I even held off on that is because if I start opening paying people quota sides to it as part of the state account, that opens the door for anyone that had at any point in time down in quota and say, why not me too, uh, where's my hand up? So that's why I was gonna kinda nix that side to it.
That's why I wanted to do it myself, cuz I didn't wanna set precedence, and the reason this was brought up is because during one of the shift three meetings, uh, I said I would do it because he contributed uh, a lot to, I think it was two different quota weeks. Uh, he was top three or some shit, and he wasn't available to be around to uh, reap the benefit of that, and I said that uh, I would see about getting him paid. So yeah, um, it's coming out of my pocket. Which I'm totally fine with, I think he deserves it.
Oh, I misunderstood that.
Yeah, it was what he was calling me every day for.
That's fair, I mean, he probably has some uh, probably needs some financial stability now that he's been fired for doing his job.
Uh, I mean, he's got a gauntlet, nice one, he was saying that he was trying to use the funds to buy a new one, so I don't know what he needs.
Wait, hold on, he's gonna buy two gauntlets?
I just wanted another car, as we said.
Uh, you know, I was looking at the Carfax for the gauntlet versus all the police vehicles, the, the Carfax rating is a hundred and fifty points higher than any police vehicle we have, it's kinda wild. We're seeing gauntlets all over the city now, kinda crazy how that works.
So, I don't know why it says that, um, I would definitely rate some of the uh, cop cars above the gauntlet, in my opinion.
I mean.
Travel a lot of cop cars, they're mad. What? I said you drive a lot of cop cars there? I have driven a lot of cop cars.
Uh, maybe years ago, but.
No.
That sounds fun, I'll do that too, fuck it.
I'm not gonna ask more.
You stealing my turbos?
I had to drive one the other day to, cuz an officer, they got hurt and they needed me to drive it down a mountain for them.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
I've driven a CBPI, a Taurus, uh, Scout, uh, V-Star. Uh, not the Karakara. And I've driven a gauntlet.
Yeah, the, all I know is this. There's a black gauntlet. Oro, Alex Suarez. It shows up everywhere, every single time.
Oh, so he's doing a um, what was that guy's name?
Jamal?
No, uh. Who is the guy who had the motorcycle with twenty-eight strike points and then he sold it and got a new one and then joined the SDSO? Murphy, help me out.
Oh, that's so specific, I wish I knew who this was. Yeah, please remember.
It's like, is, is some guy, is, is like.
Why was it Salim?
Yeah, Salim, there you go.
It was fucking Salim, okay.
He's probably doing a Salim, that's why he wants some money to get a new gauntlet, cuz you guys are tracking that plate, so he wants to buy a new car, cuz you can't change your plates anymore.
Oh.
I'm telling you, I know that plate by heart, it's U three.
That's why he wants a new one, come on.
Black plate, yellow text, red lights.
Holy shit, I'm personal.
Yeah, that's, that's a Salim right there.
We don't know if it's him, but that car shows up everywhere.
Is it uh, in crime shit or not?
Uh, all I know is I saw it and then I got mag dumped two days ago.
Oh, eh, okay. Alright, uh, so yeah, I just took out eight, and then I think we, that's everything that we went line by line for you. From before, that should be alright.
Do, do, amendments.
So, so what is the concern with four? It authorizes them to disperse money, they're not authorized to?
Uh, this was the portion that you said that you actually liked, and that you were just gonna say, hey, uh, if someone wants to come up with an idea, you trust that the treasurer is able to enact on that idea. Uh, that is the section that you requested that you liked out of them all.
Talking of Max?
Yes.
I went and uh, wrote something in section four.
The purpose of funding events, right?
Yeah, just uh. Yeah, I think that's fair, cuz I don't wanna treasurer to be misunderstanding and think that they're able to like, you know, say, give three hundred grand to the PD or some.
No, that's, that's not the intent. That i- is for the city to be put back into the city, should events, like for example Pride, that was just uh, presented in front of Siobhan and I, um, as well as Andy Stacey. So, yeah, no, that's, that's entirely perfectly fine. Uh, I'm not trying to be like, oh, hey, yeah, I'm just gonna go give PD fuck ton of money so that they can.
Yeah.
Well. That brings me up to a point. We uh, we have.
Are we gonna vote on this first?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's put this to bed, cuz I think we've been on this for three hours. So I've removed eight, Max added for the purpose of funding events, and at that point, I'm, I'm pretty setting, okay, uh, I'm, I'm good, as long as other people are good, if, with the amendments, if we wanna vote on those.
Uh, just for clarity TJ, that right there, that's what I meant by ad hoc earlier.
Uh, okay, I gotcha, thank you, I appreciate that, yeah, I didn't. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I still feel like this needs to be split into like three parts. Like you got the transparency, you got the CYA, you got the, y- you know what I mean? Like, I, I just feel like this needs more time.
So uh, technically, um, so one, two, and three are all like kinda standard this first off definition type shit, right? So it's established what it's, what it is, so the only thing you're really looking at here, Cornwood, is four, five, and six, because enforcement's amendments is basically just saying that, what that is, is it has to be approved by us. Not, eight is taken out and nine is just means that's effectively now, so the only things you gotta look at, four, five, six. Uh, which we have gone through extensively, so delete everything else from your mind and just look at those.
We gotta delete that shit from the damn paper too.
Uh, no, there's, that's background, it's just definition shit. It's a cover your ass again in case it comes up, in like legal terms.
Do we, do we, do we wanna amend anything or vote?
Well, uh, I see some people still, are you, you done editing, uh, Max?
Yeah, I just uh, threw in for the purpose of funding events in section five.
Yep, uh, it's perfectly fine, yep.
Uh, we might wanna rename this to like event funding approval and Financial Transparency Act or some shit.
I think it's but fund requests and transparency.
What, I think Cornwood's right, I think Cornwood's right, um, we can keep going around the table, if you wanna split this up into just section six being its own thing, and then
Yeah.
Clearly defining um, the process that you will be doing for approving events and stuff. I think is probably the best way to go for this.
Uh, that's fine, so I can take six, I can put it into a different one.
Yeah. Wow, okay. Uh, we, we, uh, can anyone hear me?
Yeah, I can hear.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, it's, we can keep going around the table while you do that and then we can go back to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Wait, we're not gonna vote on, okay?
Uh, well, I'm just making a small adjustment to it.
It needs, it needs to be split up into like three separate legislations, I think.
Just, just two, just two.
Two?
Yeah, two, two should be fine.
Okay, I'll take a look. Uh, uh, whatever.
I'm just gonna name it Funds and Transparency Act, that fun?
Yeah.
Alright, so I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna change it to like section three, make copy and paste like the first parts of the definitions. Apply to it or not.
He's gonna say, of course you don't, and then he's gonna go to Crane.
Sounds good. Um, Cantor, you got anything?
No, not today, I'm uh, I'm good on that, I was cooking on the uh, you know, your, your very kind offer to uh, come up with my own uh, staff, uh, then I realized that Ladsen doesn't need a free job handed to him, uh, like Michael does, so uh, I'm, I'm alright.
Uh, Crane already presented stuff, uh, Cornwood, you got anything?
Boy, do I. Okay, got a few things today, I'm gonna try and keep it brief, since everybody comes to me bitching moaning about everything.
Okay.
But I'm gonna try and keep it brief, um, we already followed up on uh, the shit from last week, got that done. One thing that keeps coming up from Command, PD Command, is about the times and fines, uh, and an ETA on the rebalancing of the times and fines, a lot of the charges that are in place.
So that, that, I already talked to Slacks about that today, um, to my understanding, there uh, is some data being looked into by the technicians on why the MTT is um, displaying certain things. Uh, and why it fluctuates a certain time, but I also noted to them that based on my reading of the latest log, Max has equalized them, correct? Nope, uh.
I'm gonna change it back.
Yeah, what happened was is uh, the tech, the technician, uh, so basically during last meeting, I was like, okay, I'm just gonna set back to normal so there's no more confusion, and then uh, we can wait to see if uh, it will be fixed in the future. Technician at, technician asked Cornwood to ask me to set it back so that they can target the bug. Oh, perfect, okay, cool. So, okay, so I haven't informed Slacks either way that it is being looked into, so I told him for now, you should just be using whatever the MDT says.
Okay, so pending the adjustments from the IT guy.
Just, yeah, just, just go with the MDT says, uh, the, you know, uh, the, the bugs will be sorted out.
Okay, the, the, what the MDT says on charges or what it says when you actually put them in?
When you put them in, you go back.
Okay, so when you put it in, you go back and then you come back in, it goes to the original numbers. So if you go to the charge screen on the MDT, then those numbers are higher, so just for clarity.
Realistically, realistically, look, here's the thing. Just do your goddamn best, the truth is, is that we're sorting out a bug, and that there are going to be niche use cases where, you know, your mileage may vary, right? But the worst possible thing that is gonna happen is that someone is gonna have twenty-five percent more fines versus, you know, same five percent less uh, or sa- twenty-five percent less time, right? And a, the, the inverse of that is possible as well, that they'll just have equal equal, okay?
And I will communicate to the lawyers that they need to just deal with it.
Just deal with it, just, just let the technician short his shit out, and everybody just needs to go back doing their jobs and stop worrying about shit about their pay.
Calm the hell down, good shit.
Pretty much. The one method I know works is applying the charges fresh, uh, after an MDT reset, and then taking a picture of the, the time and fine that pops up in the top rate after you apply the charges the first time, uh, that's the correct value. Yeah, that's too complicated for PD, just fucking deal with it.
Picture.
No, it's resetting and then fresh adding and you, you said four steps before that, just fucking deal with it until you figure it out, next.
Okay, next. Uh, there's another question that comes from Command, uh, helicopters, do we have any sort of idea how we can uh?
I am going to be talking with the state on how much the manufacturer is going to charge them for the import of the helicopter, and then we will relay that.
Okay, and is there any sort of grant or anything we can get in order to assist with the pay that?
Uh, there are some discussions occurring about how you could pay for it, it has yet to be determined. For now, it is a look but don't touch, this is something to be excited about for the future, but do not act as if it is actually something you have access to yet, and do not make plans around it.
Okay, so I'll get, I'll just tell them.
Just like, just, you know, and it's pretty goddamn simple, there, there's a fucking what, uh, what, what's in there in your garage? A police, uh, there's fancy shit in there, Buffalo, there's another one that looks like a goddamn super that Mary Mush can try to sell me six years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, at, at the end of the day, just treat it like that shit, okay, for now. Uh, it, it is there, the manufacturers have it on their assembly line, it is not something that y'all have been afforded or, you know, is, is in place yet.
Okay. Uh, as far as EMS low numbers affecting police work, um, that's still being worked on. Uh, you know, there, there's efforts being made, I guess to, it's kind of like a joint EMS PD thing, um. Some legislation. Uh, I want to bring up a specific legislation because just some shit has kinda gotten out of hand. Uh, this is something that I've talked about with a lot of folks, and uh, the PD is weak, the PD is honestly filled with a whole bunch of pussies that are afraid to do their job sometimes, so I said, what better than to give the PD a uh, I guess a little bit of impairment through legislation with the Police Vehicle Protection Act, and I went ahead and put that in the uh, I went ahead and put that in, in the MDT, if you wanna take a look at it. So, report six two one seven.
Oh shit, he did.
We basically have people stealing our cars and shit and major, majorly hindering our ability to do our jobs. It's getting bad, and years ago, you know what we did? They're stealing our guns and shit, they're stealing our equipment. We'd shoot their ass, okay? Now I understand that we can't always do that, however, having it legislated, some degree of qualified immunity, if you wanna call it that, then hey, if you need to take the force, use the force necessary in the given situation based on where you're standing, where the vehicle is, et cetera, then you can do that and you're protected in doing that. Cuz it's getting bad, like, I went on.
You're asking for the ability to shoot people to your cars.
Not always, just use the necessary force. So if you're, if you're at a distance, if you're real far away and that is the only way that you could stop them, sure.
You already have that in your SOPs.
Why can't they just?
I was told never, that we're never supposed to do that.
Okay, then you're never supposed to do it, we don't override SOPs here.
Okay.
Unfort- unfortunately, that's just the reality of the situation. Uh, in terms of PD SOPs, this council is not in a position to do that, the state is. The state may communicate as much uh, through, you know, myself, or through the mayor in some cases, whatever it may be, like we had under the PCP. Uh, but at the end of the day, uh, that is not something we could decide here and now without state input.
Okay, well, what I'm seeing, I'm, 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 let me look through one more time, I think there might not be anything in our SOP specifically about.
Yeah, so you just default to, you know, uh, your SOPs regarding use of force, and if those fail you, then result to the law about self-defense. You cannot protect property with self-defense, and if your SOPs don't, you know, allow you to escalate to lethal force for property either, uh, then there's your answer, I guess.
Okay, well, I mean, if somebody can take a vehicle and they're driving away recklessly and they're now, I mean, at that point, they're fleeing felon. And they have police.
Your argument, your argument would then apply to every single bank robbery ever, just shoot them when they leave.
Dude, it's amazing how much a five minute break recharged my brain.
You just said recklessly evading in a vehicle.
Oh, true, but you're, you're stealing police equipment, right? When you rob a bank, you're robbing them of money, right? When you, when you rob a uh, police vehicle, you're robbing them of, I mean, I might have a gun in there. I might have privileged information in there that could be used. I might have privileged information in there that could be used to harm the public, right? To be held, held against somebody.
Yeah, but we don't operate lethal force on could. You operate based on your should, right? And the law says that you shoot someone if you can articulate that not only are they fleeing felon, but that they are presently armed and present a continuing and ongoing danger to society themselves or others. So in this case, for you to articulate that, well, there could be something in there. You would not only have to demonstrate that it was in there, you'd have to demonstrate, you know, they had reasonable knowledge of it being in there. And they had expressed a previous capacity to use that thing and/or a current intent to do so. So for example, if someone were to shoot at the cops and then steal a cop car and run away, then yes, you would shoot them. But if the person just steals a cop car and drives away, then you should not be shooting them.
So what would you recommend that we do? If we're, if we're, have people steal our car, I'm standing there twenty feet away from the car. And I'm seeing them steal it. And I know I got my damn Glock in there, my backup gun, my other backup gun. You know, my backup badge, everything, okay?
You keep your guns in, in like your glove box?
I'll keep it in the lock storage, but what if they take the lock storage out?
Cornwood.
Okay.
If someone walks up to you and puts a gun to your head and says, open the lock storage, what do you do as an officer?
I mean, what do I do?
No, what, what are you supposed to do as an officer?
Well, you're supposed to say no.
Okay, so if that's the case, then your argument is moot. We need to move on from this point.
Okay, sounds good. Um, I guess to that, to that next point, I mean, this is kind of like the middle point of two other things. Um, one of which is a, uh, a, a qualified immunity. Is that something that's ever gonna be discussed here?
Uh, yeah, we discussed it. Uh, Nakota brought up, why isn't it codified? And I said, because it's not a piece of legislation, it's a concept.
Okay.
Uh, qualified immunity is not something that is written down, except in a more narrow sense in certain jurisdictions. It's just a concept that police acting in good faith are not able to be sued like, you know, civilians would be for liability in those things, which is already the precedent. Yeah, it's a, it's, it's just a, it's a thing that exists. It's not, uh, it's not something we rewrite now. It never has been. So the, the concept that it, it doesn't exist in writing and therefore it doesn't exist is wrong here.
Okay. So since qualified immunity is essentially applied, implied, excuse me. We don't need to have it written anywhere. Don't, essentially don't worry about it then, right?
Correct. But what I'm telling you is that, again, uh, if we're going to discuss like this concept of using qualified immunity as a shield to shoot people who steal your car. Uh, that's probably not gonna be viewed in good faith, right? Because that's, that's a very clear directive, both from PD command, high command, as well as the law.
Sure. Uh, okay, so next thing is a castle doctrine. If somebody comes into your home or something, uninvited, unannounced, somebody breaks in, if, uh, people can shoot them. Someone's coming in trying to rob your ass.
Uh, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. I wouldn't see a problem with defending your property.
Yeah, if somebody comes in onto your property. Now, or that, I mean, shit, would that apply to your vehicles?
No.
Specifically doesn't.
Vehicles are specifically, that's the whole reason why you get to search vehicles without a warrant is because they're not considered to the same level of habitability.
But even on your own property.
And in terms of self-defense, protecting your vehicle is a no-go.
Listen, Cornwood, if you're at home, uh, and we have castle doctrine and someone walks onto your property, like my front yard and starts stealing my car, uh, then yes, I'm going to shoot the fuck out of them.
Right, okay.
But that is very different than saying like, for example, I'm a police officer and I have a police car. And I go park it somewhere while I'm on duty.
No, I was clarifying at home is what I was talking about. Okay, so, uh, yeah, that's something, uh, I mean, I, I don't have something written up for a castle doctrine yet, but, uh, it's something I, I'll, I'll, I'll get written up for, for the future. I just wanted to.
Well, do we have any objections to the concept?
Yeah, can we take a vote on it? The concept of castle doctrine?
I'm all fucking for that. Go.
As a future homeowner, I'm for it.
Uh huh. Tech my shit all day.
I really have an issue with it, honestly. Yeah.
My house that I don't possess.
Yeah, I, I, I'll show you after the meeting.
Alright.
Okay, I might, I mean, I might write some shit up now, while we, you know, while wait.
Max, any thoughts?
Um, let him write it up. Uh, we can keep going.
Okay, and then, uh, the last thing, well, I guess the last thing ain't even me. It's, it's about, uh, it's half me, police continuity plan. Uh, what is, is there a job description for the commissioner?
Uh, I actually just wrote one.
Oh, okay.
Um, cause we're gonna do, uh, we're gonna present PCP two or just, I guess it is technically PCP two, cause there's some, uh, clarifications that I made. Um, I wrote, the commissioner is the absolute head of the law enforcement chain of command. The commissioner does not answer the mayor's office in any capacity after being selected. Uh, commissioners empowered to carry out the functions of law enforcement at the highest level as a political attache between the state and law enforcement communities. Uh, based on my research and discussing things with people, two things are, we're getting into PCP territory right now. Uh, so if I'm gonna talk about it, uh, I may as well present it.
Send it, I'm done.
Okay. Um, the changes are as such. In speaking with Barrick, uh, in speaking with Cornwood, in speaking with many officers who have expressed a, an interest in there being another law enforcement department, I initially came to one conclusion. Um, one, I didn't think that there was anyone capable of being the commissioner. Uh, and that was just based upon my experiences with various officers. Uh, this sentiment was pretty much agreed by everyone that uh, didn't outright say to me that it was their intention to try to become the commissioner. Um, and I am, I'm willing to err on the side of caution for them. Um, essentially, my first compromise to this was, okay, uh, the people want another department. Uh, what's the harm in that? Uh, oh, two different chains of commands. That's bad. Uh, if there are two different chains of commands, and you know, there's a situation where one department wants to chastise someone from another department and then the person from the original department's like nah. Uh, or the, the, the person from the other department's like nah, that's my deputy, uh, you're just an officer, uh, you're just sergeant of the LSPD, blah, blah, blah. Um, uh, and I got hung up on that for a long time and I was like, oh, okay, so what's the solution to that? And then I decided, um, the best way to do it without a commissioner would be to make it so that there was at least a de facto head of chain of command. Uh, and that would have been the chief of police in this model. Uh, and the sheriff of this other department, cause it's gonna be a county department. Um, would be equal to the assistant chief. And that would essentially allow for a, in theory, fluid chain of command. Um, then I realized, that's fucking stupid. Uh, and, and why am I so afraid of allowing there to exist two different chains of command? Uh, what issues could it truly, truly cause that would be ultimately detrimental to the functioning of the police department currently? Cause the police department currently has problems that are, uh, so vast that it, I, I struggle to even call them a police department. Uh, because their, their capture rate is so low. Uh, on a, uh, a, like on an eight hour basis, on a shift basis, that sometimes it dips down to two people per shift. Uh, and I mean, if anyone's been out on, look, I, ultimately, I understand and recognize that it is not the sole purpose of a police department to be this wildly effective uh, crime crushing unit that is ultimately one hundred percent superior.
You don't wanna make anybody upset.
Right. Uh, and that is sort of the vision that has carried on from the, uh, the initial three captains of the LSPD down to one now, uh, down to one who thinks it's wise to allow Bobby and Carmine to do a prison transport for Ramiel Rahman from MRPD. Um, it.
On duty.
With six officers on duty, there is clearly problems. Um, and at first I tried to address this problem with competition. I did it with the quota system. Uh, and at first that worked. Uh, interest in the quota system has dwindled a little bit. I'm still going to keep doing it. Um, but at the end of the day, it all comes back to, uh, higher pay isn't necessarily a motivator for people to want to come on duty. What the thing, and I, I've, I've spoken to Kyle Pred a couple of times and I'm gonna use Kyle Pred as an example. I know uh, something like what Kyle Pred had will never happen again in Los Santos. Uh, cause it, it was dangerous. It bordered on, uh, paramilitary. It, it like, it, it was a fanatical cult. Um, but they wanted to work because they knew that, uh, because their morale was through the roof, because they could count on each other and because they could, they could be around each other and know that they had each other's backs. And I think one of the first important building blocks of establishing that level of morale is to allow officers to express themselves in the way of choosing if they wish to represent one uniform or another. Uh, this is the primary reason for the PCP coming back. Uh, is to allow us to pass this, uh, which I would immediately then follow with a suggestion that we begin the process for allowing officers to run for sheriff. Uh, similar to how, you know, we did for mayor or whatever. Uh, get that ball rolling and then, you know, the week after that, start the election. And then the week after that, get them up in the, uh, the Sandy Shores Police Department and get them rolling on that. Um, and after I spoke to a couple of officers, ultimately, the model I wanted to settle on was two different chains of command. And I know that this has the potential to um, cause some tension if there's ever disagreement between two different commands about, you know, what they feel should happen to one particular officer if there's a disagreement. Um, and the solution to that is to appoint a commissioner. Uh, and as I've said, there is no one suitable to be commissioner right now. So another addition that I added to this document is to allow the mayor to act as a person who will mediate and determine final decisions that could not otherwise be reached by, uh, between two separate chain of commands established if and when a secondary law enforcement department is established courtesy of this plan. That's what I wrote.
Do you, do you repeat that story? The first part, who was gonna do it?
The mayor.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Sorry, I just missed that.
So the hypothetical here is, let's say, uh, Sergeant McNulty decides that deputy dickhead, um, a, deserves to be punished. And let's say Sheriff Cornwood's like, hmm, nah. Uh, you know, and like reverses that decision and then the sergeant brings it to the, the, the chief of police and the chief of police goes to the, the sheriff and they can't meet, reach an agreement, then they would come to me, they would present me with all of their information and stuff. Uh, and I would make a, uh, an unbiased decision similar to how the commissioner should. Because the commissioner would not belong to any, uh, law enforcement department. And that would be to ensure that it is able to, uh, enact the absolute unbiased decisions that must be made by someone at the head of that chain of command. Because ultimately, um, two different, uh, it, it, it already happens with the different police shifts. They are, they are tribal. Um, and I, I think a certain level of tribalism is good because it builds toward that morale that we're trying to establish, that is, has not been established and is the reason for lower activity right now out of the police department, which is then a reason for the lower, um, capture rate, so on so forth. Um, it needs to be done in such a way that the commissioner can, uh, carry out their duties. When they are finally selected, and I hope to God that someone can prove themselves in the next two months, two and a half months or whatever. Uh, where I can confidently be like, okay, uh, John, federal government, this person is the one who is going to move forward, uh, who, who is able to be level-headed, blah, blah, blah. Um, it's a whole fucking thing. But, long and short of it is simple. Uh, if this passes, I will move that a law enforcement department will open in the north. Uh, I will move that the sheriff elections begin, uh, and I will move that I will, uh, moderately and carefully, if I am even called upon, resolve disputes between these two different chains of command. Uh, because right now, I think that internally, uh, the various law enforcement officers of Los Santos could use a bit of um, competition amongst each other. I think that the competition typically breeds improvement. Uh, and I think that if one department excels, it might also inspire the other department to excel. At this point, uh, I'm willing to try anything. This isn't how I always felt. But, you know, between there being maybe five or six officers for shift two, uh, and zero officers for shift three, uh, I think it's time to try anything.
I mean, look, let's call, let's call a spade a spade. People are finally seeing the same shit I saw three, four months ago. Yeah, everybody sees it, everybody knows it. So I'm, I'm glad people are starting to understand. Cause it is, it's getting egregious.
What is it?
Do you want us made to go on three hours?
Well, I, you're, 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 I know you're just. I mean, trying to understand, you know?
I, I, I feel like I have to ask and this will be with the caveat, this is not intended to shit on it. I'm here for the sheriff's office. I've done all that. Um, but wasn't the first PCP meant to fix things?
Yeah, it was.
Uh, what do you think's different here? I'm actually open to hearing.
It was to fix the chain of command issue, so right, Max?
Uh, it was, it was intended to fix everything.
Hmm.
Uh, right now, uh, I have done everything that I can for now, for the LSPD. Uh, and what this, what its representation is for is to establish the sheriff's office essentially and to allow there to be two different chains of commands and to allow there to be a voice that can settle disputes should they arise between both of those departments.
Hmm, okay.
Um, yeah, so that's PCP two. Uh, questions? Concerns?
Um, do you, do you foresee an immediate benefit to deploying a parallel development track for, for law enforcement? Do you like, like, do you think like, doing like bounty, like, uh, quota bounties? For example, would just like create an immediate incentive to, to, for, for, for departments to compete and shape up? Like, you know what I mean by a bounty? Like, first, first department to get to ten arrests for this, like, problem crime, like, something like that, like?
It, it would allow me to expand, uh, the quota, which would then probably have that hopeful result. I, I know that they'll compete with each other.
Well, now, now, now that.
Think they're like.
Well, on that bag of the question though, uh, if we're talking about a department up north and department in the city, uh, do they just have identical jurisdiction and requirements? Cause.
Yep. Yeah, uh, at the end of the day, uh, I don't, I mean, right now, I, I could not in good faith ask the sheriff's office to stay out of Los Santos, cause I know that there aren't enough units to even patrol Los Santos right now.
Yeah, well, then, then, then that makes it. The competition thing kinda has to go out the window then, right?
Not necessarily. They, uh, if a Blaine County Sheriff's Office officer, uh, gets a traffic stop, they tag it PCS. This, this has specifically to do with the quota.
Um, right, right. So I'm saying like kidnapping, for example, let's say there's a laundromat. And the LSPD operate out of the city primarily. Does that mean they just create a laundromat scene? So they just, you know, uh?
Uh, who, my wife and I will investigate to see who was the leading officer and how many officers were from each department and go accordingly. It's very easy to, uh, figure out the particulars.
Yeah, I'm already going through and adding all of the officers who are involved in each report anyway and, um, separating them out.
I mean, just being in that situation, I, I feel like that's gonna be a pain in the ass. And so, so you'd have a different, like a different rate of pay between, like, uh, the county officers and the city officers?
It's not possible.
Yeah, cause that sounds, that, yeah, okay, good. I was just.
So my, my question is this, uh, it, it, it's tempting to look at this as a way of saying, okay, while the PD can't be saved, let's say abandon it, the idea of fixing it. And rather than like breaking up the, the structure, the. And rather than like breaking up the the structure, the command structure that's not working somehow. Uh to create a whole other department and just start from scratch, which you know does give uh and afford opportunities for other people. Who aren't getting them now to stand out, sure, and it kinda doubles your ability to scout that. But you're still kinda giving up on PD.
Not necessarily. They are allowed to operate as they have, and I think it's important to realize that. I don't I don't think that establishing a secondary chain of command in another police department is is saying that the first one has failed. I think that it is an attempt to breed competition in order to inspire morale.
Okay, no, that answers my question. It's it's just tempting to see it that way is all.
No, that's that's fair. I mean, look, there's a major, major morale issue and it 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 goes beyond. It goes beyond the scope of what anybody can even see, you know, whether it's whether it's me. Yeah, it's it's just. It's bad. It's miserable. I I would go as far as saying it's it's actually completely dad gum miserable right now.
Um and I and I'm not saying this uh the establishing another department will even be. Uh the thing that fixes that, uh I this is an attempt to. Uh I feel like I pussy footed on this during term one. Because I was I I kind of subscribed to that belief, Murphy, where I was like, listen, if we do that. Then that's admitting that, you know, all of my efforts and attempts with the LSPD have failed. And I don't. There's a there's a lot of factors at play here that unfortunately uh I and even people. In the LSPD do not have any control over. Uh there are certain directives that must be followed that may not be immediately apparent. Uh there are certain people who unfortunately have lost their job. Because they felt that they were doing the best that they could within the powers that were afforded to them, only to find out that the rug was pulled out from underneath them. There are people who there are. It it is scary on multiple fronts to be a police officer. Uh and at the end of the day, this is some this is going to be something to allow them to express themselves in a way that will hopefully. Uh allow them to build the same kind of community minus the cult that was present uh years ago.
Yeah, I mean. Oh, I don't wanna get on soapbox right now, but holy shit. It is hard to stress how horrible it is. And and how helpless everybody feels. I I just it is it is so damn bad. Where we're losing officers every day. People ain't they just eventually they just stop showing up. Right? Some of them have have turned to a life of crime apparently and allegedly, right? It's just like, I I don't know. I I I don't know how much longer and how many more people can take it. It it is so bad. Like, I I think there needs to be a whole mental evaluation on every single person that's in the PD because there's obviously something that's wrong with you. Like some kind of self harm, like you you obviously hate yourself if you're a police officer right now. It is bad. Like, we're losing. We lost a receptionist two days ago. A receptionist. That that's how bad the morale is.
Can I add to yours, Cornwood? Just a hot second. I'm not disagreeing whatsoever. I'm actually like I advocate for your shit because. As someone that uh was, you know, you reference Pred's side to it. Uh I've worked during that time as a cop for two years. If you're not familiar too much. Morale's a big thing. Leadership is even a bigger thing, though, and you reference Pred's side to it and. He is the type of person that actually they. Internally. Which, as you said, people understand that they have your back, but that's that wasn't everybody, right? That was that was definitely a pred thing. Not all departments were like that. I'll be flat out, right? And that was one of the reasons why I was like, give me the fuck out. I mean, I wasn't in Pred's department. It's a strong leadership that is going to get people to be around someone that actually motivates. Crane, you said it before. Money isn't going to be a determining factor. And it is truly putting that right person that is going to motivate people. Listen. I've lived through commissioners. I've lived through all them, but you gotta have someone that's vocal. You gotta have someone that's actually there, someone that people wanna rally around. If you don't have that. What the fuck are you doing?
Yep, um I'm gonna be doing. A long investigation in the next month or so, provided this passes to uh. Uh to learn from my mistakes from the first PCP and to hopefully select somebody who meets that definition.
I got a question. How are you going to be privy to? The issues that they disagree on?
They'll both present their case.
It's four hours. I'm cooked again. I haven't been cooked this entire fucking meeting.
I mean, there there's a lot. There's there's a lot of issues in the PD. The 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 bottom line is morale and what really affects morale negatively. There's the whole, oh, I can't catch this criminal, right? That's that's one thing, but I don't think that's really that bad. Uh I think the pay thing, it's not really that bad, right? Like, these aren't really big factors when I say not that bad. I think one thing that really, really hits hard is when you feel like. You can do something or you feel like you should do something, but you have something holding you back. Or feeling like you can't do something because you don't have help. You don't you don't have somebody who has your back, right? Now, you wanna you wanna reference Pred and that that cult shit he had going on after I left. I I don't know, right? What I do know is this. I'm a big believer in the thick blue line, okay? And I do believe that we need to support each other more. I'm sick and tired of seeing. Police officers not supporting each other cuz at the end of the day, I know how this city works. And we're all we got, okay? When you when you look to your left and you look to your right, that's it. You don't really got much else and a whole lot of the rest of the world is against you. So the last thing we need to do. And there's a line behind, don't don't mistake my words. This ain't about like a asking for a lack of accountability, right? Or less accountability. But the last thing we need to do is to go against each other, okay? You can still hold one another accountable. You can still teach one another, okay? And say, hey, this is how we can get better. This is how we can do right by not just each other, but by the city, by the people. By the by the people that we're here to protect, right? And hell, since everybody else in this damn city cares so much, even the damn criminals, okay? Cuz at a certain point, you ain't gonna have nobody to steal from the way things are going, all right?
Yeah, I totally get that. It's like, um you know, for all intents and purposes, you're going to war every day. So if you don't feel like the people you're going to war with have your back and that you don't have that strong leadership who's leading from the front of the charge. Like morale tanks really, really fast.
And and I'll I'll take it a step forward. I'll I'll take it a step forward. The leadership needs that. The the leadership needs the backup. Culture culture changes at the top. Cultural movements come from the bottom. I think I think everybody should know that. They don't already. And I think as much as much as you can try and change the culture at the top. If if the people in the middle and the people in the bottom, if they don't have your back, for the record, in our case, I think a lot of people do. But sometimes there's a there's there's a there's your PD, you got your command, you got your high command, you got your officers. And then you got God, okay? You got the highest of high command, all right? And sometimes you just gotta pray real hard and say, good Lord, give me the help I need to go in today and be able to save this city and protect people, okay? And I just look, I just want the Lord's blessing. I want the Lord's blessing for the good people leading us, and that's all I ask. And hopefully that's coming. But until then, we gotta do the best that we can within our bounds. And we'll be good.
Are we? So I intend to put this to a vote. Do we have any questions before we do that? Okay, uh TJ.
TJ?
Oh, no.
Oh, sorry. I was totally talking but not talking. Uh I'm guessing you didn't hear anything I just said. Okay, all right. So I I do have a quick question with it. So what happens after the fact of you're no longer in term? I just kinda wanted to put that out there. How do they report what's reporting? Or what actually happens?
Uh all of those people that are appointed remain appointed. Uh hopefully, a commissioner is chosen so that they can have a final top to the chain of their command.
So you have it in there basically saying you're going to choose a commissioner.
No, uh to be to be to be clear, I'm going to pick who I think is the best. And then I'm going to forward that person to the state and then they are going to tell me if that person is okay.
Yeah, yeah, that that's.
Give or take ten minutes.
So you choose them, state says, okay, sure. They come in. After that point, that commissioner is kinda like you're setting them out on a ship and they got their own shit together. They know they got their crew and then afterwards you've got no longer any oversight basically of it because that's now them.
Yep, it kinda reverts to the way that it is for most departments where there isn't. There isn't like direct oversight that will raise the flag on potential issues.
Yeah, so you're handholding him until there is actually off the ground.
Not enough, yeah.
Handholding, I would say.
Aggressively.
Uh I know what I know what you mean. Uh setting them up for success, uh just giving them, you know, if they've got any questions, acting as the direct conduit. Uh to pass that on and to have that answered for them in a timely manner.
Uh I got nothing against it.
What is your vote, sir?
Yeah, well, I guess that's yes.
Solomon. Uh Cantor.
You are. It's gonna be a bit of a shocker. Uh actually, yes, uh you have my vote on this. I can understand what you have laid out uh for this time around. Uh I don't think the first one was incredibly well executed, but I do actually believe you might have learned from that. And wanna do something good with it. So uh so here you are. You've got my vote on that. Also, good job saying Michael did nothing. That that really helps. Thank you.
Uh Crane.
Are you planning on replacing the chief and assistant chief?
They're gonna be under review.
Is this okay? Is the sheriff election publicly voted?
Yep, that's actually what the original three captains wanted, uh and it's a good idea.
Then in conjunction with those two things, I would propose an amendment that states. Uh that anyone who has been replaced as high command in the past should not qualify to run for sheriff.
Recently or?
So for example, if you go through and you decide you're going to. Uh you know, shuffle around the current chief police or assistant chief police or you and the state decide you're gonna, you know, do all these different things. Uh then I don't think those people should be eligible for some kind of golden parachute to just go become a sheriff.
What what if they were high command years ago? Like Matt Rhodes or myself.
I don't think you count, Cornwood.
Okay, and what about Matt Rhodes?
Wait, do we really have to tell him? Hello? Oh shit, my man, what's going on?
What I'm saying is.
This meeting ain't shit. I'm always talking to you, baby. What's going on? Yeah, get in. Where are you at, slam?
No, you're on the wrong floor, buddy.
Um I had a little line about the sheriff selection in the uh PCP.
You're on the wrong floor. Where the fuck? Wait, what the hell just happened?
Okay, yeah.
I'm not too worried about it.
Well, you just relax, Sig.
I think that's that's great.
All right, get in here, buddy.
Get it. Get him in here. He's hammered and I gotta go. Oh, suckerburg, what's going on, Gary?
I am Wingle. Wingle's here too.
Hey, am I right? All right, let's get in there, boys. We got work to do. Come on. Sorry, guys, I got some special guests.
What's good, y'all? How we hanging?
Yeah, what's going on, gang?
Push me like that.
Sorry.
But you said it to Wingle.
I heard your voice.
Yeah, he didn't walk in yet.
What's what's today's meeting been like? Yeah, our our panel only lasted three and a half.
It's terrible.
What's up?
Set me up for killing a cop, remember that?
Yeah, I remember. You are you in this room right now?
At the apartments and you're like, oh, you must have killed that cop. Let's go to jail now. That was fun.
Uh yeah, I'm I'm not about that anymore. I don't. Very legal.
Hey, Fingle, you wanna be police commissioner?
I tried. I did the same thing. I said the exact same thing, believe it or not.
It is a good choice.
Yeah, Crane, I would really like that if that's okay.
You gotta talk to the guy with the face.
I've never seen this guy in my life.
Hey, Alex, it's Fingle Dan.
Oh, hey, Fingle Dan.
Yeah, you gotta talk to the guy pissing in the corner.
Oh, wait, you know, you're also a DOC.
It's good seeing you. Hundred and forty miles an hour like eight years ago.
Yeah, I remember that.
You know, you're a DOC, right?
Hi, Alex.
There's a law. There's a law right now. Okay, so get this, Fingle. And bear with me cuz I know it sounds crazy, um but I'm sober, so trust me.
Sorry to hear that.
So that Carmine Costello and Bobby Charles run the prison.
Yeah.
And it's a lawless zone where anything goes and the only people pre authorized to be hired are the DANS and the little ones.
Put the dance in there?
Yeah, so you you get to go just sign on a DOC whenever you want and go fucking kill people and do other shit.
You're not just tricking us to go to jail again.
That's all I'm saying. They'll just give you guns over there.
Hey, Fingle, I need a.
Pay you to hunt inmates.
Okay, it's Fingle.
Hunt? Like a ghost?
He doesn't exist because he only he never wants to come around when I'm around. A ghost with a gun. I've got it like abandoned.
DOC is a lawless.
I thought you were around like all the time.
By people to to hunt people for sport.
All right, I need those two pieces of info and then I can hire you.
Okay, but why do you have Mark Hamill Joker on the wall?
Oh, that's my inspiration.
Oh my god, it is.
And can we sit down at the table today?
Yeah, go for it. Grab a seat.
Is that a pocky or a cigarette?
Sit next to.
It's a cigarette.
Murphy, I'll take Cornwood's seat for now.
Hey, yeah.
Four hours, four and a half hours in. Attention tie? Oh, okay, alright.
To be honest.
Uh, Cornwood, how do you, here we, here we go.
Anybody scream at each other?
Uh, yes.
Oh, who, who, who?
Uh, me versus Max, so.
Oh, nice. Did you, did you scream too or just Max?
Max, Max told Cornwood to shut the fuck up in a very loud tone.
Oh. Yeah, but I did that on purpose. Nice.
Fingle, you're looking slim. You working out?
Yeah.
Nice.
He wants, he wants a gun.
I've also been working out.
I'm on the same pill as Drake was.
Oh, yeah.
You're looking great, Fingle.
You look amazing. Look like you just woke up out of that coma.
I heard that's pretty good.
You got a missile on you?
Very skinny.
Stay pretty active.
Ozempic?
No, no, just, just diet and exercise.
Come on, Bronn. Be real with us.
Hello. Hello.
I'm being.
Hello.
Hey, uh, Max, I'd like to formally nominate Fingle Dan as police commissioner.
Hello, young dad.
I thought you had, uh, cancer.
Yeah, I tweeted a bunch of diseases. Cancer, gout, AIDS, like the whole nine yards, all of it.
You know, I used to know a guy who, who used to keep his, uh, AIDS infected blood in a needle and would stab people with it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That guy taught me everything I know.
Nice.
What was his name again?
Do you wanna?
Uh, what was his name? I was there when they raided his house once.
Hear his name?
His name is Leslie.
Yeah, Leslie.
You, you did not, you, you.
Yeah, Leslie.
Oh shit, Leslie Lindbergh.
Oh no, there were, there were two people with AIDS infected blood then, cause there was another guy that did that too.
The Hangover?
How was that happened twice?
Uh, James Randall.
You remember The Hangover, Leslie?
Happened more than twice, trust me.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, Leslie Chell.
No.
So what's, uh, what's the deal?
We were, we, we were just in the middle of a vote. Yeah, we actually.
Alan, what was the amendment you said you were proposing?
Uh, something about past high command not getting a golden parachute to be voted as sheriff.
I wrote. I, I, I wrote in the PCP, a sheriff election should be public semicolon, any officer so long as they have not been replaced as high command in the past may run for sheriff.
That was good to me.
Um, in English.
They've not been replaced.
Doc, come on, doc. English, please?
Uh, means you can't be a two-time loser.
Oh.
Well, we only take W's here, Fingle.
W.
And where do the DANS qualify on the loser scale?
And you guys are exempt.
Oh.
Uh, uh, still, are we talking post-collapse or?
Well, obviously they're talking post-collapse, Cornwood.
Okay.
Fatty.
I would hope.
Oh my god.
I mean, it's been five years.
Now, what's your vote, Crane?
Uh, with the amendment, yeah, for sure.
Uh, Fingle Dan.
Do what you will.
Um, what did everyone else say?
Yes, so far.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Cleese Cornwood.
Yes, this is Jeff Foxworthy.
I abstain.
Okay.
Surprising.
Head of bar, Murphy Brown. Uh, I am progressive about policing, yes. Uh, Chief of Staff, Siobhan Thoroughbred.
Duh.
Uh, I'm also, yes, uh, Sergeant Jeffrey Bones.
We shouldn't fire him.
Who?
No, we're not talking about firing you.
Oh.
Not yet, that's the next discussion.
That's, yeah.
I don't think we should fire him.
We're not firing anyone, jackass.
Alright.
We're allowing, uh, we're voting on allowing Max to do the PCP again.
Oh, promote him.
So that's a yes.
It sounds like a yes.
Cool.
Okay, so, uh, two abstains, the rest, yes. Immediately now, I would ask the Chief Justice to, uh, open up, uh, sheriff elections.
Yeah, I gotta do signups first and then we'll vet the signups and then we'll do the ballot and blah, 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 blah. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, good, awesome. Uh, I pledge to do my best, uh, to act kind of similar, uh, to a judge when it comes to making impartial decisions as the, uh, the mayor, uh, when resolving disputes between two, uh, chains of command. I just want them to succeed. I really do.
What's the problem?
Have you considered tying yourself to a different boat?
Nope, this is, this is, this is the boat.
DOJ is a steamliner, we're chugging along.
Yeah, cause they got a dictator at the head.
Exactly, goddamn right.
With that, they need a dictator, man. I, they do.
They do.
Oh, now I get it.
I'll take a leave of absence, I'll do it, no problem. I'll be sheriff. Okay, I accept.
Commissioner is what I need you as.
Oh. Sheriff gets like a better outfit, right?
Fired already, cause I. Fingle Dan.
I swear, Crane, you would not have to change a single thing about yourself to be commissioner.
Probably not.
You wear the same shit.
You could interchange Fingle and Crane for this, and it would be like the same.
Okay, no, now I'm cooking. What if I hire a Fingle as an interim chief justice and then I'll be a commissioner?
I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah, I'll show off it.
You're saying this as a joke, but I'm not opposed to that.
I'm on my forty-eight percent shit right now.
We both drunk.
No, he's sober, Fingle, he's.
He's fucking lying.
Let's be fair.
Oh, he's high.
Hell, yeah.
Alright.
Uh, yeah, okay, we can discuss the particulars later.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone can run for sheriff, uh, so long as they're a cop and so long as they have not been high command, replaced as high command before.
And they are approved by the state and a screening process that will occur directly before the ballot is open, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I've never been that.
Easy.
Uh, I think, I mean, Cleese, you said you were done? Before that?
I am, yeah, I'm done.
Want your seat back?
Uh, no, no, it's good. I like standing.
It's not quite ready yet. I wanna do a lot more of the work up front, cause it's a softer piece of legislation. So I don't wanna vote on it and then I'd be stuck with the work, so.
Okay.
I got some other things to do on it.
We'll move past that. Uh, is the sheriff reelected every three months or is that, did we total file it? I don't mind either way, I was just wondering, uh, assuming it'd be replaced eventually? Or is it like a, once voted, you're just, is there?
Hmm, that's a good ass question, actually. Should, should, should we force a, uh, like a, like a six-year revote?
Three months is a lot, so, uh, or, uh, not a lot, not, not a lot at all. Six year though?
That's, sorry, I meant six month, six.
Six months, oh. Cornwood, what do you think as the PD here, since I'm a, I don't, I don't really have a horse in this race?
I think that if the, the sheriff, hmm.
I don't think six is bad and they could rerun. Yeah, that was what I was thinking, right?
Yeah, yeah, it depends on if you have term limits or not. I think, I think if you have an election every three months with no term limits, I think that's, I think that's good, probably. I, I have to think about it.
I think that the state and the commissioner should probably just.
Think about that.
Uh, well, no, they should have valid, well, so what we did with the judge elections, what we still will do when we implement them again, as we discussed today, is, uh, you basically give people two terms as a voted judge or sheriff or whatever. And if after those two terms, the state is like thoroughly satisfied with their performance, the state has the option to just appoint them as sheriff, right? Um, because it may be that things are going great and that person is the right person for the job. Uh, and if the state doesn't decide to do so, then you just continue with the same cycle of elections, right? That's typically what's worked in the past, at least for the judge, the judge stuff.
It's like achieving tenure.
Pretty much, yeah, it's a good way to put it, getting tenure, um, and the state is the one that weighs in on tenure, I think is fair.
I mean, they need some time to.
I don't dislike that, yeah.
What do you think about that, Max?
I, I added, uh, I, I added a sheriff will have a two-term maximum as an elected official. The state can decide to appoint the, the sheriff in question for a more permanent term if they are found to have served exceptionally well.
Perfect, sounds good to me.
Okay.
So do, am I, I have job or?
Yeah, we'll get you something.
Like Chief Justice thing?
Fingle, I gotta hire you for a million things, don't worry about it.
Alright.
You could be Chief Justice of the, uh, the prison.
Suckerburg and Wingle can have a job too?
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Word. Cool, three for?
At the very least, you guys get to go kill people indiscriminately in the jail.
Just like a war, that's what I'm fucking talking about.
I added, uh, sheriff election should happen roughly every three months.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Suckerburg, I'll get you another RPG for you, don't worry.
Word, I handle it.
I would like to be king. On realistically when the election would begin and how long it would last.
My, my typical schedule is that, uh, we take about a, uh, it's about a four to six day period for signups. Uh, so I will announce like, let's say, three days ahead of time, the four to six day period opens on this day of this time. I then put up, uh, the signups, people then sign up. At the time and date of the signups closing, there is then a week-long election of pure voting and then it is announced at the end of the election.
Would it be unreasonable to ask for that signup period to be shorter? Because there's only a, a very limited amount of people that are gonna be putting their names in anyway, more than likely.
Um.
And Bucky is dead.
Essential that we keep it around a week to allow for people who, you know, might have something going on and don't wanna miss such a like monumentous thing. Uh, so in, in all fairness to, to everyone, uh, we always, you know, need to, at least four to six days, I think is fair. We've done even longer in the past, that's, that's my shortened version.
Okay. Nice.
Uh, okay. Um, Murphy says he wants.
From start to finish, we'd have a sheriff in somewhere between two and a half, three weeks at the latest.
It's not bad, it goes quick.
By the end of the month, we'll have our sheriff by the end of the month.
Yeah.
That would be a very first.
This guy's a criminal, little gangbanger dude.
Max.
Yeah.
You said, uh, you said Murphy, what's up?
Oh, I was, I, I, I was starting to say that Murphy says he wants to.
Gang member, Bucky?
A little bit more.
The Disney character?
Uh, Siobhan, do you have anything?
Sounds good. Oh, not, nothing this week, just, um, friendly reminder that I do have, uh, that, uh, tenants rights thing on there, if anybody wants to work on that with me, um, did not have time, uh, this past week, um, and, uh, do have like a couple of other things I'm working on, but nothing right now. Nope, I'm good.
Um, I also, I mean, all I had was PCP two. Uh, I think we are done, everyone. TJ is, I forgot, was.
And mine is still waiting.
Yep, tha- that is true, that is true. Uh, well, actually yours doesn't, uh, apply any longer to like the old shit, so, I mean, I was, it's that, but yeah.
Okay, so, so Maya gets approved because we changed the sections, right?
Uh, yeah, so I wouldn't, can, I wouldn't directly, uh, influence that.
Okay, so any nay votes on the incentive program for judges, ten K for benches, twenty K for dock cases?
Nay.
Nay, alright, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, uh, so I split those two out, it's, I, I didn't call it some stupid acronym, sorry, didn't have enough time to really think about it. Uh, Funding Transparency Act, that's the one that basically just, uh, we talked about before, that's everything that is. That is the first one, uh, that was, I believe, section six? I just changed to section three, um, just like a section three, that's all you need to look at and then I get vote. Hmm, let's see. All transaction tax, uh, changes in place, salaries, uh, shall be recorded and maintained in a public ledger, love that. State funds are subject to information requests and citizens may submit an information request to obtain detailed information regarding the disbursement and allocation of state funds. So about that, um, it's been a while since I looked at exports. Um, I forget, in the actual export, does it say what the money was used for? Uh, so this is subject to what I.
Okay, how can Bucky profit?
Keep in mind, I don't have the ability to export those currently, only the ones that are old exports. If I recall from my time in the past, it was two from reasoning.
Bucky dead.
Bank account.
Bucky abandoned his gang.
And a few soft, like bank account ID number one. And then you can go from what it is and usually there's a reasoning behind it. Uh, yeah. That was, I don't know what it is now. Nah, I'm pretty sure it's the same. Also, uh, for requesting exports, um, we can't do it either, we, we literally just have to ask the state to do it for us. I, I, I'm sure you could do the same whenever you wanted. Um.
Nah.
That part looks fine to me. Uh, any adjustments to taxes, salary subsidies or any other action.
Uh, what's his name?
Impacted by the mayor's office must be referenced via state announcement, love that. Must immediately be documented and publicly available, up-to-date catalog for system, also to be reviewed anytime.
Yeah.
Love that. Um, I will say it's not possible to publicly catalog it yet. Uh, we don't have a way to make a public facing, or at least.
Yeah, we might as well just take him into.
People can reference. Well, well, it means put it as like a legislation document.
We'll take Marty and Bane, not Bucky.
Uh, workaround for now? Yeah, Crane could, uh, find a way to swing that. I, I do not have the, the means to edit a legislation document.
We don't want Bucky.
Crane, is that good?
Uh, is the state announcements work? I saw Cornwood did one that we have access to, like as a test.
Thanks, Max, sorry.
I think everyone could see that.
Uh, I am a, uh, yay on this. Alright. Uh, with, with the understanding that we're gonna have to find some kind of workaround or, uh, have the ability implemented to allow us to actually make it public facing. It's fun, uh, Cantor?
Uh, yeah.
Alan.
As amended, yep.
Fingle Dan?
Uh, yep.
Cardwood?
Well, what was, sorry, what, what do we go down again? The, the first part?
Funding, FTA, Funding Transparency Act, we're reporting on section four is the meat of it.
Um, okay, I see, I'm, I'm just looking.
Did you, and you made a new document, right, TJ? So I'm gonna get rid of the old ones?
Yep.
I'm gonna tag them as gotten rid of.
Uh, yeah, just kind of mark it as invalid, I just use it as.
We use not approved or removed.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just, I need the tags, so when I go through and enact everything, I know what's what.
Yep, that's fine.
Bane and Bucky come as a pair, well, you know, if they were married.
Do we have any idea, Crane, in the DOJ app that might?
But Bucky didn't want the ship, so.
Your laughter just tells me everything I need to know.
Shut up, cancer patient.
Alright.
Oh, come on, she's suffering.
Good one.
Um.
That stolen laugh, Valerie, you son of a bitch. You've already, no, okay.
Well, what else do we need to discuss, guys?
Uh, my document is clear.
Okay. Uh. Uh, yeah.
So Corwin voted no on the Funding Transparency Act, okay.
Correct. Correct.
Siobhan. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, alright. Uh, I also vote yay. Yeah, I had you on there as a first.
Did I say yes?
So that passes them.
Yes, you did, Fingle.
It's abstaining on deputy mayor, naon Cornwood and then ever else, yay, okay.
And then the next one we're looking at is the, uh.
Are you but absent, not abstain, absent is more accurate, cause abstain means he like, couldn't make a decision.
He couldn't make it.
And the next one we're looking at is, uh, the Funds Request Act, it's the top one in the reports list.
Do abstention through absence.
Alright.[1758.09]
Is this the same shit we already agreed upon but split out, right?
Yes, that's all that. I literally just got to taste it.
Unless this, this empowers, uh, TJ and future treasurers to handle, uh, helping people like Andy.
Sounds good to me.
Alright, uh, so go ahead, cancer?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Cornwood?
Yep.
Hmm, I know on this one.
Oh.
Big yes for me.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Didn't mean.
Yes.
I thought you were kidding. Zuckerberg?
I'm just not fucking feeling it, to be honest. I don't know.
Actually, can I go back?
Uh, you can always go back, Fingle.
I'm over it. No.
Cool. Uh, Murphy, he said yes.
Big yes for me.
Okay.
I'm trying to get event funding codified.
Yeah, I'm not feeling it, dog.
Yep, it's all good. Shavon?
Been a while since I've had to use disclaimer, but Armor's just fucking brain rotted to the core.
Uh, come back to me.
Uh, I'm a yay, of course.
Alright, uh, wait, is this a recording? Passes regardless?
Yo. Uh, double it and give it to the next person.
So I was just making sure funding events was in all the right places. Uh, yeah, I was gonna do.
Did anyone hear Wingle? He said double it and give it to the next person?
Yeah, this guy watches Vine, am I right?
Yeah.
Uh, you're.
Crane.
It's approved.
Come on, come on now.
Look, I'm up on technology, aren't I?
Alright, and with that, I do believe we are done.
Okay, so I'm gonna go through and let you know everything I'm enacting, just to make sure. Okay, based on my tags, the cabinet, PCP two point O, toe clamps in you part two. Uh, the thing about sex messages.
Yep.
Uh, rider protection check.
What?
And the judicial compensation program.
Yep.
Funding transparency and funds request. Everything else is either work in progress or not approved.
Yes.
Armor.
Sounds good.
We're gonna go play video games.
Emergency fund, sorry.
Holy shit.
Oh, yeah. Oh, where's that?
It's there.
Which one is it? What's the number?
You're gonna go play Destiny. Or is there just not anybody playing Destiny? Because Destiny, bad game, dead game?
I don't think we actually voted on emergency fund.
Playing Destiny with.
Yeah, we approve whistleblower and we're gonna do the, the thing that is not in the meeting.
Dude, you've been typing a lot.
Possible if me, Zuckerberg, and Wingle knew what was going on?
Are you, are you just like sandbagging?
PCP two point O, I'm voting for that. I don't know.
Why are you better off? It's a mystery.
But you like to get wet, Zuckerberg.
So it's like a new PCP? Is it like stronger? Like what's up?
Yeah, a little bit.
We just give it that out?
More improved.
That's a yay for me.
Hey, by the way, it's rainy, it's rainy out there. Just, just.
Alright, some, it's some integral features of PCP and you'll have to pay for them again later.
Wait, where's the emergency thing yet?
Uh, emergency central funding.
Holy shit.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's approved, right?
Uh, no, we didn't vote on it.
We did not, we didn't vote on it.
Oh, we just debated the thirty million?
Yeah, we, we know, we, uh, TJ and I had a brief back and forth, and then we moved immediately to, uh, the FTA.
Yep. Uh.
Uh, sorry, which thing?
Emergencies.
Central funding.
Oh, uh, yes.
It's the thirty million. Okay.
Yeah, of course.
Right?
Yeah.
Cornwood?
How about that Leslie guy, am I right?
You don't know him. You know, someone actually told me the other day, you don't know them, they don't go to this school.
Uh, Murphy?
Uh, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Alright, Shavon?
Not yet.
Is that not yet?
No, yep, yep, it's a yay.
Max?
Yay. Yay.
Alright, cool, proof done.
Um, cool. Uh, this is good. This is a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Big time.
Rainy day money.
Oh, wait.
Okay, so those are all the things that are approved. So I got a bunch of work to do.
Easy.
And so where does that leave the Fingles?
Uh, Commissioner.
Send me your damn state ID in, in the other thingy, and then I can make you DOC.
Here, you're Commissioner of the DOC now.
I am? So is that higher than Carmine?
Oh, God, I'm so tempted. I am so tempted.
Yes, I think that'd be very.
Can we, hold on, wait. Should we make Fingle Dan higher than Carmine Bobby?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that'd be very good.
Yeah, I vote yeah.
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
The Commissioner is super warden.
Yeah, we're testing out the Commissioner program. Yeah, they're, they're like the two departments and you're the Commissioner at the top. This is, this is good.
Alan, can I talk to you for one moment?
Yeah, I like that.
The chief of Dogtown.
Anybody play forts?
Yeah, hold on.
Ooh, I love forts.
The top dog.
Hmm.
I look forward to them learning this news.
Hmm. And when approximately will they know that news?
I'd, I guess we will say.
I don't think we tell them.
We don't. No, that's even funnier.
I think you just show up. You just show up at the jail and you're like, hey.
Big dick two more times.
Power move is you take their keys. You just fire them.
That's it?
Take their keys.
Yeah.
Take their keys and make them beg for it back.
I like Bones ideas.
Absolute power.
Two more times, I believe he's real.
Yeah, just shit like, it's like that, uh, it's like that, that, uh,
It's not real.
Coming up to the facility sports meme where like the door is locked. Like you can't get in.
We're four feet up. We're four stories up in the sky. We might as well be in a plane.
We are not. Are we actually?
Commercial ref.
My legs are so fucking bad from these fucking stairs.
You play forts, Murphy?
It was the fourth floor.
Um, yeah, it's the fucking playoffs right now.
Murphy, it's Forts night right now. Come on.
The Celtics just won the first game in the second round, okay? I was definitely not watching it during the entire council meeting either.
What?
Hmm.
Is forts gambling? Don't, don't play that with Bones. He'll get a dick.
No, forts is not gambling. Forts is like, you know.
I'm guessing the meeting's over.
Yeah, Fingle Dan, what you gotta do is lock the door.
Oh, my God.
And then he shows up to work and the door is locked. And then you're just standing up on the wall.
You see that finger?
Like with your cop host, and you're like.
Fingle.
It's Fingle Dan's house.
Look. Read your phone for the state announcement.
Oh, shit.
State announcement.
Press T on your phone.
You're so fucking drunk.
Fucking moron.
How I see state announcement?
Press T on your phone.
T on my phone?
Just press T.
Yes.
I know your keyboard.
I'm getting V, 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 V.
That's because you're talking.
Slash state announcement?
Should we have like a writing ceremony for Fingle Dan?
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor. God bless you, Mayor.
Uh, that was Alan. I didn't do shit.
Very much, Alan Crane.
Thank you, Mayor Alan.
I know, bro.
Thank you very much, Alan Crane. Congratulations to Fingle Dan, newly minted Commissioner of the DOC.
You did it. You can read.
And Bobby will be settled by the Commissioner.
You got almost all of those right. That was awesome.
All right.
Hooked on phonics really works.
I wish you guys could see my Vs.
Thirty seconds before Bobby Charles is at the door.
I'm amazed we're not hearing him screaming right now.
He just called me screaming.
Yeah, that tracks.
Look at, look at my latest retweet.
Hell, yeah.
Alright. What the fuck?
It's pretty good.
Why did you tweet the picture of that, Cornwood? Cornwood, 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 whose side are you on right now?
No, I wouldn't do shit for you.
You want, you want Fingle's side?
Yeah.
You're not on Bobby Charles' side, right?
Actually, I, you know what? I'm on my side.
You want your side, which is my side.
I like, I just like to watch.
Sometimes I just like to watch. So it doesn't matter which side he's on.
He did give me his chair. I gave, I tried to give it back to him. He said, no.
That makes you the chairman of, what's your name again?
Ever, he sat on this chair. This thing was fucking hot.
Leonardo Slacks.
Your name is Leonardo Snacks?
Like that turtle or whatever, Leonardo.
No, it was Michelangelo that said.
Michelangelo snacks?
I thought they all liked pizza.
Maybe I should make a tweet to piss everybody off.
Of their personnel.
Yeah, it doesn't work like that.
You gotta fly, you know, rub it in.
Uh, what would you say? Murphy, Cornwood, Zuckerberg, Bones?
I'd just be saying whatever the fuck come to my mind, to be honest.
Like, you're just listing names for what?
Well, I'm trying to piss off everyone on Twitter. What do I say?
Uh, what'd you say? Uh,
Big dogs in town.
I run, big dogs in town.
Hey, hey, you really want to piss people off?
Big dog in town.
Say daddy's home. Say daddy's home.
You really want to piss people off?
Broke out the kettle.
Big dog, a big dog back on the pound.
Big town, big.
Big town, big dog, bigger prison, much love.
Big dog in tow. Daddy is home, I say so far.
Yeah, that's it. That's it right there.
That's it.
And they came in and they continued the meeting.
Yeah, because it's called Dogtown. You're a big dog in town.
Hey, and now, now you know what you do? Now you really piss people off? Tell people this. Tell them when I'm not around, Bobby's in charge. Now everybody's gonna be mad.
Oh, God. Oh, yeah, do that, do that.
I should twat out Bobby. You're fired. Get the fuck out.
Alright.
Everyone in charge, okay.
Perfect.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, some of it.
Yeah, that's what I said.
You did it.
Fingle, Zuckerberg, Wingle came in.
I'm just really busy right now.
They split us up. They allowed Fingle to vote.
You have a nine to five now.
Thing of being like a head of a faction, Fingle, just always tell everyone you're busy.
Hi, Lysen, what's up?
Well, I am. I think someone already tried to call me, but I don't know if it was AF Kingel again, because there's two Fingles in Navy that are just fucking trying to ride my shit.
Make that shit illegal right here, right now.
That guy shut up last week.
Who the hell that is? But that shit's been pissing me off. Know them, Zuckerberg?
No.
Yeah, that shit's been pissing me off.
Was Bobby here?
Who is this?
So am I to report to the person after this?
Yeah, we're going to jail.
If you want or don't. If you feel like it, you go get a sandwich instead.
A sandwich? I can get a sandwich.
Or you could go run the jail and tell Bobby to go get you a sandwich. Either way.
I kinda like the second idea, Murphy Brown, where I tell Bobby to get me a sandwich.
Well, I think he's here right now.
The call site gave it away a little bit.
Bobby's here right now.
Hey, wait, Bones, refresh it. There's a better picture now. Cornwood, check out your staff profile. You're gonna have to search by your state ID.
Oh, my God. Um, just look up snack.
Can someone read me the tweets? I'm very busy.
Holy shit. Uh, let me read you some tweets. I'll translate.
Bring me some tweets real quick.
Where the hell's my badge?
Oh.
I didn't.
Bingo Dan is leadership the DOC needs.
That's, I did not say that. I did not.
Yep, that's me.
Oh, God.
Um, did Dogtown get a new upgrade? Question mark? Coming from New York.
Oh, they hate my shit.
Fingle Dan, when I'm not around. Everyone in charge, okay?
I meant to say Bobby, but I've got a little too excited right there.
Okay, sex figures.
Oh, look who it is. It's your employee.
Is he in here?
Hey, Bobby. Yeah.
Is that Bobby?
That man over there.
That's Bobby. Hey, Bobby, 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 front and center. It's Fingle Dan. Oh, hey, Commissioner, I've finally graced with your presence. Oh, what do you wish, what do you wish for me to do? What do you wish for me to do? Oh, great, Commissioner. Morty, I'm gonna need you to follow every command I give you. You got that? Alright, great Commissioner. What do you want me to do? I want you to kill every prisoner, death sentence, starting now. We already, we already do that. We are already killing every single prisoner?
They are, yes.
Yeah, pretty much.
If I go down to the prison right now, there're not gonna be any alive prisoners.
Graveyard.
It's a graveyard? I think we have like fight, I mean, we killed a paramedic a few days ago and drug is injured, like dragged his body into the dungeon. Buried it, yeah.
Better fucking not.
Alright, Bobby.
Yeah, I got water there.
See, I totally be impressed, Fingle.
Yeah, maybe I'll, you're right, Crane. Maybe I was wrong about these guys. So, uh, great Commissioner, how do you plan to solve the conflict in Dogtown with me and Carmine? Alright, so what is my job?
You're in charge. Solve the conflict.
If these two have a conflict, you solve it.
Just kill them.
But, but who is the co- who is the conflict, though? Between Bobby and? Carmine hates me. I hate Carmine.
Yeah, there's like, uh, territorial beef.
Oh, yeah, there was like, there was a civil war. We succeeded. I won. Yeah, you know, conflict's still going on, great Commissioner. And I can go down there right after the sports match and, and talk to him? Carmine? Carmine's not around, right? But you'll send the message, right? Of course, great Commissioner. Are you gonna solve the conflict? Well, the doy, am I right, guys? I can't step in my prison without my employees repelling against me. Did I get a LOL from there? Did I get a LOL right there?
LOL, my shit. LOL.
LOL?
Bobby, you're not glazing enough. Laugh harder.
Oh, sorry, Mayor.
Now, I'm just glad to see you on your feet and out of the hospital bed, dying like a pathetic cancer patient.
It's been a lot of cancer and, um, whatever else I had.
Eighty percent tumor now.
Eighty percent tumor.
Doing too much, am I right?
That is so fucking sad. It's true, yeah. It's terrible.
Should I go there immediately after this meeting is done?
Sure.
That's a new.
Your draw might now.[1534.92]